This conference will now be recorded.
Okay.
Well, Cal?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. here, here. Mr. Kish, here. Mr. Johnson, here. Ms. Holloway?
Here.
And this will pass.
Here.
Sir, we, ma'am, we do have a.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under him indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now have the approval of the agenda.
The amended agenda.
Amended.
And the change is on, we added under rule amendments, public hearing. A, we made it a little clearer and added rate schedules to Resolution 28204. And added B, which is Resolution 2205, which is the actual rules amendment.
I didn't follow that. What item was I getting? There's nothing.
Four, fifteen A.
Did you add it?
Fifteen A and B.
Fifteen A and B.
Yeah, I said that.
Yeah, and the only, the old one only had fifteen A and it didn't have the clarification of law for schedules.
Okay. Now, I think the next item is the new assessment.
We do approve.
I make a motion to approve the amended regular meeting agenda.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now, Cal, you have something on the new assessment?
Yes, you have the, this is a public hearing on the assessment methodology. And the, Mr. Wire, he can't be here today, but if you decide, if you want his input on something, then you can delay it to April first. Yes, sir?
I'm going to chimera, I may, just as a procedural matter, there are three items that were set to be public hearings for today. One is the consideration of the revised updated assessment methodology. The second was the amendments to the rules of the district. The third will be the adoption of rate schedules A, B, and C, and D for the rules of the district. The notices in the paper for the consideration of adopting the assessment methodology and adopting amendments to the rules were from February 10th, 2022. And Cal has a copy of it, Chris Doudak has the affidavit publication. So those were timely notice. In some of the discussion we've had internally, the notice for the adoption of the amended rate schedules, one, A, B, C, and D, was one day shy because of newspaper. So therefore, an amended notice appearing as to the consideration, adoption of schedules A, B, C, and D was published, that that would be considered on April 1st, 2022. And so at the end of this meeting today, we will ask the board to continue this, the three hearings, actually, to April 1st, 2022, because the rates fees and charges, schedules A, B, C, and D are tied into the adoption of the rules. Those are traveling together. So what, yeah, so what, yeah, so what, and, and the assessment methodology travels with the rule amendments too, because we're taking some items out of the, of the, only though two different public hearing. The one's at 12 for the rule, the rules, and then this one was on the agenda for now. No, I understand what I'm, what I'm going to say.
Yeah, but if you approve this, it affects the rates.
Yeah, no, what I'm, what I'm, no, shouldn't, no, what I'm suggesting is that at the conclusion of the hearing, first of all, that the board take as to the rate schedules, to the extent that people are here today to speak on the rate schedules, A, B, C, and D, even though the hearing isn't going to be today, the hearing will be continued until April 1st, that the board hear any comments anybody wants to make on those rate schedules today, and they can also hear on April 1st, but any comments they make today will be incorporated into it. I would also suggest then at the conclusion of the hearing, a rule amendment that begins at noon or thereafter, that also be continued at the conclusion of, at the ending of today's hearing meeting. If we not close it, we continue at April 1st, and the same with the hearing on the assessment methodology, that that, we hear that today as advertised, but then continue the hearing April 1st, that all three actions will all take place on the same day in the effective dates.
But the methodology can be adopted today.
I would say, no, we can't. I would suggest that all three need to be at the same time, tied together.
Right.
No, the rules amendment addresses the request, and so they're all, three are tied together, and we're only talking about two weeks.
Right.
Okay, so what we can do now is discuss.
I hope I didn't confuse that.
No, but we can discuss them.
Oh, okay, you can, you can discuss the rates fees and charge of schedules.
Yeah.
Take public input, but no action today. As to the rule amendments and the assessment methodology, we can open the public hearings on those, and then continue those public hearings.
So.
Is there another assignment sheet?
Use the back, no, it's just the one.
Yeah.
So if the board wants to take up the assessment methodology, the board can open the public hearing, make public comment, have the discussion, and then at the conclusion of today, we move to continue that hearing and all the others.
Yeah, I'd support your, uh, rest.
I'm for that.
Absolutely, well, open for discussion.
Well, you could, well, you could still open the public hearing.
Yeah.
Correct, that's what I said, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing on the methodology, but I also want to say, because it is a large crowd, and there's only so many hours in the day, I'm going to time, three-minute time period, I think that's the only fair thing to do for everybody. So is there anyone who has any comments on this item?
First, we need a motion to open the public hearing, and what I would say is that the O and M methodology is only on O and M.
Right.
It has nothing to do with the utilities, which isn't being changed, and is still being a analytical process by your engineer on the water and sewer needs of a particular development, everything based on one single family unit.
And the rates will be later.
Right, the methodology was posted, we had one comment that was submitted, and it's in your packets. I discussed this with Mr. Wire, and I just gave you his response to those comments, and he'll basically say, do what you want with it, but he used the basic premise of four ERCs per acre. If you decrease it, increase it, that's your choice, but it impacts the charges to everyone else. Establish the number of ERCs that are currently assigned, and then divide it into the budget, you find out what it is. On the current budget, single family would be a $5 increase, a couple of the parcels, primarily the vacant properties, would be a higher cost, but that's a total cost, but not a cost per ERC. Per ERC would be changed to, find that page, just over $400. $400 and 49 cents per ERC, and currently it's $395 per ERC. That's O and L, utility or ERU, utilities, the ERCs are much higher.
You said, well, first.
First, we need to open discussion on the assessment methodology.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, is there anyone in the audience has any questions on it?
Does everybody understand?
I think we need a reading introduction.
Can you, we can't hear you?
I, I think we should have a, like, a reading of the synopsis of what he came up with.
No, it was, it was on the website, right?
And I, and I kind of gave that, what he looked at was the, the primary, you look at what's the benefit, it's, you have to picture it's leanable, it's, he identified what the two criteria were, and use the basis of looking at the costs that are associated in the budget of the ERUs, which would be roadways, administration, mosquito control, and drainage. All of those went into, you know, determining, and, and basically, I think they looked at an average of nine trips per day, and that's how he came up with, with the number of four ERCs, which is a typical home. If you look at the acreage that they have, he went to the county tax records, that the acre in development would be four single-family homes.
He attached a schedule showing the revised assessment compared to the current assessment, and hotel rooms went up $5, so did condo units, so did single-family homes. Both slips, the three sizes, went down $58. The other adjustments were on the vacant parcels, but as far as most of the residents, I think the impact is very small.
Look, my understanding on this, with the O and M, these are not transferable, not, all right, they, they can't be changed.
Right, correct.
So in other words, if someone wanted to get rid of some O and M ERUs, they can't.
Yeah, and then along those lines, that if in the future there is another assessment methodology that determines that there needs to be a different allocation of benefits, that's how that would occur, and the board will make that change again, following the same process that you're doing today. And for the public, I think it was January 19th, our board meeting, the, this item was discussed, I think it was the January 21st board meeting, and your report is that dated January 19th, 2022. And Cal, you said that has been posted and been on the district website?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so they can go back to the website and review it.
Thank you.
Let's, gentlemen, back there. I think, what are we?
Come out, sir, because we have to record.
We have to record it, so it's up here, so if you could please come up here. We can't hear you back there.
Also, I'm sure if you could ask for the name and address for the.
Okay. And name and address, please, but the speakers are here and there.
380 St. Alomar's Drive. How did the change in assessment affect the board votes?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry, I can't.
Liver boy votes, how did they set on liver boy votes?
$58 increase.
Decrease.
Decrease, I'm sorry.
Decrease.
Yeah.
In the O and M, what does don't change in the sewer-water determination of the assessment?
Again, the key issue is this discussion, this is only the general fund, operation and maintenance assessments and allocation, there's nothing to do with the utility ERCs, that's a separate rule amendment that we discussed beginning. I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. David.
Where's, where's the chairman? I can't.
And he did not determine if it was a liver boy stuff or just a bolt of stock. Bolt was a bolt, and it took the total acreage of the Marina area or the Bolt Park, and I think he came up with 11.2, 11.5 acres, 175 slips, and then essentially what he is saying is that .25 per O and M was appropriate, afforded an expensive analysis a year, two years ago on sewer and water, and, you know, that that's what's changed, but this would not change that at all. This is just a general fund activity.
Sorry, thank you.
Do you understand?
Any other questions?
Correct.
My name is Carol Williams, we're building at 141 Wildest Way, renting over in, working at home right now, so I'm learning, you're all new here. My question, I submitted a letter, and I think it was put in your packet, so I had many questions, because I knew I'd be timed when I came up here, and I knew I'd be nervous, and I just wanted to make sure that these items could be covered publicly. I would like you to address them, if you would. I can start at the beginning, but three minutes will run out. Let me start with this.
It's not on the agenda, this is the letter that I got.
That is included, it has public comment in your packet. I just passed out Mr. Wire's response to her letter.
Well, I like it, but I would like everybody to know I took the time to write this, and I start off with talking about.
One minute, I don't think, I don't think it's, it's on the agenda for right now, is it?
She is.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
But you have to understand, most of these people have not seen this letter.
That's correct, and that's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking if you could respect me and go over these items, I only have three minutes, but you certainly have more time. And then if Mr. Wire, who is not here today, who did the methodology, he has a response to me, which I'm going to get handed, which I have not seen before today.
I have not seen it either.
So I think a little bit of effort could have gone into that, excuse me. So anyhow, I wrote this the other day, and my thought was, if we're going to use four O and Ms., which again, are roads, dirt and pavement, mosquito spraying, lights, Cal's offices salary, our lawyer's salary, our engineer's salary, all these things go into the operations and management that we all get to enjoy. So my thought was about the gun club, that kind of stuck out to me right away in the methodology. If he has 53.66 acres back behind parcel 13, and I believe he hasn't been paying any O and Ms., but it's looking at, it's going to go to, what number?
Two.
Two. So for 53.66 acres times four, what does that come to? Over 214 O and Ms., and he's going to go from zero to two. Yet our vacant parcels, A and B up front, they're using the methodology of four O and Ms. per acre, and so I asked, how does that equate? The Marina, we're just told, he took four O and Ms. for the acreage of the Marina, divided it up, and it's being reduced from .40 to .25. So again, I ask about equity, using it the same way, 214 O and Ms. are large for that gun club, but they drive up and down the paved Union Road, going back and forth to a business that charges a membership fee, that charges a daily shooting fee, and it's used, anybody over in Marter Pole sees the traffic going back and forth, and we hear the guns. So why isn't that being used equitably, four O and Ms. per acre on the gun club?
The, Mr. Wire's response is the, the gun club currently has two ERCs.
Right.
They're ready for bathrooms, and that was agreed to by the board, so that could go.
I think that bathrooms only have one.
No, they've got, no, it's two.
They have two.
Yeah, two utility, they have zero general.
Right.
And he, he based it, you know, that thought that about 90 vehicles a day back and forth, I don't, he said, if you think of more, you can adjust it to more.
Right, we're just saying, adjusting the program itself, but we have the flexibility to change that, and I actually brought that up, that I thought the gun club should have more, and it seemed like we were raising the hotel a lot, and not the gun club, and I suggested making that a little bit more equitable, because it's mostly us using the roads, going over to the hotel, to the restaurant.
I think the other.
The restaurant and the bar.
The other discussion on the gun club is it's highly seasonal, like right now, they get a lot of traffic in and out, they do an event every year for wounded warriors, but I think from after Easter or so until about November, it's like a ghost town, the pistol range is actually more busy, but only, and they're only open four days a week, not every day, so I think that was where he came up.
Okay, and Ray, my other point is parcel A and B up on 41, those are vacant properties, they have no water, they have no sewage, and yet we know they get charged ERCs.
They do have availability, that's.
And the gun club, so I'm just going to, I just keep putting that out there, because, Michelle, I appreciate that, I think the gun club really does need to be looked at, but all the other parcels need to be treated with the same methodology, so that there is leanability, and there are legal reasons, and it's easy to explain. And so the other part that I kept talking about, the two-pronged test, which the analyst kept bringing up was, is it fair and reasonable, approachable, special, and peculiar benefits? So that's a multiple that even popped in hand as to what each item is, but I would just, I'm glad, and I wanted to ask the lawyers, so April 1, you want this continued to April 1, where the board could vote on this methodology, is that correct?
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Will there be another meeting before April 1?
No, Madam Chair, may I respond? May I respond?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
As I mentioned at the beginning of today's hearing, the board has the ability, if it wished to, to adopt this assessment methodology, to have properly noticed, but because all three actions are tied together, amending the rules, will we take out the O and M ERCs out of the rule, we then adopt the successful methodology, and then we adopt the rate schedules for utilities, might, and all those need to occur at the same time, so that's my recommendation, and I think the board has conferred, that we will then continue the hearing on the adoption of the revised assessment methodology until April 1. And if the board wishes to direct Mr. Wire to make adjustments, redlined adjustments or any adjustments to the report, that Mr. Wire believes he can support and be legally supportable from Russ's experience, and he has vast experience, the board has the ability to do that. Now, the caveat is, as to the gun club assignment, I think the caveat is, he said, I don't have the background on trips to make that adjustment, but if they are making more than 18 trips per day, then an adjustment should be made, so that is fact dependent, is fact driven as to adjusting the ERCs on the gun club. And all of the others, he has the indication, again, the ability, it could be adjusted if there was certain data, but again, he's comfortable with his report as it exists, and he explains and provides his rationale for how the report is written, the board wishes to exercise the discretion that Russ Wire has laid out, board swears we can do that.
And my second question was, you're going to have a meeting today where we are all present, and then on April 1, if the board decides to vote on the methodology with any changes or no changes, will there be another meeting before they take that vote?
No, the meeting, the, the public hearing will be on April 1.
And, and how is, so there is a public hearing?
Yep, we've already noticed a public hearing for April 1, because the issue with regards to notice for.
And what does that say, where is it, here?
It's all, yeah, within the.
Okay, I, that's what I mean to you, so on April 1, there will be a meeting here.
At the conclusion of today's meeting, we'll ask the board to continue all three public hearings until April 1st, 2022. At that time, the board can continue the hearings further or take action at that time, so that will recommend taking action.
Okay, thank you.
And you're all held in this building.
Thank you.
Let's see, Cal, on the, the gun club, how much of that land is conservation?
Conservation. Well, I don't know exactly, but I know that a large portion of it is unusable, because that's a rent from the.
Right.
Which you can't build on. I think it's also under flood plain.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there was a, all of that land was like junk, and that's why they turned it into a gun ring.
Russ, okay, I agree with the speaker who's just up there, if we need to study, then we better get it pretty quick, find out how many cars are driving through that thing every day, because the O and Ms. are based on overhead, and now all of a sudden, for this one, we want to base it on ER, what was always there as an ERU, or whatever you want to call it, utility rating, too. So his response to that question, to me, is invalid, all right? His response that it's always been based on two ERUs, when, when everything else is based on administration costs, so it's, that's an invalid statement, it's not a valid response, not a, not an acceptable response.
So we need to.
Yeah, it should be more. So we need, so we need something to come up with by April 1 to figure out how many, how many members are in that club.
Well, I guess, yeah, Russ is indicating that trip generation is the appropriate calculation, I'm, I'm not saying that's what he's saying, then whether or not we could, David could get a good statistical sampling of trips between now and April 1, that's an engineering question.
I mean, you know, we, they, they drive by 41 that we pay for, they drive by the median, everything is.
But it's seasonal, so they got.
Well, seasonal, I think we're involved with the way their business is brought, the same with the hotel, they're seasonal, and we can't adjust how we charge by season, resident by season.
Well, no, but if you're basing it on trips, out of fairness to that, the, the hotel's year-round, the gun range is seasoned, they're open, but now is when they do the heaviest load of traffic.
But they're open, yes.
That's here from me, from me, I asked David, of course, to put the engineer on the side. David, are trip generation calculations based upon peak season, peak day, peak hour?
I, I think you got the ability to calculate on a couple of different levels, peak season, and then also maybe some average day type things. It's been a while since I've gotten into trip generations, but there is some tables that are already set up that talk about specific uses, I'm not sure about gun clubs being one of those specific areas we can take a look at.
Well, it's a business.
It's a business, right, we just need to, you know, use that broken down by specific types of businesses, so we'll look at those. Now, there isn't something that exists, sometimes what you do is you do a, do basically a study where somebody parks out there, they count their vehicles going back and forth, another alternative may be to get their records, to find out how many, how, how many people actually do use facility on a peak day and so forth, and try to extrapolate some information that way.
Is it based on seven days a week or part-time?
I'd have to really look at the tables, they are set up for peak, you know, like a church, of course, their peak day is going to be a Sunday, so it's, they're different kind of uses of different kinds of peaks.
Yeah, I think what David's saying, there is a manual, it's called trip generation manual.
Yes.
Based upon examples from around the United States, traffic engineers, traffic consultants, and experts have determined that the appropriate trip generation for certain types of use of their acts, for example, typically a single-family home is assigned a trip generation rate of 10, 10 trips per day, multi-families like 6.5, A and Ls are like, I mean, so they're, it's based upon historical studies of various areas.
And that, and that's what he used, but you can't, that's how he came up with the nine per ERU, and, you know, if you're going to put a trip counter in a gun club, you need to put it in front of every driveway, and it just becomes unwieldy, and this is what he's trying to avoid, to come up with a simple average usage by communities. Now, they shouldn't probably be charged zero, there should be some.
Again, I disagree with that, the residences are fixed, it's a fixed unit, a seasonal restaurant, seasonal hotel, the gun club, that's not a fixed, fixed value, so no, they have to have trip.
But what about the roads we give them, not paved?
Well, we're not really giving it to them, we're responsible for it anyway.
We're responsible for it, so they don't have all the amenities everybody else has.
Right.
Right, it's not life factor.
Right, they're not, no. And it's highly seasoned, I think, we have to understand what.
They're already not highly seasoned.
We brought, no, it's year-round, but we brought in.
Seasonal.
We brought in an expert, an independent expert, he doesn't work for anybody here, we brought in an expert to bring us up to date, because it hadn't been done, and that's what this report is, it's his methodology, and he was here, and he did have a meeting with everybody, he did explain it, and he did answer questions, so it's unfortunate he's not here today, but.
We could check with Russ and find out if he did use a trip generation hub, and if he, if he did, if we, I, that's something I don't deal with every day, but I can get somebody to look at it real quick.
Yeah, he did use it for single family.
Good, good, but we can confirm that and then go from there.
So what, what is the direction we want to go in here?
We still, for people.
Yeah, we still, yeah, I think you had a question?
Catherine Oswald, Newport Drive, I disagree with Ray. I went over there in July with camp kids, this place was packed in July, okay? Yes, it's seasonal, as you said, the restaurant is also seasonal, but we have seasonal residents, they don't use the roads during off-season, so where's your methodology when it comes So where's your methodology when it comes to, well, they're seasoned, so they don't have to pay? It's not fair that the gun club makes big bucks, big bucks during season.
That's kind of here and there.
I know, but you've got people going in and out, in and out for the hometown, in and out, in and out for the, for the restaurant, in and out, in and out, and as everyone has said, to go back to the gun club, and they're-
I think you're gonna find-
They have methodology when everybody's-
I think you're gonna find the hotel is year-round, and the restaurant is not a gauge, but it's open year-round. And I think with the new owner in place, you're gonna find more and more, it's year-round. The gun club is also year-round, but evidently they have a season. They have memberships at both the shotgun range and at Lululemon, the pistol range, and they have a season, like a lot of businesses do. So all I'm suggesting is, not that they don't pay, I'm suggesting it has to be a fair average.
Absolutely, what they need.
That's all I'm saying.
Also, what about the ones that are back there with their little planes and stuff?
I don't know how that's-
No, that's not the issue right now, let's, let's, they own the land, so they don't have to pay anything.
They're cutting the grass.
There's, that area in the back has no streetlights and a dirt road, and it's mainly conservation.
We give nothing to that area.
We give absolutely nothing for it.
They're using our roads.
They're, but the roads are kind of there anyway.
Yeah.
Joe? Thank you. Joe Levy on Winmore Drive, or Winmore Cape. Listening to this, my opinion is, it looks like you guys are heading to a convoluted way of formulating how it should be charged, who's here, who's not. It should be for everybody the same, otherwise in the future, someone's gonna be coming up and saying, "I'm only here on weekends, I should be getting charged this." And should I give you a schedule of the days I'm here, and what days I'm not here? And then you should calculate it. It's gotta be a one formula for everybody, so not to have these problems in the future from somebody else, whether the bacon lot, who has two places up. It's gotta be everybody the same, not-
I think that's the way it's calculated now.
Not 50, well, no, it isn't, because the gun club doesn't pay two. If it's by acreage, it's by acreage. If it's by people driving up and down, and we have to put a ticket every time you go-
Your comments were just about residents, how much you hear.
Yeah, it's everything, but that's the same thing. How many are part-time or not part-time, full-time, full-time? It doesn't make a difference. It's gotta be a formula that is applicable to everybody, because if you're gonna tell me that they're part-time, I'm part-time. I want to get paid, I want to pay less, and I don't lose the roads. Maybe we should calculate by how many cars we have, how many actual we have. You can go on forever and ever and ever. It's gotta be one formula for everybody, so we don't have these discussions and waste so much time, and it's only fair. You want to have 50 acres, I'll pay 50 acres. You have one acre, hey, it's fair. You don't want to have the 50 acres, there's something else about it. But everybody's gotta be calculated the same way, otherwise you're gonna get all this going on forever and ever. And it doesn't matter if you're seasonal, doesn't matter how much you make in your business, doesn't matter any of that, it matters one formula.
Based on that, you said, a single-family residence has figured out how many trips?
Well-
Nine?
Nine.
Nine trip, nine, nine a day, right? Nine a day? So if we got the number of trips that were made to the gun club, right? So if it was nine, then it would be the same as one unit. One, one O&amp;M. It was 18, you two O&amp;Ms. It's 36, it's four O&amp;Ms. You got it, you got a measurable event there. We're already figured on eight or nine or 10, or whatever it is for an individual unit, and you just divide that into how many trips you count.
Okay.
And then you got a second number.
Okay, I, I think part of the consideration also needs to be that he should pay a little less, because it's not paved, and there's no lights, and that's something that we all have.
And it's conservation.
And it's conservation.
But I think before-
But I agree, I agree, it could be more, I think Joe was right, I mean, it should be more than the two, the company, or that's whatever he said before. It needs to be higher, but we get to adopt the methodology program, if you will, and we still have the flexibility to change those.
So the only thing, he doesn't have flights.
And he doesn't have a pay. He doesn't have a pay.
He has, but they get there. It's administrative costs.
Yeah. The problem is like the restaurant, you can't control their business. They can have a booming business this year, and they can have nothing next year. So what do we have to adjust it every year?
I think before we guess at it, we should have the guy who did it explain it.
Yeah.
Well, he recommended two ERUs, which is 18 trips a day. Now, they don't get, he based it on, should know better than me, but I don't believe he gets any mosquito treatment out there, and they don't get, they have drainage.
Right, they have a soft water.
And Madam Chair, my recollection is that Russ can be available on April 1. He is on April 1, so I really think he should explain how he came up with it, rather than us discussing it now, burning. Yeah, and to the comment about one, one size fits all, that's not a valid approach. I mean, again, Russ, I've been through this many times now, as David has, that to have it regularly identified, assuming of our seats, that Ross was out of the norm. The gun club, the hotel bar seats, and the restaurant, but the two at the restaurant, those, we put at zero, and then the gun club is two O&amp;M ERUs. So at the hearing on April 1, the guy that did it is gonna be here, he's yet, but we'll ask him how he did it.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, in between that, if the board wishes to, the board can direct the staff, that, all right, David and getting with Russ, as to whether or not this is sufficient data could be collected between now and April 1, to provide a basis, a legally defensible basis, to adjust the ERUs for the gun club property. If that's, the board can provide that direction.
Then, are we in agreement in doing that? Yes, and count the-
Yeah, sure. Just, he'll be here on the first. If you have specific, Scott how he prepared in his presentation. And then the response that he just gave you, that I just passed out, that says you could change it however you want.
Well, not however you want, you can change it based on various factors and how-
Sure.
Yeah.
So we need a count. We need a car count.
Well, you can't just do a car count at the gun club and not everywhere else.
Plus, it'd be very hard to do a car count between now and April 1, because you-
What do you mean everywhere else? We already have a fixed number for the residential unit.
Which you gotta be consistent. There's nobody that accounts, that does sign count for an ERU. I think the discussion is, David correctly brought wrong, that the ITE manual has a trip generation rate for single-family homes for multi-family, and that's huge, absence of unusual circumstances. There may or may not have been a trip generation ITE analysis for gun clubs, and he may, he may have taken the closest possible use, and that's what transportation engineers do. And that can be, again, valid, but I think it can be focused on just the gun club, that trip generation.
Yeah, that's something, I can call Russ up and just talk a little bit about how he came up with that trip generation, whether it's from ITE. And if not, then we can take a look at what ITE looks like in comparison to a single-family home, and also even some of the other uses, if they can pop up.
Because there are, there are a range of recreational uses in the ITE manual, whether they're close enough or not, that's a question for you and the engineer.
It's been a while, it's been a while since I got into that manual.
Can you send out a email to everyone after you talk to Russ?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just real quick, just real quick. I was here at the meeting when the gentleman was here to do the methodology, and he said at that meeting that he didn't know anything about the gun club, or how many people drove up and down. He did say that, do you remember?
Yeah.
And he just kind of left it out there, like, "I'm leaving it up to you to determine." And so he's saying, "Do as, do as you should." But how can we just do trips going back and forth for the gun club? I mean, determine how many acres are usable acres then? I mean, I know it says 53.66, so if you want to peel off some because it's swamp, or because it's whatever, I just say that the road trip deal, I think, is a waste of time. I could drive up, we could all drive up and down the paved road and the gravel road, and somebody could flick it, and that wouldn't be really factual. So I think, you know, going off into the woods here and trying to say, "We'll do road trips," there are some people here that have three cars, there are some people that have one car. And so, you know, it's just all over the place as far as trips go, so I don't think that's a factual thing. Yes, he used something to come up with this, because he said that the studies are out there. But just, you know, have something that you can say to all of us that makes sense. It's a business, it's open year-round, so is the hotel. They drive on the paved Union Road, there are lights on the Union Road, administrative salaries are high for this board, landscaping. So I'm just saying, quit trying to cut off different things and saying it's not responsible. I'm just saying, spread the O&amp;Ms, the operation management, the roads, the water, the runoff, the salaries, the insurance, whatever. Everybody pays O&amp;Ms. A condo might have fewer toilets, or more toilets than a house, but they still pay for all the O&amp;Ms. They should be treated one-on-one.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move on. So, we're ready to close this and continue it.
I have a question. I have a question, Catherine, if you would, please. Catherine Tellmeyer, 314 Newport Drive. Question on agenda, item 18, it says that the public hearing will be at 9:30 a.m. On the announcement in the newspaper, April 1 at 12 o'clock noon, which is, I realize people think I'm very picky about a lot of things, but-
12 o'clock noon was established today for the utilities, and it was carried over since this is being continued to April 1. Yeah.
Noon or 9:30?
Well, there are actually, count, there are two notices for the April 1 hearing. One was the amended notice on the rates, and I don't have that in front of me. Then there was an amended notice of the meeting, I think, one was, I'll try to pull them up. Well, that's, that's the great reason charges.
Right, and that was the amended, it was in some-
Right, and then there's a separate amended notice as to the meeting hearing agenda. There's a separate notice. It's gonna be, it's gonna be in the paper on Monday. That will happen 9:30 time for the continuation of this overall meeting.
Okay, so therefore, this meeting at noon is not on this agenda?
Yeah, no, that meeting is the utility rates, fees, and schedules is on the agenda for today. And at the end of today's meeting, remember, the hearing will reopen, and then asking the board to continue that hearing on those rates, fees, and schedules, A, B, C, and D, to April 1, at the same time.
At noon?
Yes.
And then there's another public hearing at 8:30?
No, at 9:30.
9:30, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it would be a public hearing, continued public hearing on this matter, the assessment methodology, and on the minutes.
Okay, so on this agenda, this meeting at noon is not on this agenda?
This is.
Please.
All three of the public-
So here, there, yeah.
She's saying the times.
The time's different. It says 11, or noon.
I was gonna do it, I guess.
Yeah, one's at 9:30 and one's at noon. No, I guess what she said is, the agenda has 9:30. And, no, it said 9:30. We're gonna clarify it, and we get to the end of the meeting, the times will be clarified.
Thank you.
All right, Steve?
Steve McNamee, 134 Winmore Cape. Question, I, I provided a survey of flat A and flat B out here today, and I think some of you guys have probably seen it. I'm curious as to why, when the O&amp;M methodology report came out, that my acreage was inflated?
I, I can't answer that. I don't realize that.
He worked off the tax rolls. So I don't know what-
What do the tax rolls say?
I don't know what the tax rolls say.
Well, that's where the information came from.
But no-
So that's Kyle County's tax roll.
Right.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, the, also that, so, conservation, you're saying the gun club over here, some of that can be used because it's unbuildable in conservation. I have the same thing over there, but mine's been thrown into it. I mean, I mean, what's gonna be assessed on the entire property?
What's the acreage on the parcel that you fill up? It's 2 acres, if not?
It's roughly 2 acres.
And it's just conservation.
What's the O&amp;M on it now? I think it's six, correct?
Six.
Okay. At four, if you take off half an acre for conservation, that makes an acre and a half. Guess how many O&amp;Ms that is?
But that's not what he's saying, he wants to put on there.
You mean the new?
The newest methodology is showing- It would be eight.
Eight?
Yeah.
So that needs to be changed, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
That's only fair.
Yeah, I agree.
He's looking at it at four and four.
He's not the main conservation.
Well, not only that, I'm sure it's not on the, it's kind of the flat.
He didn't have to be excited to consider the tax rolls of these conservation samples.
And we're not saying he did here also.
How do we know that if, are we, he's saying that it can't be used because it's conservation?
Yes.
Is it an easement?
Yes.
It's an easement?
Yes.
That means they have an easement on it, but it can't be built on because it's conservation.
Right, correct.
Correct.
Steve, I think you're still at six.
I guess.
Tony, is there something, do you recall if there's some visible uses on conservation zone?
I guess it's back up, what's fundamental is, is go back to the methodology, utilization of acreage per se. So I don't know, it's a question from Russ, what was the basis for allocation of ERUs to the Taka property and Profecta property? I think that's a question we need to ask Russ, have that available for the April 1 hearing, and then we can have that discussion, and whether Russ believes based upon what Mr. McNamee is saying today, if Mr. McNamee can give Russ a copy of the conservation issue, and whether Russ will that changes. His recommended allocation, I think that's important. Again, we're dealing with, we want to deal with facts, I think that would be important. So if you could give that conservation easement, Mr. McNamee, to Dave Schmidt, and Dave, if you can give that conservation easement, the survey that you have, for Taka Homes property to Russ, and then chat with him about the conversation with Mr. McNamee.
And let's see how he came up with it, and he'll be here on the first.
But it's showing he's having 2.4 acres over there? 2.36 or something like that?
Is it under southeast commercial?
Uh, southeast commercial, yes.
So he's going from six to nine on one, and six to 12 on the other.
Right.
So it's a draw on the other, and he's talking, you shouldn't. It was a conscious, that had a paper, it was obviously a book.
Well, and I understand that as well, but also, I've only got two ERCs left, utility ERCs on there. I mean, I can't build anything beyond that without purchasing additional ER, ERs.
You got it.
Yeah.
And you're talking about using, about drainage, and you're talking about trips and all that sort of stuff? I'm not generating any of those things. Well, so, if we're gonna pay the gun club, we're not gonna put additional O&amp;Ms on them because, well, we're not providing them with drainage. I'm not even in a drainage area there. If you look at the map, I'm out of that drainage area. It was never even designed for it. I run no water off of it. I don't have a fire hydrant to find out about fire hydrant four months ago. Still waiting, trying to develop land, still can't find out if I can get a fire hydrant.
Mr. and Madam Chair, what I would suggest is, a fire hydrant is a utility issue, as to the other issue, I think, again, that's what, make sure Russ is, when he's here, he's aware of the questions that are being asked, we can address those specific questions.
Yeah.
And then provide testimony as the basis for his allocation of recommended assessment methodology.
Right, so we'll add that to what we're gonna-
Yeah.
That's careful.
And again, the board, and then make adjustments, corrections, the whole idea, it's a kind of report, you want it as it, you want to make adjustments. Because what will happen is, after this assessment methodology report is- Because what will happen is, after this assessment methodology report is adopted, that'll be used as the basis for the board's budget.
Right.
And then when the board adopts those two advertised agreements for the budget, they'll be one of the big notices in the paper because it's a new assessment methodology. And individual notices will again go out, so people have another opportunity to talk about this.
Okay, Catherine, you'd be the last speaker?
Yeah, I just have one last question. Catherine, as well, go over drive to the board. Um, but this is based on, like, residential, is nine trips a day, room?
That's what the engineering study...
Okay. I'm not sure of anybody else, but there's no way I made nine trips a day. I live out of nowhere. I made one or two trips a day if I want. I don't understand where the nine trips a day came from. It's transportation.
It's a guide, it's a transportation guide.
They've done all the...
That's all I want to know. I'm dead.
Take the motion and move on. Uh, the motion would be to continue the meeting to April.
Somebody can make the motion here.
April first. Second.
All in favor? Okay, next agenda item.
Uh, the, Lindsay is here, the developer, and he's got a flight to catch. And he'd asked if they could jump to parcel thirteen.
Uh...
Mike is here, and Lindsay Carr is here also.
Yeah, so this is an offer?
Uh, there is an offer, yes. And, uh, the...
What is it?
Uh, yeah, but there's the listing brochure that Mike's got. There's some questions that he has responded to as far as the public listing. And then there is the offer that you have now. And I thought if you, Mike, just give you an update where he's at. And so that's why she's here.
Yeah.
How did we have an offer before? So it's even listed? Yes, we did. It said to sign on February twenty-seventh. It was not listed publicly until February twenty-seventh, or February eighteen.
It's always been the same.
Yeah, always.
So, Cal, can I say something before Mike? I'm the one at the, at meeting the other night that was questioning how we got five or six offers, five I guess it is, prior to it being publicly marketed or listed. I was given bad information by the person who watched that stuff and residential listings for us. Not us, me. So I went on Nextdoor and I corrected that. The person was looking at it, didn't see it on the MLS, but it's highly, it's more important by far that it's on a website called LoopNet. And we're a member of LoopNet. It's strictly for commercial. So just so you know, it went on LoopNet on February twenty-eighth, right after our meeting, at an appropriate time. And within eighteen days, he's gotten, I believe, five offers. But it's all straight up. The one offer that came in ahead of time was, I believe, from Case International. As a residential realtor, I do it occasionally. And for a commercial, you always have clients that are waiting, especially in this market. Always. There are houses in here now that every realtor that works in here has five or six people that wanna buy them right now, and with a phone call they can button it up. I'm sure with commercial listings, that's the same way. But I would like to tell you one other thing. I think Paul Fataio, who is the realtor that has the dormitory property, sold it to this gentleman on February twenty-second, I believe it is. On the next day, they had a discussion, and correct me on this, I think Paul brought it forward to you. So that's how it happened. Paul brought Case International forward to Mike, who is a listing agent for the big land. So that's how that happened.
Have there, you still have one point, audience comments on agenda items. And I have just one question before this begins. If you would just explain to me, Deborah James, Sunrise, Hays, the timeline on parcel thirteen's decision. So how much time would there be for the board to review the proposals that are coming in? And also for the residents to also review those proposals and be able to comment to you on those proposals? What's the timeline?
I don't think there is one.
There's the time.
To answer you though...
How is it gonna happen? How is the decision gonna be made?
My opinion, my opinion would be, there are, we hear five different proposals. And we would have to look at each one of those. There's a couple other things that I wanna do as well to ensure we're making the right decision. And after that, to make a decision or not.
That's our job.
Yeah.
Any residents have questions or whatever, they could contact any one of us. They can contact the management company, but that's what the board is here for.
Okay, so then I'm assuming that the residents will all be able to review those proposals? If they're online, yeah.
For, but I don't, Tony, I don't, I don't, once they're submitted to public record.
Yeah, so you should be able to see them.
And where will they be?
On the website?
On the website, under what?
Well, it's, uh, they, nobody has to request.
Yeah, you request it to the...
It can't be converted to, like, one that you have now can't be converted to an eighty-eight client document. But none of them are a secret, because trust me, we don't wanna make a mistake on this one. So the input, none of it is a secret.
Okay, right, Tony?
Yeah, man, I'm sure what I'm suggesting for it, that process is, I guess you're, did you see Mike? Is that, that if there are five potential offers out, is that what it sounds like, the five party? That, that the listing agreement will need to be modified to address this. Because right now, it's definitely geared towards one contract at a time, kind of arrangement. And so that's one of the questions I think needs to be discussed today. How is the listing agreement gonna be modified? So that the board, and there's some other factors. One is the timeframe, because what's happened in this, this contract, it came in between board meetings with a very quick take it or leave it, accept it or not, which is not reasonable, feasible, fee... Reasonable and feasible, that's a new word, feasible. Under the sunshine of it goes to the notice requirements to have meetings. You can't have, you only have emergency meetings when there's a board of five members. Right, so I guess that's, it's a good discussion point for today with this interest, is how the board will approach that. We can have special meetings in between meetings, but that may be unified, no separation at all. Or you can, again, since the board's continuing this meeting, it might be an opportunity and review all the proposals. But I think we may also need the mental list agreement, like, to address this, this sort of variation of the theme, I call it, the hyper. If that, are you remittable to that then, or?
Hyper is not that good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But, so you say yes to everything? Just kidding.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was my answer, sorry.
Okay, let me just then clarify. First of all, it's still, if someone else, another person came...
Oh, yeah.
We haven't accepted that thing.
It's just over.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just happening quicker.
So the, the way for the residents to see these proposals and to comment on the proposals is through the CID website. But they may need to individually ask for those proposals, is that correct?
Yes, but they're public record.
Thank you.
And also remember, there's a lawyer representing us too, reviewing all these contracts.
Yes. But also, I mean, again, the land is owned by the residents.
Right.
Not by the board, and it's, it's the, the residents should have the ability to look at the proposals, to look at what the future of the residency.
Absolutely not.
Okay, Mike?
Okay. Man, I apologize for dragging Mike in while this is just...
That's all right.
Anyway, you know, I've been on this, the islands for a long time, I've been working for a long time. Used to have the old hotel listed. Uh, first off, let me just pass these out to everybody. This is the original, original, well, let me see. I think that might be a...
We've got it, I think.
You got, you got the original brochure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
And it shows that, I hit it on the internet on the eighteenth of May.
Yeah.
It was just six business days after I received the listing. It would have had a tremendous response to it. I do not get five offers, but it had tremendous response to it. And there's some very, very good folks. I have one of the top developers in Cincinnati, Cincinnati, forty figures. Naples, Play Winfield, he's done a dozen very good projects in Naples. And he came out last Sunday and spent all day here on the other side.
Jimmy, Mike, is there a microphone that Mr. Carr can use so that people in the back can hear him?
Yeah.
Is there? No, it's in there, I don't know how to set it up. Unless that's it all the way back. Randy's not here, right? Mike, one quick question while you're in the brochure. The picture seems to show the old hotel was part of that parcel. Which it's not.
No, of course it's not.
But the, but the line has been just thrown off there. I just wanted to make sure that the referrer looks at it to understand that's not...
And it came out, the first thing that came out was this. Then I added the cover letter to it.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't, questions just like that.
Yeah.
A little better explained. This is the biggest audience we've had since then.
Yes.
They heard you were coming.
Yeah. Not sure if it's prepared. It's like waiting for legal team.
Like, archer. No, it might be forever, it's all...
So, Mike, maybe we can talk while we're out of, like, primarily, you had told me you had five inquiries?
Yeah, I called Cal over now and then because the inquiries were coming in. I said, look, Cal, we're gonna have a lot of action here today. It turns out, we have two very good contracts, post-contracts. And we've got a whole letter of intent. And that's what we have. But to be very pleased with the two actual contracts we have, they're from good brokers. Paul Fataio is one of them, and... Kim Brandy is a second.
They're all...
Pulling back their, back as, full banker manager. And they're both good brokers, and they both have very good prospects, good buyers. And we'll tell all about it. But to start with, we did this marketing, phone kept ringing. I called Cal, I said, Cal, we're gonna really have some gold here. But then as people got more and more into it, this is a, you know, an interesting property. Not every developer wants to do something like this. This is more allied to ecotourism or something along that, as opposed to something. Fire account, you know, the six neighbors. Then I can say, does it work?
No. There's a switch, oh, wait a minute, hold on, hold on. Try it now, Mike.
Okay. There is a switch on...
Yeah, it's on.
I have a switch. The switch says on.
Yeah.
You guys, okay. Get an engineer behind the body.
There you go. Can y'all hear him now? Okay, good.
Okay, back where we were, we started marketing right away, got all sorts of inquiries. I also made a bunch of phone calls. We did inquiries from the biggest developer in Southwest Florida, which is from our own. I went personally to people like Stock Development, very creative, done a great job in the last twenty years in Howard County. Went to London Bay, they're very creative and whatnot.
You keep it by your mouth, Mike.
Well, yeah, there you go. There's a lot better. Anyway, we love, we've come down to Paul Fataio, probably his buyer, contract. Notice when I got the listing just about, I called, followed me outside here and said, Mike, I got a buyer for you. And he's a very good buyer. Seven back here, the other broker, Marco Allen, both good brokers. He brought me a buyer from Cincinnati, and it looked very good. I bet their contracts are doing well. Plus, we have, what's his name?
Scott Preppin. Scott, Scott Preppin. Scott Preppin.
Yeah, Scott Preppin. Scott had sent a letter of intent then last October, I believe it was. From being a activity, it was at that time that we were talking about. Probably within contract, this, or Donald Barrow, not like Price's Girls.
I have that.
Zedon, I guess, the name of the company. Plus, I brought the Jones family. They were under contract for two million or two million one or something of that nature. And they really wanted to do the job. They were a little family in Cincinnati, from Naples, and they're very experienced. But they finally decided that they didn't think the RV by itself would fill up all the land. And so they, I, I, I let that go and finished the one kind of place to put on here for property. It seemed like a good idea. But then they found out because this was gonna take too long, et cetera. So, the, both of these, this Scott Preppin, he had a letter of intent. And it was sort of, I had a letter of intent, I expect, that closed laws. So usually, I can have all the permits in place, and this is gonna take a year or year and close. And this did, this had a three hundred and sixty days, who built this period, pretty wish to walk around. Reason, didn't wanna get a deal. Any marketing done during the period in this? I talked to Scott a number of times. Scott is an interesting guy because he owns all the, you know, posts. He owns all the posts across the street. So he has a natural affinity for this. But he just wasn't interested in talking about it, he just, it's not going any further. So we're down, we're down to these two, two offers we got. They both were full price, three million dollars. They both have a relatively short due diligence period. I think one's a hundred and twenty days, the other one's ninety days. They both would close three days afterwards, and one of them, I think, is fifteen days afterwards. So they're very, very inclined to accept it. I don't wish, one of them is a residential developer from Colorado, I believe it is. Done a lot of projects. He, in addition to his contract, we have pictures of the type of product he might build out here, residential homes and whatnot. And he's very experienced in dealing with permitting and authorities and all that kind of stuff that we did on Colorado. So he feels comfortable coming in and buying property relatively short time before he has all his permits. The other buyer is a guy named Jones from Cincinnati, my old hometown. And he just moved to Marco Allen a year ago. He owned in Cincinnati, on the higher river, a, a little bit, and he had a bunch of boats and boat storage and RV park, and very successful. He told me that more money he spent on the RV park better perform. So he's not gonna leave, he's gonna grow right. He talked about all of his affairs or concrete, et cetera, et cetera. And he just sold his property up there last year for, I believe it was twelve million dollars. And I have a letter of intent, a letter coming on. Some land, if you can say, it's seven million dollars worth, worth of people to put into the project. So which one would you like to hear about first? Residential or the RV? Residential or the RV?
I think, could we have Lindsey speak first because he's got to catch a plane?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Case.
Yeah. Yeah.
Grab the mic.
Yes, sir. Hi, everyone. My name is Lindsey Case and I'm from Colorado Springs. And you're going to be intrigued by this because I came and I've been coming to Florida since last June trying to find a deal to do. So I'm going to deal with it. I don't do anything else but make money. That's it. So I'm here to make money and I'm going to marry it with you and make a lot of money for you because I have a way to do it. And I'm not buying a three million dollar site. I'm buying a two point six acre site right now. So I've got you. I'm married to you already. What I would do is on the three million dollar site, first of all, I'd raise the tappings. That's going to happen. I'll give it to you to get. The second thing is you qualify what you want. Because I'm not doing this deal. It's your property. You tell me what you want. I'll give you the three million. I'll pay the fees on the tax. We'll do it. And then when we sell it, the gross sales price, I'll give you a percentage of it. How's that? Okay, because I can feel like the guy who wrote the Cincinnati offer prepped me pretty close. He followed me. No one comes and buys deals like this without contingencies. Like, oh, I've got to have, I'm buying it unseen, blind, because I know this board, this families. The criticism that we hear, I can appreciate they're all there. But the quality of the engineering, the quality of the legal counsel, what I've heard, and I'm not even really doing this. I'm not here. I was prepared to promise. What I would say is here's my plan. And you sign the offer today because I'm not here to wait for you. Okay, my offer is now. If those five people voted right now for it, I'd be your new buyer. It's fine right now. I'm not here to walk away. Another guy that made it to this meeting, he's not here. This is the dividing moment for me. Either accept it or I'm out of here. How's that? But I'm not going to. I really don't want you to feel that way. But I do want you to know that when you decide what you want on the grant. And I can do that. In sixty days, we can have a total plan ready to go to the county. You are engaged. You're going to get everything I've heard here about the EPU's. What will the massive change be between now and April first? You just look at what my land plan will be. You'll have a whole new future of a brand new sewer plant. Seven million dollars? I mean, I'm looking at paying just at least three million in water and sewer tax that you don't even charge right now. So I have more to give you than anyone could throw up against except a local Naples guy. And I would always be happy to do this. JV with a local guy. I'd rather JV with this team here. Okay? And you will get the outcome you want. I heard so many people, oh, it's so low price. Well, we don't know when the market's going to tend either. And we do know we need a seven million dollar plant. And we do know we need action. Time is of the essence. And that's what I'm going to take my offer, gentlemen. That's not really my way. My way is to take your time. You'll challenge everyone out there. And if you find someone better than me, get them. And then I'll enjoy watching them do. Because I'm going to owe my two point six. And then I'll do my site there. But I only want what you want because I'm now married to this place. I'm not just a guy saying, hey, I'll come do something. I'm already here with my investment, so. I would assume this, the board needs to make a sixty day knowledge on how they're going to accept an offer. If you can't accept my offer, you need to determine what the criteria you want from the buyer. What is the land plan? So perhaps this is the way you ask for proposals and then they submit five different plans. You all as a community decide is that your best vision? And then you vote on them or pull them in. If you're going to go with that Democrat. If you want, I would rather just say these five board members make all the decisions and you're going to be pretty happy. So. All the best.
That was very good. Especially if you have no, actually rhyme one word to the other. Here's the giveaway. Both work we're dealing with are very good. Let me pass out real quickly Mr. Case's contract. I don't know if you all have it or not.
I have one question. You said something about a seven million dollar water plant. What do you mean by that?
Your name's seven million dollars, you're talking about a sewer plant?
No, no, he's talking about the whole, he's talking about the name, the CIP of the company. The whole CIP. It's everything. No, 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 it's okay.
You'll see in these, there's a bunch of pictures of the type of product that he might like to build. Like you said, it's a very good offer. If you want to accept it today, that'd be my offer.
Mr. Case, Mr. Case was the first offer. And I'm only telling you that because I researched them. And it's called Case International, right, Mr. Case? And they're in Colorado Springs. And you should look them up online. Nothing against anybody else we could be dealing with, who knows? I'm just telling you, I've had the opportunity to research him. I'm going to research anybody who puts in an offer. And look up Case International in Colorado Springs. You can see what they do.
Yeah, but one is a residential community, I think.
I want what you want.
Mr. Case's proposal.
Yeah, I have one question. There was something here about deferring the ERCs.
Oh, reserving a hundred fifty ERCs.
I said one, yeah, I said one fifty on there.
It's reserving, but I think it's also deferring.
No, I think it was just reserving, but.
It's to be negotiated.
Right.
Yeah. And maybe it's only a hundred because remember I did that allocation sheet that showed sixty, sixty, sixty.
Well, that was my other question. If you did use a hundred and fifty, then for the acreage, on the average, you'd be using three ERCs per acre. So is your plan mostly one family or four families?
My idea is a hundred even storing tower.
Okay.
Between the gun range and the lake. Lake stays there forever. It becomes a toll community open park of about twenty acres. We do some housing right that come in on the left. House that up with the housing like was over on the east, the west side there. And in the tower, it'll be accommodating that. So you guys, everyone here gets at cost pricing. The, anyone else in the market, we know it's going to go through the roof. But if you get at cost pricing, that means you're coming in at the land and the building cost. Plus administration of brokerage. You'd be in at probably twenty percent less than what the market's bearing at the time that the tower's delivered. I just sense that I didn't waste my time to come here and I'm doing what I do. I know what I'm doing. And I know we can do it. But I know a lot of people do know what they're doing too. And I'm not the only one. But I feel like somehow this came to me. I could do. I rise, we just have to get the perfect engineering and legal teams.
One other question.
Work session. I think we need to have a work session about EPU's, not just the boarding. Sometime between now and April one, there should be a work session.
Yeah. I have one other question. We had a meeting the other night and one point that came out that I was, I thought was really good. Would there be a way that we could allocate a portion of that land for the community?
That's what it said. Twenty acres.
Oh, twenty.
Where the bond is.
I think we try to work with the gun guys to do indoor eventually.
Another thing Mr. Case brought up after the meeting where I met him. None of us knew. He'll tell you that he was there. He's asleep. Nobody knew he was there. And it's a good way to do things. Afterwards, I got to speak with him privately. In fact, Deb Janison was there also. And the idea behind the tower at first kind of got to me. But he said it would really eliminate any problem with the noise from the gun range. That made perfect sense. It would give everybody an amazing view. And he showed us pictures like this of kind of residential they do. And I said, well, how would you relate that to power? I live that. I live over there. He goes, we can make it go like this. We can do anything that the neighbors want to make it fit in.
But can you make it disappear?
No.
We'll make sure the engineers and all the bonding and all is done right.
So you'll have the same opportunity. I don't know who the other players are yet. I will learn about them. I do know about him because I researched them. And you should look online and check it out yourselves.
Mr. Case also made it through to four miles to meet with Cal.
Well, and remember, I have the two point six. I'm bringing a sixty nine unit property that's approved in the zone. If you don't want that, we want all those and maybe you can test.
That's a dark corner.
For example, let's do this. Say, if you'll accept my offer subject to this, you'll have to see what I bring to you in the next thirty days on the dormitory side. If you'd like me to give you the option, you execute the option on the contract. And bring other people in in the meantime and compete with them. But I'm just saying this, give me thirty. I mean, don't hang me out. Okay, I can do this. He's got great eyes. I can do it. Let's bring the competition. Now's the time.
There was one last question. Answer your question. In your, in your contract, you asked to, to reserve a hundred and fifty of the two sixty six ERC.
For the tower.
Right? Because you don't know exactly what everybody wants yet. You, you didn't mention deferring, but it's a good question. Let's say we went with your deal. After we decide what the hell are you going to do? Would you need us to defer you paying for those ERCs two years into the future, one year?
It would be paid upon the.
So upfront.
Upfront on the construction.
Remember that comment you made, Sam, about as, as we go along?
Yes.
Yeah, do you remember your?
I mean, our offer's really six million.
As you, as you're put up, you go, you know, it's like, I was thinking in the long line of like homes. Like somebody wants to put up ten homes here. We would give them ten ERCs. And then when they went to the ten, the next ten, we, they, we pick it in that way. So it comes in.
Yeah, so the thing was, was it prior to completion or completion?
It was that occupant had permit.
Well, either that or the other. So either way, I think it ought to be on the time you, the time you get a permit for it. Then once you pull permits, you're committed. And that, you start paying.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
Because that's when you commit the capacity is when they start getting the building permit.
Yeah, and the only other thing I'm thinking is we should have a timeframe too.
Well, we're going to decide what is going in there first.
Yeah, but if we decided on that, we're going to activate the ERCs upon completions. But could completion be two or three years down the road?
No, it's when they pull the building.
When they pull the building. Otherwise, because the county will require a letter of availability.
That's right.
The only way.
See, my mission is that I'm not going to do this counting conversation alone. You're already there in these documents and we're going to get the keys. The guy that had the cattle and the timing to be here.
Now, Mr. Case, one thing, I almost forgot and she reminded me of. Where you're sitting right here in Orchid Cove is an unfinished property. And it's been. It's been unfinished, unfinished property for twenty years. And it really negatively affects us getting condos financed with banks. Because VA won't touch them, FHA won't touch them, Fannie Mae won't touch them because it's unfinished. It's supposed to be a hundred forty five units. It's one sixteen. So that happened when the bed broke last time in two thousand and seven. The Fed has said, and I believe them, that they're going to put the brakes on the economy doing seven incremental increases in the interest rate over the next, before December thirty first. That's what happened with this last guy. And he's still in business, making huge money, does big projects, local. Everybody knows him, big company. But he defaulted. And in fact, any developer that's been in here defaulted. So how do we keep that from that?
Think that way, maybe we do separately a gross thing. So because I'm already invested here, I'm going to make money on my own side already. Well, I'm willing to help the association for no cost. You guys hold on to the side, but meanwhile, I'm taking my plan. You take your plan at the same time. Then we define which, what are the sale sides. You list them and there's a whole market. You guys give me a piece of something from the process. And you own a hundred percent. I'd have to buy the ground for you for three million. You get your own twenty million when the thing sells.
There you go.
I mean, what's a tower setup work? What's an approved tower upside?
Twenty hundred acres. I've been going down. We've got to get some of this done.
Oh, yeah. We need a proposal.
I, I've been making notes all along and Mike makes the next point. Mr. Case has made a couple of comments in representations and commitments verbally as to what would be in the transaction. So we need to sort of pin those down.
Yeah, we need to.
And the proposal contract in front of us has all kinds of other issues. Because of the part about the community, the board having the ability to review the plans is in here. The idea about the allocation of any acreage for community facilities is not in here. The, the representation about a percentage of the sales will come back, you know, public, public price will come back to the district. And here, all those kinds of matters aren't in here. So I guess, Mike, would it be appropriate and, and to ask the board to, I guess, conceptually say, direct the staff to work with, you know, Harold and me, David and Chair. Work with you, Mr. Case, and whoever his counsel is, to work up an option, come back on April first with. It turned out it was a straight contract. Now it's a, hold it for thirty days while you look at what I do with the property. I mean, all that. I mean, I guess that's the question. What form does the board want it to take? We can bring back multiple documents on April first.
Well, I think we need parity.
We need science.
Yeah. Let's see what the other proposal is as well.
Well, we would need to have the bullet points for that.
Yeah, for both of them.
I'm trying to take notes, but maybe I kept her.
Well, I have two proposals really. One is I pay three million and I do it with you guys a bit later. And or else you keep it and I'm going to do it on my two and a half meter side. I'll, I'll do all the rest of it with you at the same time. You don't sell, you still own it. How's that your idea?
That'd be a no vote.
I don't know. Maybe not. But then you decide, but that means that you'll then sell a tower site. And sell the presidential home and units of how many are the units you got out of market price. General, your big list.
I think we would like to get out though.
Yeah.
Real estate.
That's what I'm trying to do. All in favor of my deal, vote yes right now.
No pressure.
No, sorry. Like you say, we need.
We've got. So the essence. I'd fear to be. The one thing that's always bothered me, and it's important to Case and anyone else, is the assurance that they have enough ERCs available. Because you have the new hotel owner who else could track up a bunch of ERCs and we would not have enough.
So I guess what you're saying, until this is resolved or, you know, until it's finalized one way or the other, you want us to commit to the hundred fifty?
I think a hundred fifty will do it.
But not until we agree.
Now, you're taking my contract idea and now you're listening to other people.
No, 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 no.
That's what I'm saying. It's been me to just keep it all, all the time that we.
Yeah, I, I think what he wants, as he moves forward, to know he's not going to lose the hundred fifty. If there were another deal to. If there were another deal two weeks from now, and if.
Well, the problem is, we have to discuss any deal more than just this. And I mean, I asked Cal, I, I called Cal and I said, can we have a special meeting? Because I thought we had five proposals. And that changes every time. But I said, we got to have a special meeting just for this.
Yes, but.
You're, you're talking about water allocation.
Yeah, there's a lot.
You use the word allocations, we use it all the time.
That's what he calls tax.
Allocation.
Yeah. But my only concern is, I know keep it open for other deals, but I guess I'm asking, how, how long are we going to keep it open?
It's up to us. We got to, we got to have, we have to meet just for this.
Yeah.
And it's a public meeting and we discuss any proposals. And that's why.
Heard something about 30 days. So are we putting a time limit on this, 30 days?
It's up to us. But I mean, nothing happens with any of them. You know, until we see what's going on.
You signed on yesterday, started to spend money yesterday.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have.
Yeah. But I mean, he suggested 60 days.
Let you know that's, I'm here. I'm live.
Yeah.
I know I'm not a committee, I'm, but that's what you want.
Everybody thinks this is easy. If not, let's hear about the second one.
Okay. Here's the second proposal. I am worried, I'm not going to run out. Okay. As I mentioned, this fellow was in the business in Cincinnati, sold his property for I think $18 million. And he had an RV resort, an arena. He would like to do the same thing here. Uh, he's got a cover letter here.
Mike, if you could, Mike, on the bottom too.
Please. Cover letter here talks about, he's in a position that the sale is a high RV park. That's why this line of central development work, that further financing involved. Addition to the $3 million purchase price, I estimate additional investment of $3 million or $4 million development RV park. He's both pictures here and whatnot. Contracts are very similar. I believe it's contracted in a, you know, four months, you know, so it's March, on May 31st, whatever. This one's about three months. He's close to a few days later. He can do the same thing. We have a contract here. And it's all very standard. Then he sent us a letter from UBS Bank stating that Donald R. Jones has $7 million in the, in their account at this time. And then he's got a, he hired an engineer to pass the days to put together the sample, what am I looking at? I think this is 150 units. You can see it that everybody's got. Double row of RV sites along the river and more. He's a lake, he's a lake there, uh, next to the lake. I guess that's north of the lake, close to clubhouse. And there's more RV sites. And the vacant land, up to the utility, is there. Of course, that would be a great place for new wealth. Yes, nobody wealth is with that. There's that vacant land that seems to be used for that. And he's very qualified, as Mr. Case says. I am relaxed to land one way or the other. Uh, can you say anything about her?
Yes, I would like to say a little bit.
Come on up.
Uh, I think you can bring it from here.
No.
No, no.
I want to see you too.
Because it gets me.
Right. No, I, I. Yes. Oh, I think it's that I'm most in the I am a local real estate broker here. I lived here for 21 years in the first of Marco Island and then we moved to Naples. And you know, when I came here for my first time, just to play a little bit of a ball, I completely fell in love with this area. To a degree where I bought a condo on vacation, a typical trip. So now I live here with my family for 21 years. My daughter's going to Tommy Barfield Elementary, middle school, parents, college high school, very great from MGCU. Now my daughters are PAs and neighbors here that are doing great now. I came here for the environment. I came here for the food, for the nature. And I think some of you came here for the same purpose. And I came to Marco Island and I found like an amazing, an amazing gem ready for me to do. That environment was just amazing. Then over the years, um, the market grew, real estate came in and it developed our area extent to an degree where I didn't like it too much. Where I said, you know, Marco Island became very crowded, all these high rises on the beach and, and all this, the waterways polluted. More and more people, lucky happy. And all of a sudden, they were really high risers, Canobey, remember that? The high risers at Canobey, that was, I built them, the Sina, one of them heightened. They, they want, when I drive to Marco Island today, I see them all the time. They are on the left hand side. Personally, I don't like that, I don't like higher, higher, the idea of sex. Limiting high risers on the beach and keeping it a small town. Our land development code that we have in place here in Coria County is in agreement with me. Because what they did is they came up with two different kinds of zonings. For this almost 50-acre parcel of land, this is a very deep piece of dirt that some people tried to develop in the past and they failed. And it's kind of an ice war ever since. And I think you agree with that. I think this, this parcel has two different zones. And one is a residential tourist district. And the other one is a conservation area. The northern part, 10 acres towards the shooting range, is a conservation area. Conservation means don't touch it, keep it for everyone in place. The residential tourist district allows a different per, one of them is building single-family homes. I don't know that a tower of a large magnitude would even be possible with this of that. But I know then our P park would be possible. And our legislator, they actually are very smart and careful these days. Uh, and they think about future land use in a way that, that makes sense for everyone. But there's a shooting range on the northern part. And there is clearly a business that is disturbing whether. I mean, I would, I would assume that I would, this does text war, they're always hearing, but disturbing. Okay. Let's assume there will be a single-family or the residential development. I, as a partner, would think five, or five, that is very close to a shoot. But that is just my own thing. On the other hand, we have a gentleman, his name is Donald Jones. I represent him here. And he is right now flew to Ohio to attend his daughter's birthday. So he cannot be here today. But he asked me, please, to represent him in this meeting. And that's what I'm doing today. He actually is a native of Cincinnati, Ohio. And he developed there and purchased a piece of land in the Ohio. Was a very sense, environmentally sensitive area that he developed carefully with 84 concrete paths for RVs that also have sewer and water in place. And that is something that he would envision actually going forward with this parcel as well. So he would like to develop it with about 150 RV paths. They are all connected to sewer. So you would be participating in that revenue coming in from the sewer connection and water. And then he would build a park in the northern part of the property and use the 10 acres to the north to build a public park with nature trailers, bike, bike trailers, maybe a dog park for people to use, for you to use. So he's not somebody who says, I'm going in, I'm loving that land and I'm sending it, making it like, like, putting it in my pocket and say goodbye. That is not his idea. What his vision is, is he would like to make an investment into this community. He would like to control the RV park. He wouldn't like to keep the quality of the RV park. He wants to make sure that nobody else is touched, is touching it or selling parts of it. He wants, would like to build a community exactly like you did, um, actually in Ohio. And when you look at these pictures I included in that package, it shows you the people gathering on the river, people having celebrations, people having parties, people coming together. And I think that's something that is needed. Part of the island is right now a great of being nicely developed hotels. So everything will be a little bit lighter right now, which is, which is perfect. And he would be contributing to the beautification of your area. That's basically what he proposes. And he is capable of doing it. He sold his RV park up north and he regretted it right away when he did it because he loved the business. He loved to talk to people. He's no snake oil tarer and directly with that, he's a real gentleman person with real blood going through his veins. And he would be partnering with you in order to develop that land and make it possible. So he is sitting on a certain pile of money and he is giving it into that property. I provided a proof of sand letter from UBS in the amount of $7 million. He said, if that's not sufficient, he would, he would be willing to invest some more by the end of the year. So I think instead of running a risk, our economy right now, I don't know what you, how you feel about it. For me, it feels like we are in 2005 prices. When houses, house prices escalated so dramatically that you cannot even see enough of that increase. And all of a sudden, people flipping homes, they're writing for a million and selling it for $3 million dollars just next week. That is to me at least dangerous. I see that market not being sustainable over the, over the long run. And I see something on the horizon that might be not advantageous for the real estate market. I think a real estate development is always be risky. And, and if I were you, I don't want to see someone starting the land or a moment, but then getting stuck setting those units and then you have another construction mess down the road. My client guarantees that he is going to fulfill this promise to develop it into a new park. With you participating in, also you see it, uh, to your own bet. Uh, we go on that, uh, the rules. That's my five cents and here are any questions. Please let me know. Oh, hang on one second. Uh, I, what he said is extremely serious about what he said. So he made a full price cash offer and I attached that into the package with no contingencies. The only contingency is a ninety day, very short diligence period. That is not actually to look into zoning because zoning would already be possible. Or it isn't placed in order to build an RV park. So there's no zoning change necessary. And you could basically start right away. He made us fifty thousand dollars, departed already into his school. And then he started his school in April. That's how serious he is. And he has money ready and willing to spend in order to develop it. That's why, in my opinion, he would be a class A partner for all of the estate.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I don't have any.
I do. Funny you should say it, class A department.
I was just gonna say.
We've always, when we discussed with the other, I think we had three RV parks that were interested. We always wanted this to be an upscale RV park, class A only. No travel trailers, maybe the super C's and fifth wheels. But no travel trailers, no B's.
Fifty-five plus community.
An older community. Would he be amenable to those? I noticed in your pictures, a lot of those pictures are travel trailers. And, um, which is not what we were looking for. We're looking for something on a a luxury type of thing, luxury RV park.
I obviously don't speak for him directly.
Right, we understand.
And he would be available for a further phone call if you have direct questions to him. But his message to me was, you know, this is, this is Florida, this is a very nice area. He would like to have a better, higher end car, and he put it out, I think it's that of intent, than he used to have in Ohio. So more amenities, nicer looking. And I'm not familiar with the distinction between all these different.
Tell me, I don't know.
I don't know.
But I would definitely ask him if he would be willing to work with you on that capacity. But he's a very flexible, flexible person, whatever makes sense to everyone. I think he is aiming for win-win situation. Doesn't want just to get in, cash out and say bye-bye. That's not him. He would like to work with you and find ways to make it worthwhile for everyone.
Another thing relating, and we understand you wouldn't know. One thing we ran into with three other developers, all of them wanted to put developments back there with RVs twice as large, was they weren't sure, which escapes me, that with three hundred slabs, they weren't going to be able to make money. I said, well, why are you going to do it to begin with? Now, this guy, it happens. What he did at Tucker Landing will not work here. It is kiss of death. And the reason why is, uh, we dealt with Zeeman Homes. Zeeman Homes built some big luxury RV parks. They went up near Tampa. We looked that close. They all went up the street. That's not a luxury RV park that we don't want. But the problem is, we really don't want, they're all built out by themselves. And the new one that they have in Tampa is built out by itself. This is right next to a community that we're sitting. Party, people on the river, a giant nose. And I mean, I think if I'm being honest, we don't want anybody on the river. And if there's anything we can do to prohibit that, it's gonna happen because you're right, we like the nature and everything, don't want a regular campground.
I think it's a finding balance and finding life between, I mean, you obviously want to sell it and generate some income. A, and B, on the other hand, to preserve the, preserve the nature as much as possible, I would assume. So finding that balance is definitely not easy. But as far as I experienced Mr. Jones, he would be willing to work with you in that capacity.
And that, and that very well could be. But if you were to tell him the only, I mean, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm speaking for my one little vote. The only way I'd even consider it remote would be if it's class A's, no trailers, no towables, deed restricted, and fifty-five and over, and a resort, not a park. And, and that's before we even look at it. Because the neighbors made it clear the other night, no RVs, I mean, crystal clear. And I don't know about, we heard it, okay?
We purposely did not expect any acceptance of this offer today.
Yeah.
That's why we gave you a little bit more time. We noticed that your next board meeting is on April fifteenth. And for the offer is actually valid until April the twenty-third. That is on page two of the offer. And I would expect, if you would consider this proposal in any shape and form, to communicate in between to find a solution that would work for everyone.
That's his intended use of the waterway, you know, because it's certainly not the Ohio River.
Yes, and he is aware of it. So initially he thought to do an arena out there, but I said, you know, what, what are you going to serve? So what, what would be probably perfect for it is offering some equal tours, maybe some fishing tours, or offer people the opportunity to go fish there. But that's about it. And even the program that is there to the north of the property is something that you would not even consider extending or expanding and, and building. So we might keep it basically as this.
We don't call it the waterway.
No, no, ERC, point four, correct?
Yes.
So that's, it's a sixty, he would require sixty ERCs but a hundred and fifty. Am I, am I doing a mistake?
I'm to a point where I can't do it in my head.
They would need a hundred and twenty for three hundred.
No, no, he wants a hundred and what, units?
Yeah.
That's, that's sixty ERCs, right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
Plus any old building.
Yeah, plus, a minimum of six.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted that. Also be flexible in that number. That is just a very, very preliminary plan. We thought it would be nicer for illustration purposes to make a decision to show something, at least a little bit on paper. So he would use that tent, that pond, he would clean it up, make it a nice retention pond for stormwater drainage. Also build a very nice clubhouse to the north side, we got a southern side there next door pool. And he said to me, oh, do you think I could do bonfires along, along the river? So to begin with, bonfires are not very worth taking in summer Florence.
This is one of those places.
Exactly. I think it would not go along with the idea of toning it down not to disturb the neighboring with the potential community.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we do the same with this, that we go together?
Yeah, absolutely. We're gonna have to have a special meeting and discuss it, you know, in depth. We're gonna need proposals. We don't have proposals, actual proposals. And I thought about that, Mike. Mike, doing what he does is in the always done is just you bring the contract and the terms of the contract and you buy it on the land. This is like completely different because we want to see proposals because we own the land and we want to make sure that it works before we sell it. So we definitely need formal fixed proposals from anybody.
I see, we can get them done by the first.
Yeah.
Do you know that you could build a high-rise because the other gentleman said you don't know that or whatever?
No, no, no. To me, zoning is an issue. This board decides what they want, the county will go through.
I believe the RV team will allow, I don't know.
Yeah, but I think it does.
The question is, will the soil support?
Right.
I think that's the problem, you know, that's not a question.
Nothing's impossible, just expensive.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's only money.
Is that why you had your hand up though?
No, no, I was gonna say that perhaps, I noticed that Palti, for example, they have a home for sale. And they listed it's five thirty-five, but then whoever wants to bid on it has to have bid in by Friday. So on Tuesday, they put a list of homes up and then they, then on Saturday, they get five bids per house. So.
Pretty slick.
Perhaps on this, the board with the broker goes back and refines the scope of your purchase agreement and the timing, the process, and someone that asks what is the process? And that way, you can help those future potential bidders know the scope of where you're going because this RV conversation could be mitigated slightly and, you know, you have a lot of information that you really need to put down.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And then figure that, figure that out to a third party, that's why you should be signing my deal.
Yeah, good point.
But I believe that it's too bad to go to the airport.
Tell me, do we need a motion to allow you to do sort of begin the negotiation, so to speak?
Well, what I would suggest, there's so many. Yeah, I'll talk about Mike. There are so many moving parts and I guess what I think would be important is to have, and we can do this at date, we need the board to agree, I'll call it the major bullet points of any transaction. As to what, if you were true, what you envision, I think all of those and then discuss many, many times. Because that would be the only way to really know how to get negotiations with any partner. Right now, I have a number of notes, it's again, the thoughts of the board. It'd be nice to have, I'll call it a consensus of the board as a whole. These things have to be in the contract. We haven't been writing. I think it should be on the list. That's what he's saying. Because how does a buyer in Colorado or Cincinnati know that we're just not selling a hunk of land? There's, there's strengths.
Right.
I think it should be in the list.
You're talking about a hundred and fifty ERUs that I put in my comp that he's now using in his office. So these details could be looked at.
Yes.
Somehow there had to have been an inquiry of the mind and he came up with a hundred and fifty?
No, no, no.
No, his is a lot less.
Oh, he had come up with a hundred and fifty?
He has seeds on houses that are a lot higher.
High seed.
ERC for a house is one.
Yeah.
A condo is point eight and for a mobile, for a trailer, I mean, a motorhome park, it's point four.
No, that was.
So these bullet points.
What I would suggest is if the board's pleasure, a motion to designate the chair, myself, Cal and Dave to work on total points, I'll call it deal points, which is what the board wants in any transaction.
Right.
And then bring that to the board and continue.
Good idea. The other question I had was, I think what the board's going to want, I think it's one for five, is some sort of deed restrictions put in.
I agree with you.
You know, that would be in perpetuity so that
We don't have to think about.
We don't have to think about this again.
Nobody else does. Yeah, I think a good starting point might be, if you recall, when Mr. Fretman made his, his proposal and I had fun redlining the heck out of it. No, because I was trying to follow the board's thought processes as articulated at that time. If what the board wanted to see, part of it was the idea of a plan review before those, the cavity, covenants, restrictions. So I think we can use that as a starting point and work with the chair, Dave and Cal and bring something back into board meeting, continue board meeting of April first and board could say, okay, this is at minimum what needs to be every contract.
Yeah.
As far as other terms, other than price, due diligence. And then, and then individual RVs that make proposals may have all different concepts as to what they wish to have as far as reserving, setting aside, referring, however you want to characterize it, utility ERC. That could be up to each individual proposal.
Did you repeat that again? So I'll call it.
So I'll call it a motion.
The most, suggested motion is to authorize myself, Cal and Dave to work with the chair to prepare a list of deal point items that are critical, need to be in every offer and or contract. Considering the forty-eight year. But we got back to the first meeting for the board to review and take action.
So do this by April first.
Somewhere.
So it's open for discussion, right?
Yeah.
So I would like everybody in here, you know, especially the board members, but to email Cal what bullet points you want, because it's our, everybody's property. So what is it you want as a bullet point? This, I, but I mean, you can quote everybody's back to us.
We can say the lines we like.
Mike, I have one other question and it's definitely the elephant in the room.
It has something to do with this motion?
Yeah, no, the motion's not. I'll wait, okay, discussion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, Michelle White, I didn't hear you.
Hi.
I gotta ask for a couple of reasons that are obvious. The first time I'm gonna choke. The, the first time that we ever, ever listed that land correctly, commercially through a broker nationally was on February twenty-eighth. And that was with you. And pretty quickly, we had offers, full ass, from people from way out of town and for way more than the appraisal was.
That's right.
Which is what I said would happen. This isn't about me. Up the road fifteen minutes is almost a mirror image of this. Rectangular piece of property needs to be cleared, nowhere near as nice. Nowhere near as nice. And it's been on the market almost the same time for seven point two million. Based on those two things. And I'm not saying it to jack these guys up. I think we're too light.
I think the seven million property may still be there two years from now.
But we don't know. You don't ask, you don't get.
And their location is better. There's crocs and comps.
The rest mustn't be public, that's what we're.
Yeah, that's worth more than a million.
I thought, you know, in fact, we got buyers from.
Right.
Far away.
And that's our insight.
Nobody said.
Well, is that a question?
That's my question is, I think we were too light. I think we should ask more.
I have a statement. Okay, but my question is, we haven't gotten to it yet, but in our meeting agenda, or sorry, minutes, it says that we agreed to three million and we did not. And I recall, and that was one of my things I was gonna bring up when we got to that. I recall Ray asking five and.
But we didn't agree to that either.
Well, it didn't get agreed to, but I think it needs to be amended in the note that he had.
Nobody objected to it. Ray threw out three million.
Right. Yeah.
Nobody objected to it.
It's not too late. I would object to a note. And we went to you being the expert doing the comps like everybody does. But it just, to me, before you listed it, three million sounded light. And the arguments were poor arguments, not yours. And the reality is, I gotta feel that it's worth more than that and not jacking these guys up. I feel it's, it's worth more than this mark.
Yeah, I think you probably hired me because you thought I knew what I was doing.
Did, absolutely.
I'm not doing it for license nineteen eighty, I'm a brokerage company eighty-two. I carry a lease around, I've done those billion dollars with a merchant. I carry a lease around, those about thirty million last year. Out of all the public bankruptcies from the country, it's fifty-five thousand. We got a lot of reservations, the president's saying that was in the top thousand. Public, like a commercial people in the state, I thought I was number one, I turned out to be number three in the state. And those aren't doing. And I gave you third vice, best I could. And someone mentioned, this market may not stay this good. It's not going to. So we're to beat now, but we had another five, six. I lost my shirt back then. I know all about it, cost me several million dollars. So I didn't get two great offers, my, I grabbed them under the bank.
I think we do too, but let me ask you the question I've been asked. I have. Mr. Teteo. Tatiya. Jesus. Thank, he, he sold two point six seven acres with a bunker on it next to a waste treatment plant for five hundred thousand, or that was the ask. I'm assuming that's what he thinks. Okay, five hundred thousand, two point six acre. Directly in front of it is a clean forty-nine acres for only two, only three million.
One, right, I need an acre, oh, down my property, I'm on my two acres. But we're not selling forty-nine acres, usable land. We're selling thirty-eight acres, reusable land.
But it's more than two. If you use the same amount, it's worth more money.
Here's, here's one other thing that's back in. Yes, we're looking at three million dollar offer, but in the seven million dollar project, they don't have any ERCs to sell. We have ERCs to sell. But there has to be, yeah, there has to be a price set for ERC. And that money is additional money above and beyond the cost of the property that is not included in the offer. So the ERCs are something that is debatable and we have to come up with a, with what we think is fair for an ERC.
But it's established.
It's over there with a seven million dollar sale down the road.
No.
I would listen much.
I know, I know, and the seller says it's gonna bring that, but using parity, okay, two and a half acres for five hundred, thirty acres for three million.
But that's approved, my side's approved for sixty-nine million. Your side isn't approved.
It isn't approved then?
Yeah.
For what? What's your side approved for?
Do you want to sell it, right? Jesus.
Anyway, we've got two offers, three million dollars.
Very good offers. Well, at least now that they're gonna give you a list.
Right.
Right.
You can probably market it better and they won't be in the dark as to what they're walking into here.
Yes, we will learn a lot in the next two weeks.
Which we should have done, we should have done.
Enlighten discussion too, which that works.
Okay, so is there a vote on that motion?
We are to vote. Yeah. Yeah.
We get to the agenda. Yeah, okay, hold on. He wants to ask one more question.
Thank you all.
Go ahead.
Regarding the two point six acres, I do have full intention to move forward on the plan that I've kind of submitted. And I'm happy to wait to do it with the association when they go, whoever the buyer or being would be to go to the county. I just want you to know, I'm gonna lay low on that site, but I am planning on purchasing the IPRUs for that site. And if there's any way that I need to proceed, would I just go through Cal and the engineer?
I think ERCs are.
You already have ERCs on that site.
No, no, no. There aren't ERCs on it.
No, they're not.
What, what Dave has to do for anyone, for Lindsay or anyone else, he has to determine what is the utility he can of that site. Determine if it needs more ERCs and he would have.
And all of that and official letters and. Great, that's all.
But these ERCs we have now.
If he's got ten percent and Dave determined it needs thirty, he's got to buy.
Parity issues because the new project will bring in a whole wave of revenue that can offset, whether it's the RV grants or what is the program. So I have to run things through.
All right, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we are.
Looks like Robert left. Audience, we're now number five.
The minutes.
Now, I want to. The good items.
On the agenda items.
On the agenda item. Not in a jet.
Two quick things I made. I know you're talking about, I think you've got a full plate for April one because I think the O and M thing is hard to be initial. So that means just that the, this partial thirteen not occur until April fifteenth, which would give you a little bit of breathing room and also give residents a little bit of breathing room. That's what's just.
I think that makes sense too, actually.
The other thing is, I do not know any details about this, but I think that these proposed developers need to be reviewing particular restoration plans, because they're gonna be filling in more of that canal to the north. And if we have years where there's drought, what is the lake's pond now off of Orkin Cove? Maybe lower amount of water. So I just want these, these developers to be reviewing what might happen in the future, so they don't say, well, we wanna put a marine in here or have egressors or something. And then it's not very wet here somewhere. So just want to make this.
I think the bird is already like the.
Anybody else? Are you standing up for a comment?
So we're starting to change.
Will you ask any questions for the RV person?
Uh, I can't ask anyone a question. You can make a comment on any of the agenda items, but this isn't over yet, so.
I just wanted to ask a question to the RV, uh, the person in the, uh, presentation of the RV.
That's, that's.
Maybe, just want to talk to him after the meeting.
Go see him.
Well, it was a question that I just wanted everyone to hear, that's all.
Make the question, you don't have to give the.
Yeah, what is the.
Opportunity for response, but record the question.
My name's Hank Andre and I'm on case. I was just curious, the client that you represent, uh, that you said that they purchased the property in Ohio, correct? And they made an RV law at this point. So from the time that he finished the RV law, to the time he sold, what was that timeline, do you know?
I feel old, but what I feel is that it was a very long process to get the, because it wasn't environmentally sensitive area. And you went through a lot just, just to get there. So that's why I'm saying he is actually experienced.
Okay.
A question, which is from the time that he finished the project to the time that.
Okay, he said he couldn't answer that. He said he couldn't answer that. Next.
Frank, please, I'm Ken Strathell, it's the Stellamaris Masters Association. Uh, on item twelve E, uh, concerns about, uh, Stellamaris doors. I sent a letter that I hope will alleviate all of your concerns. And the request is, if you're going to go and discuss that today, I have to leave if there's any possibility. If it's not to be discussed.
I need to discuss what's needed.
We want to cooperate anyway.
It's under the attorney's report. He'll tell you what your options are.
What item was it?
It's, uh, the whole of that.
We want to cooperate in any way that we can.
And Frank said he's willing to talk to the board about blacking out the parking line.
He will absolutely do that.
But they probably stopped any, so.
Well, they're not, they're, they weren't gonna put in the parking lines the way you would originally.
Yeah.
After the last CID meeting, we, we looked at all of the comments and concerns. We immediately suspended any activity to put in the new parking. Number two, uh, we suggested talking to the county, we initiated the discussion. Three, uh, we received subsequent communication about concerns about existing white lines. I have a personal opinion, it doesn't matter, it's the board's opinion, we're going to, it's gonna be a motion to remove the white lines. And I will vote for that motion. We're gonna, we're gonna follow the law, you're gonna follow what we're supposed to do, who's responsible, who's responsible for French.
That's the, that's your association where you're gonna.
Yes, sir. And I, what I'm saying is, we're gonna do it, I don't have the authority to do that, but it will be agenda, we have my word on that.
There will be a vote for it, and I fully anticipate we're approving that, removing existing white lines immediately.
What did the county say? Um, you had mentioned in your letter that you checked with the county.
They have, they, the county said they had nothing to say.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter, right?
But, 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 but again, we wanna, we value the relationship here.
I thought.
We want to cooperate.
If you'd be so kind as to send me a copy of the letter, I don't think I've seen. I just saw it's in the pack, it's a handout. It's in the pack that he sent out, uh, very brief, is the last minute, he gives an email. Or in the handout, uh.
It was sent out yesterday.
Yeah.
It's very brief.
I appreciate your.
Yeah, basically, they're saying that it's no longer gonna be used or designated for parking. They, they're not gonna be able to stop people from parking it, but, uh, there, it's not gonna be designated with lines for parking. And that, so it really is a non-issue unless the board wants to reconsider that agreement. And Tony was gonna respond on what your options are.
Well, I think that was a concern, was it a parking lot or a roadway?
We own it.
So.
But we don't know.
If it's not, right.
And if the, and if the action is, Frank, Frank is that there's an agenda board item for association to vote to eliminate the lines, not put any lines in.
That's correct.
Then I would suggest that that I don't get to be tabled until we hear from that vote, so why spend any.
Yes.
Should that motion fail, we will immediately report that back to you.
Will pass or fail, yeah.
And at that point, by the way, uh, let's, let's, let's do be friends here, okay? Since you guys brought it up, if that motion fails, give me some advice on what to do next, and we got no idea. But I'm sure the fans, I'm confident that the fans, we want and value a good relationship with CID. We wanna be talking about streets and storm sewers and ponds, not parking.
So we're gonna take all that for the next meeting.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your, you're talking about this now, so let's be, thank you.
All right, so the next is.
Uh, is there any other audience?
One more.
Two more.
Two more, wait, wait, he's behind you.
Eric, you're on.
The longer walk.
Yes, hi, I'm George, last one, six, three, Sunset K. And, uh, my wife and I moved here about four years ago, and we lived on Stellamaris, and we kind of fell in love with the area. And decided to build on that lot. During the course of building, it was wanting the attention and fever and raised level, like where the homes had to be sit. It's almost two feet above where it was. And what happened was that water comes between the two homes. It is in jeopardy of, I guess, compromising my, my side, the side of the house. My next door neighbor.
I'm reconciling.
My, my next door neighbor, Gary, you know, is an engineer, he built up a plan that he thought would rectify the situation. And he, he wanted to, to your attention, uh, I think in January, last month, it was taped. And, uh, it's really gonna get in our house. Maybe I, maybe I got ahead of myself for putting in drains, but I've had so many people tell me that it's a great deal to. I know that you folks have gotten code enforcement. We've met a code enforcement person of that. And she thought it was an excellent idea. Thing that she said was he didn't know if our building was housed into a permit that would allow us to do that. And thus, we did go to you, but it was tabled. Then I get this, this fear like, because Frank, I'm Winward K, has been having the same exact problem. He came to you guys, showed you pictures of flooding in the house, and every time, he did it for, he told me like almost eight years. The engineer would come out and say, yeah, we gotta do something about that, because it doesn't stop work. At one point, we heard a warrant, perhaps, and say, well, it's better than anything that we have here. Now, I have, we have personally invested, we have personally invested about 10,000 dollars, who at this point, for your sake, is an experiment. It's our money. Looking for something that will work. What's there now is not working. We're trying to get studies done, but we're not getting. So we did what we did. I'm asking you to look at it a different way than maybe you are at it, in that, let's call this an experiment. Nothing that we did is permanent. The pipe, you can pick up the pipe anytime you want to, but the pipe definitely is increasing flow of water back. Over the past thirty years, the, the swamps that are in everybody's yards, that you can take a look at, you know you can. Trees in, in the easements, bushes in the easements, you could look at the easements, that water's supposed to be going out, that they're backwards into the street. I mean, they're all over, since you wanna get like southwest water supply, pumping, pumping. To look at us, and they see everything else and everything else that everybody else is, that's just a can of worms. Personally, I don't know. I mean, there's people that have broken through the walls to get rid of the water from their own place, and that they're there. It's just that maybe we didn't notice it, maybe we said, oh, well, it's in property, whatever. But I'm, I'm really sorry that this has got me into it, but would have been one of the most happiest times of my life moving the house, to be here with a property where I'm just trying to protect, protect my house. So that's, that's why. Now, Gary, he's just real efficient. He has studies and stuff that he's like, he's.
Yes, Gary.
I, just a reminder, comments, the topic will be discussed later in the.
Yeah, yes.
My name's Gary McKitty, I live at one, six, two, uh, which is one of the.
Guys, you hear that?
Question.
This is comments, we're not discussing issue yet, we're not discussing. We have to get there.
Oh. I wasn't sure when I talked now, because it said discussion on.
Like, if you wanted to remove it, then that, that kind of discussion, but the actual item, yeah.
Little bit later on.
Yeah, thank you. And final, if you have one.
Yeah, my name's Eric, so I live at Orkin Cove and two, five, zero, nine, four. The comment that I wanna make is regarding potential selling of the lands. You know, I think we have to trust the board to make the decision. I mean, we can't have all, every person making their comment, what they think it would be and, and all of that. We have to trust the people that we elected to make the right decision. And I just wanna make that comment, uh, because you all are, they're very involved in it, they know all the facts. And I think it's in all of our interests to trust people that we elect.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so that concludes the discussion on the agenda items. The minutes, now we're, now, three, four minutes now.
I have a question on, um, line, uh, line item number ninety-one. That's where we discussed the, um, um, range of golf carts in the.
Yeah, I got a question on that too.
Didn't we ask that they, that the staff look at contacting the county to get us designated? Because I think that's what Tony said, you have to be designated as an area where they allow golf carts, and we can legally allow the golf carts to ride.
I don't remember.
We call that, yeah.
I do, because.
Yeah. But if we do that now, I mean, it's, if there wasn't a motion or direction specifically, you know, our.
Yeah, they had it, thank you.
If you feel it was.
Well, I don't think we had a motion, I think we just asked if they.
Asked them to look into.
To look into being able to, you know, be allowed to do that for the residents here.
Okay. Um, we'll continue that and say staff to research, uh.
Contact county staff.
That's right.
For initially.
That's what I wanted, so that we could make it legal for people to ride their golf carts around the there.
What about my horse?
Well, if you'd like.
Any other suggestive changes?
Oh, I had one, I think. Item fifty-one. I didn't see anything on that South Florida Water Management District sending a representative. I mentioned it in the minute.
On the flume.
Fifty-one.
Yeah.
Wasn't it on the.
Yeah, I think it was on one, one sixty-two, one sixty-three.
Yeah.
That's where that was.
That's okay. Water going into the canal.
I thought it was there, because you didn't make a decision redoing the flumes. You wanted Dave to get with them, because there was concern if this would either increase the flow and cause problems.
Right.
Downstream and, and, but it was about redoing the flumes at the sidewalks.
Yeah, the, the primary discussion on that was about the flumes underneath the sidewalks and the three locations. And then I think it maybe went towards the one sixty-two, one sixty-three Sunset K issue.
Right.
And at that point, it was, I think the flumes were tabled, basically.
Yeah, it was tabled.
The pipe was tabled, basically.
Until we get, yeah, good job, Florida, come here, take a look at everything.
Have a meeting with them, and that's something that's, it works, uh, that names the contact, it's just that, there's so many other irons happening down here, right now, hot irons.
Um, in ninety-eight, in response to Supervisor Johnson's question, because it, we had, we weren't sure it was the, it wasn't, we're not sure if it's been signed. And then District Manager Teague stated that Mike Carr understood that he was to list parcel thirteen at three million, but Ray then said, I think it should be more. I, I thought, I remember him saying five million.
I thought he said that. Discussion.
Yeah, but we never.
It wasn't anything we voted on. I'm just trying to make accurate minutes. Ray Johnson said it should be listed for more. So you'll say it'd be listed for more.
Okay, uh, I.
For five million.
Normally put in individual comments, but I can't.
This is like a general overview of what he said.
Yes, a summary of the meeting.
Yeah.
You would like to add after the three million that Supervisor Johnson felt it, that it should be more.
Because that did come up at that meeting, and I think that was better reflex, the discussion.
What he said, Supervisor Johnson suggested it be listed at five million.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any others?
Yeah, I got one.
So, but, but how do we, I mean, that just leaves an hanging.
Do you wanna say there, there was no support?
There was no vote taken.
No vote, no vote taken. So how did we get to three million?
We didn't. You guys, it wasn't.
He just told us that's what it was gonna be.
We never really.
I, I don't care. We never voted on it.
We never. I thought that was the.
I wish Mike would have stayed. But that's what happened.
He said his experience, that's what it would sell for.
No, I appreciate it was consensus, but there was suspicion of Ray that.
Other than Ray saying he felt higher, but the rest of us.
Didn't.
Didn't object.
Okay, so I can add to that, that it was left at three million, but.
Yeah.
It's.
That's not relevant. But sure, that was what, that was what, it was what you understood, you weren't, I wasn't. He said he didn't, I thought he said he didn't.
So I guess on that point, since we're gonna, I guess, modify, clean up, amend the listing agreement, we're gonna add these additional terms. What is the number that should be in?
They wanna keep it at three million, except for me.
Right.
Okay, try and make sure.
You mean, we're tampering, right?
Yeah, we haven't accepted an offer. Well, no, we have, the listing agreement's been signed, but, no, that doesn't matter, but it doesn't sound like there's a meeting of the minds, because there's some other. You can change it to whatever you want.
Send a counter offer.
No, you can't do that. You gotta change the listing. So I can set some conversation.
So what number are you thinking, right?
What about you?
These are the numbers.
Why are you asking?
This is what's supposed to reflect what was last, we can't come up with a number now that was discussed in our last meeting.
Anything else on the minute?
Russ, that's open.
Yes, Russ.
Done right, okay. Uh, ninety-four.
Can we stick up that, I don't know what you want in there.
No, I, I, I don't think, I don't think.
If we could take care of that, and then we can move on to the next one. But, so it was suggested that, uh, we add to the, no, yeah, Supervisor Johnson suggested it should be five million.
Period. No action taken.
Period. But, but no action was taken. We changed from three million.
Right.
Okay.
What number?
Ninety-four.
Thank you.
Second sentence, scratch off. He wondered if.
Russ, ninety-four.
I didn't wonder anything. Ninety-four. I didn't wonder if CID should provide forms. I said the CID needs to provide. Scratch off. He wondered if. He stated the CID needs to create the R C transfer forms and put them on the website. How about that? Yeah, just get rid of it. Yeah, wondered.
He stated the CID needs to create.
Yeah, he did say something.
Wanted, he stated.
So he stated the CID needs to create the R C transfer.
Yes.
And the rest of that statement on there, I wanted to know if there was any possibility to go after the goat funds with Immaculate and maybe Everglades City. I don't, I don't need them to know how the money was distributed. I know how it's distributed. I wonder if we can.
We can strike that whole sentence. I, it has no significance.
Well, I think what would be helpful to me is that, that the discussion ensued with regards to use of goat funds and whether the district could receive any different allocation. And I think that's how we can make that.
Yeah, I think I was researching that.
Yeah, take that whole sentence out. And you also have to put the goat fund, just say discussion ensued with regards to the goat funds.
Sorry. Start again to take out from what part of the whole thing that, oh, that's. He also asked that whole sentence?
Yes.
Except for any more research.
And then I think we may want to say attorney period of research.
Email me what you are thinking.
I think attorney period of research, goat fund allocation.
Right.
With CID, Immaculate, and Everglades City.
And Ave Maria.
And Ave Maria, which I haven't done it.
And I often did.
There was a stock that I didn't say.
Okay, so Supervisor Kish also requested the attorney.
Research.
Research allocation of goat funds among the CID, Ave Maria, Immaculate, and Everglades City. There's going to be pressure. I'm listening. The allocation of goat funds for C I two, for C I B, for C I D, Ave Maria, Immaculate, and Ave Maria. Oh, okay. Okay, Immaculate and.
Everglades City.
Everybody, everybody. Yeah, they sort of.
Any others?
Oh, we don't.
Motion to approve the amended minutes.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Robert left.
Robert had a leave and nothing new other than what was in our email. So, well, in the handout.
So, proposals.
Yeah, no, new proposals. The approved landscape and so, and scheduled for next week. At the front of me.
What is, that literature I got, the last literature was on the state of Florida and the county with the median.
Oh, that was, I think, Tony, did you look at that? Somebody sent me that, the.
Actually, Chris, there was a question about the landscape cost and the agreement and so forth, that it's actually originally started out with an agreement between EPTO and Cuyahoga County.
Yeah.
And then to the district from there. So there is, it's like, you can terminate the agreement, but you got to restore the median back to the way it was.
What it was, yeah.
If they ask.
If they.
Yeah, if they ask.
Or if the state or somebody has plans different than that, they can come and take it on themselves.
My only thing after reading that was about that water problem happened this summer. And, you know, it's, he said, she said. So who's responsible? The maintenance, for the median, or the road people? So I almost feel maybe the county should take it back. So we get out of that.
Do I add that to the next agenda discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss that, please.
And the twenty-eight thousand.
That's what startled us.
I agree on.
Okay, so utility operations. You still here?
I'm still here. I'm still speaking. Good afternoon, everybody. So nothing exciting going on at the water, wastewater plant. On the flow that we took in, we took in four million gallons of the wastewater. We only produce three point eight on the water, which is kind of backward. Usually it's more water going out than wastewater coming in. But March is the month that we calibrate all the meters for the year. So I'm guessing that that's where we're going to issue. And I'll go back and correct that as of the day. But distribution in the irrigation, put out seven and a half million gallons of irrigation water. That'll start to fall off with the rain come. Chlorine usage, we used eight hundred gallons between the water and wastewater plant last month. Preventative maintenance, we checked all the pump stations, no issues, no odor complaints. The plant generator, we did have some issues when it was inspected. We had come and come out and make those corrections and fix them. I think there was a sensor between the tanks that was bad. They changed the belt, which all that stuff on the generator to get it ready for hurricane season. And then they're coming this month as well to top it off on fuel. That way we're fully full, just in case we have a hurricane. The security cameras with ADP, they're slow. I'm on them every day almost, and they're constantly just dragging their feet. They're getting there, but we're not there yet. What's the problem? It's just parts they come in, they can't get parts, they can't get labor, it's so far away, so it's just slow, slow, slow.
We're not paying them anything yet, right?
You haven't taken one dime yet. No. Backflow preventers, all the handles are replaced, the storm drains are cleaned. I think that was on last month's. RTZs, we certified everything. The meters, when we did this report, we were down to only thirty-four of the big ones, but I would guess as of today, it's probably like fifteen, and my guys are out there changing right now. So I'm hoping to get those wrapped up and, and done. Health and safety, no, no accidents here at Port of the Islands. And that really is it. We met all our compliance, no issues there. And I put the grass back in the rustle, although they're not color coded. I have to put them in.
They're calling it blue.
They're all blue.
They're all blue.
Blue should be brown. And red should be purple.
You got to step up.
No, right? I should have colored them.
Randy Rush isn't here, of course, but how'd you make out? Did he ever come out and look at the?
Yep. Well, we didn't get together yet, but I did speak with him this week. I was out in the accident last week, so I've been in my for a couple of weeks. But he and I and David are going to get together next week.
Are you okay?
I'm okay. I got to take a helicopter ride a few days and I see you, but I'm good now.
At least you weren't flying it.
No, I'm fine. That's right. Anything else for me?
Were you in a car crash?
Nope, I was working on a lift station at another community, and it was the end of the day, and I cut my leg here. Here. So immediately they air carried me to Gulf Coast Medical, put me in a trauma unit, and fixed me up. So I'm good.
Wait, you're okay?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, now the nightmare. Engineers report.
Let's try to make it a nightmare. New home construction issues. Well, work continues out there to home sites and so forth. And we'll talk a little bit, again, down the agenda, a little bit as far as one sixty-two and one sixty-three. There was another place where I thought we might have a potential encroachment, but it doesn't look as bad as I initially thought. I did some measurements this morning. I still want to talk to Tony and Cal about that in general and take a, take a little further look at that. Water tank inspections.
Wait, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Good. I think the horse is out of the barn and actually out in the, in the, in the field running. Is there any way that we can ask the county for any permit for any building permit here in Port of the Islands? That we must be a cosigner, so to speak, so that they come to us and take a look, and we get a chance to take a look at it.
Any of ours.
And, and then sign off on it before they issue a permit for Port of the Islands? Because what seems to me is happening is permits are being issued, and then all of a sudden, we're hanging out last on the list that there's a problem.
Yes.
Is, is there any way we can do that? Or is there any way that we can ask the county to be cosigners of the permit, so to speak, so that we get a chance to look at it before it goes, goes public or goes.
It's true.
Yeah, because we're inheriting problems we had no idea about.
Yes.
And it's directly relative to them approving permits. They're not talking to us.
I'm looking down at Tony maybe for.
What I would suggest is the county has the building code, the land development codes, and they, that particular jurisdiction, they have been better as to catching issues when people building, proposing to build improvements in easements by requiring start surveys and then sign off from the easement holder. What I would suggest, though, is a letter to go to Jamie French, head of Community Development, Jonathan Walsh, the Building Director, Building Official for Cuyahoga County, and also the interim county manager, and then to Commissioner La Castro, asking that.
I think so, too.
That is a matter, of course, is a matter of governmental cooperation that the Building Department and the engineering staff, when they give any applications for anything, whether it's a site development plan or building permit for properties in Port of the Islands, that the district be notified. And in fact, we may want to even consider entering into a local agreement that that takes place. Because actually, I think that'd be the first step. And that was, hey, can you do this right? Not like zero, the problem is, we appreciate what you all have done to help us today as far as after the fact, discoveries by us, but to head it off to the past, we ask you to do the following.
Because I know that has to do with other communities, like Corona, Waukegan, Layla. I'm sure people sell buildings without approval of the.
I mean, we're. Assume that they would do that.
Well, yeah. Again, later on, again, what should happen is the counties got more and said more sensitive in the last two years because the number of communities that were streetcar parks were finding out people were contracted for installing generators, AC units, full equipment spot within drainage and utility easements because the county wasn't requiring it. And surveys had shown all the easements and the accessory units, such as that I just mentioned, that the setback department. So the county said, okay, it meets the setback, it meets the building code, it wasn't aware of the drainage issue. Now the county is more proactive.
Right.
We have many, many times, I've received letters from managers of other districts from Cuyahoga County saying, we need a letter of consent, we need approach to agreement, something. And so that's, I think it's just a heightened awareness by sending a letter to all those officials, as well as Commissioner Castro. And hopefully they respond. We are fortunate because the one of my district gateway in Lee County, we tried that with Lee County, Lee County says, no, we show a really, we're not going to keep, we're not going to tell you every time an application's been. City four buyers were the same thing. We asked them and they said, the county of county is really good. So if you want to have Cal, David, I come up with a letter.
And there's all kinds of applications that do come in for building permits, like propane, if you had a propane tank or gas line.
Oh, yeah.
Even maybe certain kinds of water, too.
And what we could do is we could have it set up for the signature.
Sure.
It'd be very helpful.
I think so.
I would, I would like that. I'm going to be a motion on that, Cal, or just?
I think we should.
I'll move that.
Absolutely. I think the problem is we're out of sight, out of mind.
Yeah.
We're all the way down.
All the time. We're all the way over.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. But we have nothing to do. But it's only fair. It's fair to the builder.
So we're standing the chair, which would be you, Terry, right now? Okay, so understand your position, that if you asked Cuyahoga County to include you in the loop, that it would just be your signature, whoever in the chair.
No, no, no. A letter.
District.
A letter can be sent for her signature, which will go from us. Oh.
Right, so how much time would that take when you guys meet once a month?
If I can.
Yeah, let me just understand that because already Cuyahoga County is so bad.
Then, then sure, if I could just, all we can do is ask a letter to the county that when they get the application, they send us.
Yeah.
The manager, engineer, the company, put us on where, hey, this person wants to build the year.
Yeah.
And then it's up to us for any permits that are applied.
Yeah.
And alert, if you only ask.
I'm just saying, you know, the backlog, and if somebody wants to get a permit, you've already waited three or four weeks, and then it has to come here for an okay. I'm just saying, that's a lot.
But look at all the testing in the community. That's us.
Matt, sure. Well, I look at it this way, if a person wants to build something in the district's easement, the district has a dominant estate, they always have to come to the entity to request permission.
Right.
And, and whether it takes another month or so, it's just, that's.
Yeah, we're sorry about that.
That's, you know.
Oh, you're sorry about that?
Well, what do we do to keep it right? The builders aren't keeping it right.
There are people that.
I don't want to go there.
I, Terry, you know what? You don't want to go there because there's so many things, like the swales and stuff that are engineered and things that need to be improved in our community. And now you want to tack on this other thing that could take another month to get it permitted. You, I'll tell you what, Cuyahoga County is here all the time. If you see the vehicles going back or the new builds, they're on your street all the time, Terry. You got three houses being built down there. And so they're looking at, there are, no, I'm just going to say.
This is not, this is our, yeah, this is our meeting. We need to move forward.
I'm going to sit down. But I just want to say, please be cognizant of the time that it could take. If it could be an expedient review, that's all I'm asking.
The, as was suggested, if the county, if there's any encroachment in the easement, they're going to nullify it.
Right.
David and Tony and I and you cannot move use of a easement.
Right.
Tony will draw up a easement use agreement that the property owner will sign, but the board has to approve it.
That's correct.
Okay.
We're to the point, too, where Tony's developed kind of a form of that agreement. So the prototype's in.
For a particular reason.
I know.
And you, I think the board's got to approve. In my opinion, my, they request us to use a district's interest in real property. It's an integral part of the district infrastructure, in my opinion. All my boards are advised that needs to be done by the board. It should really not be a staff functioned out.
Yeah, I like that better.
Yes.
Sorry, dude.
That's okay. That's good. Something that's bothered me for a while, too. Good. Underneath water tank inspections, good news, bad news? The good news is the blend tank, the reclaimed tank, it's got a very good report. It needs some, uh, some work done in the next few years, uh, but it's fairly minor. The, the water tank itself, it's got a little more serious issues. That wasn't one that was built in, uh, gosh, nineteen ninety, in that timeframe. And it probably has not seen a lot of maintenance since then. The roof itself is a board shape and along with the top upper ring. So we're going to need to look at doing some replacement of that, which the difficulty is taking that tank out of service and coming up with a way that we can, again, keep, keep water storage and be able to meet the needs of the community during that time. Mitch and I have done some brainstorming. We need to fine tune that brainstorming a little bit. How and what, what may be the best way to have some interim water storage? Or maybe even look at doing something on a more permanent basis, maybe a second water tank? Or maybe a, a tank that we can use for both water storage when we need it, but also for irrigation, a dual tank?
Yeah.
Uh, that, that would require some special plumbing. It would require some special trick to when we are ready to use it for portable water, we'd have to do some special things to prepare for when we convert it from reclaimed over to portable water storage. Uh, so anyway, give Mitch and I a little bit of time to digest the report, come up with some thoughts and ideas, but that's something that's going to be more immediate in the next year to two years that we really need to do that's going to be more complicated.
Is that in our CIP report?
I'm sorry.
Is that part of the CIP?
No, we did not include major tank repairs. I think we maybe had some dollars for some minor things. So, uh, it depended where we go because again, if we're looking at a new tank, it's got some, some costs and so forth. Uh, but you know, Mitch and I have talked that one thing I need to study a little bit and look at is if we're able to put in more storage for irrigation and so forth and fire flows, does that get us out of the canal pump station? That's a big question for me.
Is it, is this the, these are, this is the freshwater holding tank?
Yes.
And it's not.
Not anyone you have.
It's not for the reclaim, it's for the freshwater.
Right.
I'm asking seemingly stupid question. I'm under the impression, not from either one of you, that when we did the state of the art water plant, that's part of it, right?
It's part of the total equation, but we need to have certain amount of water storage that we can then pump out of into the system as you need it.
By me age wise, isn't it the same age as the water?
No, no, that water tank I believe was put in, Mitch, do you have a copy of the report?
I do.
It's on the very front of the cover when it was, uh, built. I think it said nineteen ninety.
So if it's not, it was not on the CIP, correct?
No.
And?
Nineteen ninety-three.
Okay. So that would be for the.
Just a guess, isn't it?
Do we want hold you to?
That, yeah, we won't hold you to that, but anything over that, we're going to, we're going to date you. You're almost going to have to build a secondary tank to function while you fix the first.
I, I guess Aqua Store for a quick tank, uh, quick tank quote, quote. The tank itself, and I'm not sure if it includes the foundation, three hundred fifty thousand.
Oh.
Plus that we got some piping.
Hello.
So the beauty of it though is if somehow we can figure out a way to use it as a combined tank on a normal basis, that, you know, the, the, the tank we've got right now has got sufficient capacity for the water use. So that gives us the ability during, well, we don't need it for water use, we're doing maintenance on the auto facility, then, then we can use it for the irrigation needs.
Is there any way in the, uh, in physical plant there to be able to put the tank from another location and use the old tank while you're putting the other one, the new tank, using the old tank until the new tank is ready?
Oh, yes.
There is, so.
Yeah, we would do that.
Okay.
We would, we would, what we would do is have two water tanks. Two tanks we use for storage. That way you could, that way when you need to repair yourself, one, you can take the one out of service.
But we're, are we just doing this to double the retention?
No, it's not a matter of doubling it. It's how do we fix the tank we've got right now? The other thing we could do is, yeah. The other thing we could look at doing and, and, and is bringing in a temporary tank or temporary pillow tanks to take us through this period of time where we're needing to do these repairs. Quick estimate on that, probably seventy, eighty thousand dollars that we get no future use out of.
As opposed to?
Pretty empty, that's fair.
Well, you just add that into the cost we pull when you get there.
Right.
The total amount.
Yeah, well, the pillow tank will be a half million. Basically, uh, yeah, half a million total cost.
Yeah.
If we, if we, uh, put the pillow tanks in, you're going to throw away seventy, eighty thousand dollars. You use them once, throw it away.
Well, we could use those for the RV car for the bouncy.
Yeah. That's an idea.
What, what was Terry's idea about being able to get rid of?
I'm sorry.
You had an idea about potentially being able to?
Well, I, I need to do some more research and find out what is our required fire reserve? How many gallons we have to have for so long during a fire? And if we're able to meet that with our tank agent, we've got redundancy with our fire pumps on the plant site, then there may be a possibility getting rid of that canal pump section. So we eliminate maybe some of the costs associated with that and.
The long term might be a better idea.
Definitely the better idea.
But if it waters down at the plant, which is the only reason the wear pumps would come on as the backup, how would that work?
Well, now, you know, you fire and irrigation come out of two tanks that are up there already and it gets pumped out by a series of pumps for irrigation fire. If, if, if they're.
But if they go down.
If they're empty, like at the end of the night, say at four in the morning, those tanks are almost empty.
Yeah.
For example, if you could convert the, the current water tank over and use that capacity as well, maybe that, it's really a David, but maybe that would give you enough storage that you would no longer need to canal station. Right, what you, what you have to have is a certain amount of, uh, reserve capacity in your tanks all the time sitting there to meet your fire flows.
Right.
And like, like Mitch was saying, at, at, at the end of the evening, after all the irrigation's done, your tanks are pretty empty and can't beat that fire reserve. So if you happen to have a, at two o'clock in the morning or four o'clock in the morning, then do that canal pump station to turn on to meet that need.
And the canal is a constant regular flow of water.
As long as there's water in the canal.
Yeah, well, when there's not, we have to re.
I heard ladies speaking a while ago about, about hydrology, so.
But it's going to affect, it's going to affect the pot of the water before it affects the canal.
Is that the, the pumping station that needs the quarter million dollars?
Yes. So again, we might be able to save some money there and put it to the other project. What's, what do you, what's going bad in this thing?
The water tank.
Yeah, the, the upper roof, uh, needs to be replaced and there's an upper ring. Uh, the, 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 the closer, that's a bolted, uh, blast line tank. And the upper section too is deteriorated too, so it's going to need to be replaced. Uh, and then there's also some other work that needs to be done. And they're estimating somewhere, they say four weeks, but factors say six weeks, that, that tank's needing to be out of service.
And that's a thing that, that they come in and inspect once every five years. It's done every five years.
Okay, so you couldn't just like slide a ring lower than what needs to be repaired? Take it off, put a new one on? During construction, you got to be able to keep the water clean for human consumption.
Yeah. That's what you said, it's our.
Yeah, yeah.
How did that get missed in the CIP?
If the last time it was inspected, it was okay according to the company that inspected it. Yeah, the last time it got looked at, it just didn't surface.
So the, it, and there is a possibility that we could reroute some water and have you want to boil water over this for five weeks.
Without applying. Can you give us another possible? Now, we, now, remember Mitch and I just got these reports on Tuesday.
Yeah.
So we haven't had much time to pop on the phone and brainstorm a little bit. So that's as far as it's gone, it's brainstorming. But at least we've got some thoughts and ideas we can start following up on.
Okay.
Okay.
Any more good news?
Yeah, I've heard a statement, man. I've really not heard it from.
Well, as, as far as drainage is concerned, we kind of hit on that a little bit already. Uh, we still need to make that, I got some names, it's just a matter of making contact with South Florida, talking to them, see what we can do and can't do down here as far as being able to maintain our water quality and, uh, uh, and be able to do our, our, our drainage, our basic drainage.
So that. I'm Kevin Bellstreet, one thirty-five, one one K. I just wanted to ask you when you found out on the water range, I sent photos of the rainstorm.
I don't think they could hear you.
Hold on, sir, hold on. I sent photos of the rainstorm in October to all the members of the board. And that was a question, so everybody got, I know Russ did, yeah, David, but you got.
Yes.
Is there any plans to all get it developed, try to alleviate that problem of the water that comes down when you came, flooding back at my house? Has that been, I knew, uh, two meetings ago, it was kind of discussing, you're going to try to come up with some plans, and I couldn't make it the last meeting, so I'm just trying to follow up on where we are on that.
No definite plans yet. That's, that's South Florida meeting we need be having to discuss with them what our options may be. Uh, s- s- see if they have any thoughts. You know, of course, one of the things that needs to be done is to clean out of the drainage swales. Uh, cleaning not only the, the, the conveyances from the roads, but also behind the lots.
See, excuse me, the swale that went on, by Mr. Benson was here, was right to the specs that he wanted, with my ability to do. I mean, my swale was like perfect, so I'm still getting flooded up. So I just purely, not purely.
Depends on what you call by flooding out, that, that during.
That was a burn. I, I have to fix that every year. I get a blowout somewhere along that burn every year, maybe eleven years.
Right, right. And is, is it the cause of the blowout because of what are going over the burr? Or is it because it's infiltrating through the burr going and causing?
Well, I believe it's going over because all my maintenance that I do on, on that when it happens is on top of the burn. We have to come back and bring in fill and then I have to take a little bit of rap and, you know, all that. And it's, and it's weird because it's not just one spot. It goes, there's been many spots all along the burn that it's blown out. You know, if there's one big spot, I say, okay, we can figure this out. So much water comes down one week. If you look at that photo, it's like a flash flood.
Yeah.
And when that comes across, I mean, that, that actually goes over the, you know, the cement holding tank. I've actually seen water go over that tank. So, and my burn was just about even with that, or maybe even higher. And I've had water, and that's not during summer. I'm not here during the summer. So I'm not sure how bad it is during summer.
The way the basic sys- system is supposed to work is it's supposed to fill in those wells, do some percolation down. Uh, when we have those big heavy rains, uh, oh, the other component is it stores that water back there, but there's a, that three inch bleeder that's there, it's supposed to let that water out gradually into the canals and starts to receive some treatment. If it ever gets so high, that's when it goes over the top through the top of the structure itself and into the canal at that point.
Uh, what can we do to fix that?
Is there any way to slow down the water or eliminate some of the water coming down? Say it in another direction.
We got to set it another direction, but right now the system's set up and each of the K's drain individually and discharge through a, through their own individual structures.
Yeah.
And then on K's drive, that water's directed into the lake system where each of those also have their own structures for discharge.
I think David, I'm not, and I'm happy to get involved if you want. But it doesn't take two months and I'm not blaming you. You got a lot on your plate, but it, it's inexcusable that it takes two months to get South Florida to come out here and look at this thing. I think I can get him out here, uh, but we need to get him out here. And, uh, you know, if I were him, and I don't know when, I'd be losing it. Because he's got a legitimate right. We're, our hands are kind of tied. But if everything is based on South Florida, let's get him out here. Get him a ride, get him a Uber, whatever we got to do, let's get him out here and make a decision so we can do something. Because his isn't the only one. Let's face it.
Yeah, but part of the, part of the problem also is to do construction. Some are sitting higher, some are sitting lower, so all the work is flowing to him.
But let's get an approval from South Florida and fix it. That's all. I mean, if it's, if it's up to them, let's get them out here, that's all.
He should have a blowout.
Well, the, the, the work with the burr is something different than the drainage a little bit because that's, if the burrs are blowing out, it's something to do with the earthwork that was done on the burrs originally. Back in nineteen ninety, ninety-one.
But either way, we need to move forward with it. Let's get them, what, the past doesn't matter. This is new, new policies, new everything. Let's get South Florida out here, walk them out. Look, this is what's happening. This man's got a problem. How do we fix it? Say we can put a bigger pipe in, whatever. You've got two options. You've got to permit. That you can do right now. But as Ron's been saying and everyone's been saying for all these years, it's got to be maintained. And it hasn't been maintained. It's filled up in areas. You're not getting, that the system's not functioning the way it was designed and permitted. Southwest Florida is only going to tell you how you can operate within that permit. They might have some ideas that they can give David and say, well, and David gives them it, that they get this exchange, but that's not approval.
Yeah, we'd have to go.
To get a permit modification.
We'd have to get a permit modification. That's going to take a little time.
Why?
But, you know, we could do some maintenance, but we got to be careful that we don't get part two part or the harsh two with the maintenance if some things do change.
But why would it take time if it's an emergency?
Well, if we can get it to demon emergency, it would be great, but.
Well, who is supposed to maintain it?
Yeah.
Yeah, the district's got the responsibility.
It's our fault that this is happening.
We have not been maintaining.
Right.
All the years I could hear, nothing has been done.
So isn't it a matter of a backbone to get it out?
No.
What is, David, uh, you've got to do a survey. You've got to find out where the high spots are. You talked about drone survey.
Well, you know, we could try to get a drone back there to do, do some of the survey with concerns being a little bit as you, you still need to get feet on the ground as far as getting some other elevations too.
So you don't need the drone, let's do it by people. Let's do it.
But we got to start.
Yeah, and we got to, this is, listen, this guy's had this problem a long time. It's not going away. He's not here in the summer. If he was, I don't think he'd like it.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, I mean, and we talked about this two or three times, so whatever it takes, let's get the damn thing fixed. Takes a motion. I make a motion, we get it straightened. Well.
No, no, no.
I think the first thing we need to do is get South Florida down here. At the same time, I've already asked for some pricing for doing some surveying, but I haven't heard back from the surveyor. Uh, unfortunately, they're anywhere from six to eight weeks out even doing the work. Sometimes it's a month to get them a price. It's, it's supply chain. They're just so overwhelmed with everything that it's, it's just hard to get in there.
But they're going to start someplace. If it's six to eight weeks from now or six to eight weeks from the next season, yeah, no good.
Well, if you're not addressing just this job.
I know.
But if you make a motion to authorize the system to be, uh, surveyed, either preferably by drones.
We did do that, no. I'm making a motion right now.
So, let me finish this though. So David's got the authority to move forward. Now he's going to meet with the water management district and, uh, they're going to create a coordinated approach, but he's not going to wait for you to approve something. He's going to move forward.
Go ahead, make the motion.
No, you may want to wait for me to bring back proposals because it's not going to be cheap.
Yeah, right.
Nothing is.
It has to sound like a tactical, though. Isn't, isn't that our job?
Yeah.
But depending on the amount of money.
I thought we made the motion to have him get proposals from, uh, the, uh, surveyors so that we could know what this, what you're running.
Well.
We get, you know.
Right, I have, I have, I got that.
I think we have that.
Right.
We gave that to him in one of the previous meetings.
And, and we did, there, there was another approval given a, a few months ago to get the surveys done on Sunset where we've got.
Right.
Where, where the, where there's been covenants installed.
I saw the surveys.
Yeah, okay, so I, I'm waiting for getting those surveys back. Because that's another issue that we've got some drainage in areas that don't have drainage.
Okay, so by the meeting on the fifteenth, we'll have answers for sure.
We'll, 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 we'll have a, we'll hopefully have a meeting scheduled with South Florida. And if you'd like, I can invite, you know, we can involve Ray with that.
Sure. Absolutely. Or I'll make the appointment, whatever you want to do. I'm not challenging you. I don't want to hear that. This guy's got a legitimate right. That's why we're here. Fix the goddamn thing. I'm tired of this. I am. I'm sorry. I'm tired of it. We have a multitude of these problems coming up. I don't want to hear it cost too much money. We gave money back. Let's fix it.
And you're just on the issue of working with South Florida, having them come out and do the inspection. I know David didn't mention it, but as part of the drainage issue item, we saw the letters that went out to the various property owners that have been coaching and putting improvements and filling up the swales.
Yes.
Uh, hopefully those will be involved before South Florida comes out here. Because that would not be a pretty.
Well, I think that's been the delay because of all the new home.
Yeah, no, I'm saying.
Swales.
Well, that, you saw the recent examples, the letters that went out.
Yeah, that's important.
Yes, well, they're approaching into the drainage easement.
Right.
So what I'm saying is if South Florida comes out there, that's wrong. It's good to have these in hand because if they say, whoa, you got these issues, what are you doing? Taking care of it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I just have to comment on one thing. Charlie said, he's been having this problem for 11 years. The new builds have nothing to do with it. I'm sorry. The drainage problem has been a problem for him for 11 years. And you guys have been negligent, not taking care of it.
Furthermore, the owners themselves have to do something like they did and then get reprimanded because they'll have to take matters in their own hands into the CID's and doing anything. And just for your information, I was at the county yesterday. I spoke to code enforcement. And I'm glad you just admitted that nothing has ever been done to maintain these swales. And now the homeowners can go to code enforcement and have the county come and check. And if you guys have not done it, or like you just admitted you haven't done, they can force you and obligate you. That is, your job is to maintain these swales. You are putting part of the properties in jeopardy here. His property, his property, my property, my living area, where the two others away from you. And we discussed this two months ago, and everybody said the same things they're saying now. We're going to take care of it. Nothing has been done. That's why these owners take matters in their own hands. And as a matter of fact, we discussed it. They have culverts on their street, at the beginning of the street, that eliminates a lot of the water. On Windward, we have a sidewalk with three or four little holes this big that are blocked up. And that's why we get flash flooding at his house that blows up. I had last month.
That's what he is working on right now.
That's what they said last time.
No, I've seen this.
This is not public comment. And the chair has permission from the chair to address because the opportunity.
Okay, you don't want to hear, you don't want to hear.
No, so you can sit down. This is not.
You don't want solutions. It's up to you.
So it is that we're going to work with Florida South Water Management, and we're going to continue on trying to get surveyors on the swales. But I know you're working on those.
Yeah, the pipe changes as far as getting anything even scheduled.
One of some speech up sewers on the inside. Newport Cave has nothing except for those. You go down Sunset, there's two huge sewers going in the K's Drive and the sewers down. I'll just do a building, right?
I have no clue how that transpired because it transpired in the early 90s.
Mayor, just a question, David. To the extent that there are obvious blockages in the district stormwater system that can be easily remedied without having to have any survey, but are there any out there that you are aware of that are repeating drainage?
It's small pipes. It's what it is, right?
Small pipes is one thing, and then at those same locations.
Can we fix them?
Yes, we've received proposals to do that. They were tabled last month. The other thing that could be done is immediately take a look at those primary drainage swales, roads to the back swales. Many of those right away have instructions. We can try to take care of those immediately. And get the water in the back swales. That would help eliminate some of that roadway.
That was the whole point, and that's why we tabled the other swales is because it's all part of, it's an overall problem, not just those swales.
It's a total system problem.
Because the picture that you showed, the water went over the thing, but it stopped because it was completely filled all the way to the top. Your swales were overfilled, so where else is it going to go? But, but let me ask you this. You said 11 years. Was this brought up to any of the CID in the last 11 years? I don't know.
When I built the house, Mr. Fancy came over, explained it perfectly, just like David's saying. Water's supposed to come down. It's that tank dispersing inside. So this is the way. I said, okay, I have no problem. I want, what do you want me to do? Okay, I'm going to build it here. $2,000 in my pocket. Make that swelling exactly where you want. Every year, I have to go, I never.
Since the beginning?
Yeah, and every year I go back and go, oh, damn, this street is. So then I get Brick Secretary, my landscape, he goes in, he's been rebuilding. I find my head in a backhoe before I start building because one side of it was nothing. He had to fix the whole run all the way.
So I'm just saying though, but has the CID actually heard this in the last 11 years other than when you were just here the last time, when you showed us the picture?
I actually called Ron and said, yeah, come on, take a look.
But what I'm saying was it brought here.
Oh, no. Yes, I did come here in the past.
That's what I want to know.
And it's just a burden.
There you go.
In order to hold down the annual assessments, I believe the board made its decisions to have primary interest pay off the bonds. And some of the other maintenance and so forth got deferred.
So in other words, they didn't have the money for six years. You're right. We all know that story. That's over now. You know, we got to fix this.
But the reason he's getting so much water going that way is because it's not going sideways because they're blocked. So instead of that going to the back and dispersing, it's going, oh, no, it's all coming down. Well, I think it also has to do how the road is graded that way, and it's just going down this way. But you get the whole street going that way, not just half right.
The roads are graded, or were designed to be graded, and at the midpoint in each of the Ks, the water goes both directions. Neither goes to the end of the cul-de-sac and discharges to the rear swales, or it goes through those two, two side yard swales that go back to there. Of course, you got different design frequencies and rainfall events that you do size the roads for and the swales and so forth. And it could be, you know, that brain we had in October was extremely high and fast and had a high rainfall intensity. So that's why we saw a lot of that. I was here for that. I came out, drove down here to see what was going on, and I got caught in some of those heavy rains that was here. It was, within an hour, it was precipitated.
But admittedly, previous CID boards deferred it because they didn't have the money.
Correct.
Sounds right to me. By now, we've got a little money. We need to fix it. How do we fix it? I'm not trying to dump it on you, but what else do I dump it on? How do we fix it?
We've got to start.
The overall project is taking care of the sidewalk plumes, taking care of all the swales, opening them up, trying to open up to what they were originally designed for. Part of the difficulty there is keep in mind that those are backyard swales, and they're an easement, a drainage easement that's 20 foot off the property line. And those property lines are actually in the canal themselves, so we lose canal capacity, or we lose squareup capacity right there because we can't put a swell in the middle of the canal.
Okay.
So that's a challenge.
What can we do? He's saying it hasn't been right since the beginning. So let's say it was under-engineered. Whatever it was, it was under-engineered from the beginning. Everybody knows, this lady says, from the beginning. Okay. So somebody along the line, not us, made a mistake. Now we got to fix the mistake, and it's been that long. We're going to fix this thing, and how do we fix it? I mean, how do we fix it?
I want to say step one is probably maintenance. Step two is talking to South Florida to see if there are some ways that we can increase capacity or do some things that we can get rid of the water quicker. I'm doubtful on that because they're going to be concerned about water quality, and when that system was originally designed, the water quality standards were, is great. So things that we may be looking at doing is acquiring more property to do water detention. Coming up with unique ideas to do that water detention. Just throw some things out.
Let's get them out here.
Yeah, and I think this is key. So let's get them out here. Let's see what they come up with. Between you and I, we'll make the contacts and we'll get things going.
Let's just get them out here. Show them all of them. Show them everything. And say, what do you think? How do we fix it? And this one's first. How do we fix it? How do we fix it?
Are the other drainage responsibilities you got along the Ks and so forth, they don't seem to be the issue. I'm sorry, not along the Ks, but along Newport, they don't seem to be as big an issue at this point, but they'll need to be addressed down the line also.
Okay, but we need to worry about.
Is that the ones we got surveyed recently?
No, the ones that you got, the ones we got surveyed just recently were the pipes on Sunset.
Oh, only Sunset, not the streets?
Okay, well, if you could bring Southwest Food Management in to check this stuff out, why don't you leave the one that's alone at the end of your street down there, 162 Ks?
Leave it alone?
Yeah, just leave it alone and just let them come in and say, okay, it's good or it's not good.
Yeah, it works.
Because it's, yeah, it works.
Do we want to talk about that underneath the attorney's report?
Yeah.
This is, wow. All right, I think we got some direction on the drainage. We'll get it solved.
We've got to work on the solution.
The last thing on there is the insurance contract update. I did circulate a copy of that around. Tony just gave me some comments this morning. We'll get that cleaned up. I have Tony take one last look at it, and then we'll get it submitted for the board's approval. And that's mine.
We have a new budget that we're doing right now. And I'm telling you right now, my little one vote, I want this strained out by this new budget, okay? Whatever it is. This is bull, and I'm not blaming you. It's our fault. Not our right, but the new budget, we're going to get this thing budgeted and fixed.
Remember that at the budget here.
I will.
Okay, managers, you've got a copy of the financials. I don't know how much, you want to discuss it, but you have money, you're getting paid your bills. I can answer questions.
Yeah, when I look at it, yes, we're in the positive.
So you can see the motion to a second.
Yeah, I'm going to vote to accept for audit. I'm second that.
So Kerry made the motion, and Sam seconded.
All in favor? Okay, now the budget.
Oh, good. You've been scheduled last meeting, and I'm supposed to get some feedback as far as what you'd like to see in the budget. First today, you want to make sure that stormwater is addressed before next meeting, but we'll send out to you soon.
That tank should be in the budget.
Yep.
The tank.
The tank.
That sounds like that's going to happen. Well, what I'm thinking is that we'll spit the budget in a few weeks. It'll definitely be for the next meeting. And then we'll take the assessments at the level they're at now, reflect the amount of money that you're going to get, and then work within that budget, and then there will be excess which will just designate into a fund called CIP or capital improvement.
We're going to designate it into a fund like a reserve, or you're going to show it on budget line as capital improvement?
Right, and then you can say, you can show, break out much you want, or you'll know how much money you've got. Water sewer, you probably have about 300,000 general fund. Was there any carryover from last year? Yeah, in reserve. Well, it's unappropriated fund balance.
You don't consider that a balance?
Well, no, no, both funds. Your water sewer fund's an enterprise fund, and your O and M is the general fund. And so they act as independent entities, and if there's, whatever's left stays within those funds.
It's unassigned.
How much is that revenue up on, since the water meters have come in?
Uh, yeah. What have the water sewer fund? It's since the new meters, I think, we're not, we don't have, they're not all in, so it's not a total billing, but almost all. Just if you look at the trend report, your revenues for. You look at the trend report, you'll see that in October, the water revenue is about almost 11,000. November, or December, which is the next billing, it went up 12,425. February was 17,000, so.
But that's population also used as a calculation. Yeah, we probably need to look at from last year, October.
Same year. Various, yeah. Plus, you're still going to have new residents hoping up, so you're going to have more.
But this will be smaller now.
So, but it has increased. Percentage, I don't know.
I'm watching closely.
We'll take it, comparing October to October, December to December, about 17 and 18, or, I'm sorry, 20 and 22.
So what's the next step on our budget?
Next month, you'll have to have it adopted at your main meeting, or your tentative budget. It's actually adopted at a public hearing in August.
Right.
By the main meeting, you'll need to know if you're going to increase assessments. And it can be adjusted right up to the adoption. No. It could go lower, but you can't go higher. If you're going to increase assessments from what they were, you have to notify the county by June 15.
But you're giving us a draft of proposed budget so we have a starting point?
Yes. How about a projection to this then? The tank sounds like a half minute.
No, we could have it in there.
Right, we'll have some of that. Some of the information on the drainage and so forth was in the CIP, but I'd like to revisit that and maybe bump it up a little bit, just the fact that costs just continue to grow.
But we said we're going to budget for capital improvement, not define, but at least put it there so we know we have to start doing something.
Yeah, and for example, if you've got over and above your operating expenses, say you got 300,000, and we put that in as capital improvements. And as you designate projects from that, it goes up and down. You'll see how much you have to work with. But unless you make some cuts in your other expenses, your operating expenses.
And that CIP fund's going to be coming from two different sources. This is your drainage and roadways, your general assessment, and your water tanks going to be coming out of the utility.
Your operating fund's in really good shape. The utility fund is not so good. But it's not bad. I compared it three years ago. It's great. So, okay, no action needed then on the budget, just kind of an update. Outside of the two projects that you identified, if there's anything else that you think we need, let me know and we'll incorporate it.
Well, we see the budget before the next meeting. I mean, get an email to us.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he'll send out like a draft that we can study.
The public records policy, Tony and I just had time to get to it. The field manager report, you've got a copy of it. I don't think we have a lot of technicals. Got questions, I can try and answer them now. Otherwise, send them to me and I'll get a response to you. Follow-ups, the union road, as far as signage replacement, Lycan's, the submit should be approved within the next couple of weeks. And then I have four to six before they can install the new signs. So it's about two months out. Yeah, I'm sure it's completed. The orchid cove light pole cleaning, the poles are covered in moss and algae, and we've issued a work order on it for personnel staff to take care of it. And he takes care of things when he's in doing the report or whatever, just to save some money. And, but he didn't contact LCEC, and they're not going to do anything.
No.
Yeah, I know. Whether it's four or seven, you're going to be beautiful.
The question I have is, I always read the report, and it always talks about retention ponds and the amount of algae that's growing. Has anybody ever thought about carrying those? I mean, it hasn't been mentioned to the cost. But aeration is an option. I mean, you know, aeration does help, you know, address algae issue, but it also.
But aeration's an option. I mean, you know, aeration does help, uh, you know, address algae issue, but it also will treat since the health codes are linked itself. That's why I know, that's what I'm saying. If anyone would like, we can get some proposals and we'll consider it in the budget.
Yeah.
I, yeah, the biggest expense is gonna be getting electric.
Right.
But both of them, wow.
I'll agree.
They're, you know, are not, they're all right there next to our, uh, both of them, two of them are right next to our pumping station.
Unless. The power should be there reasonably close. It's, yeah, just getting another service from FPL. You wouldn't wanna hook them up.
LCEC.
I'm sorry, LCEC. You wouldn't wanna hook them up to your pump stations though.
No, no, I just mentioned that the pump station is there between the lights.
Yeah.
The electric's pretty close there because I think that electric runs in the top line.
No.
Okay.
So we'll just get some proposals and discuss it during the budget.
Okay. And put it on the agenda.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
This budget will be on the next agenda, but we'll probably put it under.
Yeah.
Separate.
Okay, good.
Uh, I think that takes us to Tony. Tony, uh, yes, the A's Drive Monument License Agreement update. Uh, I've sent the, uh, agreement to, Mr. Chan, Chad has reported this week, an email. I haven't heard anything back yet. I'll just follow up on that. So there are no license agreements. In fact, on the decorative favors right away from it, what I, I come up with a, I'll call, some people say heavy-handed indemnification agreement. Oh, sick, yeah. And this is sort of a form of it. Now, I put insurance provisions in there and that's something that I'm not recommending that it's hard to be in there, but I think it's just helpful. What this would allow is that if you want to put favors or anything else, hack in a district driveway or an improvements day, they would need to sign this agreement, it's an indemnification, a whole harmless, to engage in these activities. Now, paragraph two, we had tax part insurance requirements, but the board thinks that's just too much. Okay, well, they just, the first part's the important part. It just regards to indemnification.
This is moving forward though, right?
Yes, oh, yes.
It doesn't affect anything in place now?
We can ask them to, but we can say no, and we can still keep what they have. We can go forward.
The key to this agreement, of course, is gonna be the county cooperating with.
Yeah.
Letting us take a look at the site plans, the permits and so forth. That if, right now, we're not getting any kind of driveway permits.
And it's our condition, the county notifies us with that, so we know what's going on before the books come, so we go again.
Otherwise, we gotta be reactive and force them into doing it after the fact.
So the boards of the consensus to utilize this document, I think, get it. I have no difficulty taking out paragraph two requiring insurance, they're district, that's.
I think, I think two needs to go.
Yeah, I believe that. I put that in, sometimes I'll put items in documents just so people can say, uh, no, let's take it out. Again, so it's something, it's supposed to say, do you wanna talk about insurance? Then you say, what insurance are you talking about? This way.
Yeah.
They're gonna.
Part to. Okay, so I'm gonna revise this form, then the county will have it, David will have it, and then anybody, hopefully the county will cooperate so that when the use agreement is requested, it'll have this attached to it.
When we need these things, I'm not, I'm just gonna tell you something. When we need these county things, I really think you should call Rick directly. He's a very proactive guy. And just call him. And that's, he's into that. And just say, look, we've got a problem with this. Can you help us with it?
Yeah, I, I have a problem calling him, but I think also he likes to know what the issue is generally.
Sure.
I think, what I've been thinking is if I send the letter out, that we copied on it, kind of follow-up call.
Yep. But I mean, look what he did when we had that meeting. He had the world in there.
That's right.
At nine o'clock in the morning. So, I mean, that's what we need.
Boy, he is that kind of person. I agree.
So he'll help us.
And that's what I'll do. So that's, that's your approach, I'll take with regards to that document. On the union road, signed maintenance agreement, uh, does anybody have any contact information?
I talked to him, they'll do it.
They don't give contact information?
It's just Port of the Island Place.
Oh, okay.
That's the name of it.
David, what's that?
Or, uh, yeah, yep. And I'll get it, I can get your phone number.
Yeah, I'll get it. It's just to say, hey, you're supposed to pay for this. You're just gonna, for my degree. The US forty-one media maintenance options, that's, and David and Chris, Chris already dug up a lot.
Yeah, Chris dug up.
And I think you've already read it. We talked about it briefly. So, yeah, definitely sort of discussion, you know, with regards to that. We can start the story. I do get a kick out of fact of it, that the landscape management agreement says Kyler County owns the right of one, known as State Road ninety.
What?
At one time, I think.
It's in a preamble.
I think at one time they had some maintenance responsibilities, maybe.
It's okay.
Nine fifty-one's a very similar road too, where it's one back and forth.
Yeah, that's.
We're gonna discuss that in the next meeting.
Forty-one, forty-one maintenance.
Yeah.
License product.
Well. Take it out. Uh, some other items to get down to, fourteen, but, uh, the cover, stone bars, the.
I think we're frank.
I think, yes, he's gonna have a meeting.
I would suggest, wait, let you see what the results are at the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's people, I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
People for next meeting, if they vote. Did fossil thirteen.
I think we're up to fourteen, that return.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything, that's the fourteen eight.
Yeah.
Uh, I've already handed out the letters. It's a brief discussion. These are the, uh, one sixty-two, one sixty-three Sunset K. You know, I had a conversation with Pat Neal, local attorney. I've known Pat for a long time. He represents Mr. George Mess and Miss Margaret Alcott. And I don't know if Cat's on the phone. Uh, we gave you the information to be able to call in. I don't know if he's, he stayed on the whole time or if he's the one rustling the papers. He was asking for the ability to, I'm gonna ask if he's on the line.
Yeah.
Uh, is the attorney for one sixty-two, one sixty-three K, Sunset K on the call?
Pat Neal.
Pat Neal.
You have to unmute seven. If it's number seven, you muted them.
Uh, I muted a couple of them.
Nothing better than muting in a turn on.
Well, he could text me, let me unmute, uh, seven. Uh, is Mr. Neal present? No, I don't see that he's there. Somebody's calling or texting. Nope, so I guess he's not there. If he does join us, Pat and I had a brief telephone conversation. He called me with regards to the Alcott, Ms. Alcott and Mr. Mess. And he was asking to have a discussion with the manager and the engineer myself with regard to this. I said, I've never had any difficulties with discussing items, but this doesn't need to get remedied. Because he suggested that let this stay in place for the south floors. You, you, this like a test drainage facility, go to south floor and see what their thought would be about permit modification. I said, well, the issue is, it's a system-wide drainage issue we have. It's not just, and we had this good discussion before, it's not, you don't wanna do it piecemeal. And, and so I, I still, we'll have a conversation with him and talk about David. But right now, our recommendation is just to require removal, as indicated, because it was installed as to the, that piping, it was apparently created or designed by an engineer. I'm not sure who installed it. But it's not at all compliant with our permits. And my letter says you need to remove it or we take all corrupt illegal action. The district has the ability to go to court, to sue for injunction to relieve, to avoid and stop interference with the drainage easement. In my opinion, this classically interferes with the district's drainage easement. So this is really more of an update as to the status, may be able for a convention better.
Yeah. My concern is, I live on Sunset K, and my concern is, I don't know what the impact is till the rainy season starts. You know, it might be fine down there, but it might make it worse on the other end of the street. I don't know that yet. And another concern would be if, if that happens, and let's say like that one gentleman get a blowout. Never had a blowout before, and what's the cause of it? I wouldn't know. But another issue going on there, after the pipe went in, they extended the driveway. And I think Kyler County, because I know I've had that, I had to have a seven and a half foot easement from my driveway. There is no easement there. They're right on the line.
What do you mean, they, they extended the driveway to the side lot line?
Yes.
Yeah, they put it over the pipe. So the, you know, there's a little bit of problem there. The angle the house is on, you know, with a third garage, but that was not.
So they paved over the drainage easement also.
Yeah.
Not just this, it's.
Yeah, so is it drainage or was it the give me driveway? I don't know.
Is the, that may have been the reason, but making this, as opposed to eliminating the swell.
Yeah.
As I said, right, good point. But we'll follow up if they don't remove it. Then we'll come back to the board, request necessary authorization for litigation deemed or keep pressing the county. Notice we copy, we copy them with people in Kyler County. And with the, uh, the propane tank, is that in the swell?
Yeah, I believe there was a propane tank there. I think it's been used.
When I, when I went out there to look at it one day, uh, I did notice that there had been a propane tank installed there and based upon the string line they had representing the property line, it appeared the propane tank was within the easement. And I did point that out to the owner. I don't know whether it got corrected or not, but it was pointed out that it was in the easement.
Yeah, I think the owner's here.
He's right there. Is it Mr. Mess?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Barrow gas, there are people that install a tank.
Okay.
Is it out? I thought it was on his property.
No.
No, it's on Mr. Mess's property. And if he, if he's contacted the gas company and they moved it, then the issue's gone.
I might also add, the paper that. It goes straight through water, water. There's no cement, nothing permanent. And in the answer to your question about third car block, I never actually, I confused it. I was using it as a store. So I, I kind of knew that.
Yeah, well, my thing is, I, I went in.
You may, you may even wanna come up front.
Yeah.
I'm having a trouble hearing.
Yeah, good.
Well, um, you're saying you're using it for storage or you bought the garage, right?
That's true.
Right. But when I built my house, I have a third car garage to the side, and I had to have a seven and a half foot easement, the, the grass area, couldn't do anything on it. I couldn't put my driveway on it. And that's my concern.
Was that cement driveway?
Yes.
See, this is, this is a survey. It's just sand. The papers are just sitting upset. There is no cement. There's nothing there.
I thought I couldn't put anything on it. That, I thought I couldn't put anything on it. I had a state grant.
People for grants, people for push-ups, people for.
I don't know. See, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. What I'm saying is that what is there, what is there?
Yeah.
It's permanent. It's, and it can be replaced. If you guys want that, I mean.
Well, I don't think it's, I.
No, say, no, 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 it's, it's not permanent. It's, it's brick on top of sand.
No, no, we understand.
Always take it off.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying. That, that's not the point. The point is, you completely build.
The swell.
The swell. You put in a pipe, when we told you that that was tabled, because we wanted Southwest Florida Management to take a look at it to make sure that it didn't violate what they have for a, a permit down here.
And then when I sat there and called Frank and listened to all those nightmares, I'm going, yeah, they tabled. Yeah, and you say like, what's the?
Too long, something, right.
I'm kinda stuck.
Well, that's true, but, well, we did, we, that's the point. You took.
That is the point.
The point is you took the swell over that you shouldn't have taken over.
What I did, my due diligence, I made sure that what I did was correct with an engineer's study and I made sure that.
It's not a Florida engineer, number one. Number two, it makes no difference. The due diligence is just five men reward. I mean, I, you know, I don't wanna be the, you know, the guy that says you can't do it, but I came there, that I came there that Monday.
You did.
You remember, and I told you guys. I said, you put this in, we tabled this, you can't do this. And you went ahead and finished it all. No, you didn't have any of the dirt in it, you know, and the, and the driveway wasn't in. I said, you know, I don't wanna be the bad guy in this, but the whole point is, for the last, how long you had to permit? Nine months? You're, you're developer Joe, you didn't notice that you're going to have to use the swale? Have to, you didn't come to us nine months ago and say, you know, I got a problem and I'd like you to help me address it. You didn't. You waited it until the last minute and then you came to us. When we started to do the drainage, we noticed that. Now FEMA set the house up two feet higher. Your drainage is on three feet. We have a five-foot ditch there. If we don't address this immediately before rainy season, and we get one of those flash floods that we're getting on my street, that whole corner of the house could come down. He has to protect integrity and safety of his property. What he did with an engineer's approval, okay, to get, what he did with an engineer's approval is he put exactly what you have at the beginning of the street. He copied that thing there. He put a swell and he put a culvert in there, okay? Culverts are the reason we don't have issues on new ports to fix culverts over there. Culverts have been invented by the Romans, if you didn't know that, and they're used everywhere in the world, except on this little section over here. That water flows exactly. All we're doing is protecting the integrity. That corner of the house is literally two feet away from the corner of where your easement is. It's a five-foot ditch. First of all, for safety, for everything else. In my construction from Lee County, they forced me to put a culvert in. I'd rather not because it's expensive. They forced me. There's also other issues. County says you have to have for every, uh, three feet, one foot slope. Here we have one foot, three foot slope, there's ditches. And we're supposed to have five feet integrity around the property of dirt. So if there is any washout, at least it takes a while to get the house. None of that is respected there because of this antiquated system that we have here. It's a ditch. It's dangerous to walk on. You can't move your lawn on it. It's ridiculous. We have a culvert that was engineered, put in there. You have that same system at the beginning of the street and it works perfectly. We don't have it on Wimber. And it does on that.
Yes.
Uh, Tony.
Wait, 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 was he a Florida licensed engineer?
He's an engineer.
Was he a Florida?
He is an engineer from Vanderbilt University with an MBA.
Is he a Florida licensed engineer?
No.
No.
Is he practicing engineering in Florida without a license?
Tony, Tony, Kurt, help me. Should we be talking the details with this meeting if the other attorneys apply?
Well, Mr. Levy is not represented by Mr. Neal. Are you gonna believe?
No, no. Uh. Yes, my opinion, you brought my name and my.
Mr. Mr. Mess is, and, uh, Pat Neal is not here. I mean, that's a few here. So, but you can have these discussions. But again, I think the board is. You have people engaging activities in the district's easement, that's a lot of law. We sent a letter saying that we become compliant and remove the interference with the drainage easement. Unless the board wants to provide a different direction, I understand it preferred for Mr. Mess, for Mr. Levy. And, uh, unless the board wants us to give you directions.
Well, I'm a British speaking, so actually, the, uh, you guys count, uh, so, they came out, they didn't see any issues with the problem. And when we went to the county, they actually said, the fact that CIP is not maintaining the swells puts them in jeopardy. And Mr. Mess can open a complaint, partner of, uh, 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 complaint. They will come up here and force the issue to have it repaired, because nobody has taken any calls. And if that's the source that you wanna take, then when they get involved, it's gonna cost all of us a hell of a lot more money than what he did.
Thank you. You, you have something?
Uh, again, Gary McKinney, uh, one sixty-two Sunset K, uh, notwithstanding all the comments, because I think everybody's probably right here. I'm not a Florida engineer. I am an engineer, but I am not a race special commuter Florida. Uh, you're right, uh, in that. Uh, you're right, uh, in that we did not have permission, we did request permission, but we did not have it. And there are two, in the fact that they need this easement somewhere from their home. We moved here in December, October two thousand nineteen, in December two thousand nineteen, I sent an email to Terry uh, regarding the water issue behind, behind the home. I did not understand at that point how the system worked, so quite frankly, I shouldn't have sent the email because I was wrong. The system was performing the way it was supposed to perform. The problem on Sunset, I'm, I'm only talking about Sunset now. The problem on Sunset, we couldn't get the water out of the street. And by not being able to do that, it was washing debris, and I have pictures if you'd like to see them, up into the driveway. Nails from the construction, all kinds of stuff, being washed into the, into the driveway, because we couldn't get the water out. The system, as it's designed today, does not have this sufficient slope to move the water from the street, and anyone in the cage, you can take anyone in the cages and look at it. It does not have the slope to move that water out of the street, down to where it needs to get to, so then it can fall back through the swales, the way it's supposed to. The coefficient of friction, uh, they have another term, I, I can't remember right now for, for water, it's not really friction, it's a different term. It has to do with, with how it flows down through, you know, through the, through the ground that you go. Prevents it from flowing, uh, at a decent rate. So basically what happens is when this water comes out of the street, and it starts coming down through the grass and whatnot, people start backing up. I mean, it just kind of comes, it just starts backing up into the street. The idea that, that I started looking at probably eight months ago, was how to get that water out of the street and keep the debris out of the driveway, that, that was my goal. It, it, it really, the drainage part and the, and the swell part, that's a, a different half part, they, uh, yeah, they do need to be cleaned down and maintained. That, that's, that's a given, we need to be able to hold for that. But getting the water out of the street was what I was trying to attack, was what I was doing. And basically, I put together, I had a lot of notes, and I tried to put them into some, into a form that we could maybe understand a little better, because I didn't want to bring my. If, if we look at this, what I did is I calculated the road, and I went from the slope, our road has a slope, it clowns just past Terry's property, it clowns and goes back the other way towards Case Drive. But it, it comes down to our end, the one six two, one six three end. And there's approximately thirteen thousand square feet of area there, that we have to bring, when it comes to running. So I did some calculations based off what in the national oceanographic direction. Their worst case scenario that over a one hundred year period, that they use for calculating grain, form grain issues is four inches per hour. So I use that number to calculate what we could get rid of, uh, if we didn't have a pipe, the way it was set. So basically, all we could do was about, it's about, it's about a hundred and eighty-eight gallons a minute, is all we could get rid of. By putting in the pipe, I was going to be able to get rid of five hundred and thirty-nine gallons. Which is, which is fairly significant. Uh, the pipe's actual capacity is much greater than that, but you want to have some resistance ahead of that pipe. Uh, from the, from the street, et cetera, et cetera, it gets kind of complicated to get out of that cell. But what I was trying to do, basically is get the water out of the street. And, and I really think the system will work. Now, as, as, uh, Mr. George said, uh, I think if we're going to be allowed to finish this up, and it, it's going to buy us a lot of time, one, but we could look at it and evaluate it, and I really believe it will work as a solution for that part of, but, I mean, there is another section, that's the swell going around. That's another issue, that's a second. But from the road to the, to the exit port down there, the concrete structure where the water would run out into the, into the canal, uh, that is a problem, and it's a problem we'll never get, because we cannot get that water out the street down there appropriately. Now, what we did, when we put, we did what we did, we actually enhanced that area down there so that it would hold more water. So if, if, it's the way it's designed works, and it, and it all means it should, the water will come out of the street at a, at a much higher rate than it mentioned prior, and be captured there, better than it, than it used to be. This, this is, this, I don't have problems, but this, this is a picture, this happened in June, I believe, but last year, this was a seven inch rain we got in about four hours, I think. Uh, but that's what happened behind, behind our home. Uh, and mainly because that area around the concrete culvert had filled in so much, the water couldn't get up through the, the pipe. I mean, you only had about this much distance there for that water to run up under there. So by, by enhancing and increasing that capacity, we would bring this down quite a bit, one. Here's an example of the water in the street, this, this was, this wasn't the same rain, I didn't, for whatever reason, I didn't make a picture, it was much worse than this one. That's a picture of the, of the rain, um, it's a layover of the driveway.
Um, I liked when you said having an experiment, and I've been wondering, can we leave the pipe and without what's Florida come? See what they say? I mean, and, yeah, and then, and then post calling and mitigation until.
But you're going along with the do it first and ask to give the.
Okay, it's already there, so.
Right, but they were told not to do.
I appreciate that, but what if it works?
I was.
And we have the opportunity to find out for free, they paid for it.
I couldn't even tell you what was there, it didn't work, because I knew the homeowner was prior to him, and there was never a problem. And then as the construction started, all the sand was coming, and at the end of the block, right between his house and the other house, was a, like a cement piece for the water to go to the back, that was never cleaned out with all that construction.
We haven't been doing her job at all.
The whole, you know, it was just, the builder would have done his job.
So I have a quick question. Yes. You've had, if Southwest Florida comes along and says to us, this ain't working because this is not what your permit allowed. You have to have that easement, I mean, you have to have that swell, et cetera. Is there another solution to your problem that can work? And provide, leave our swell alone, and provide the five feet, whatever it is.
The building siding issue, so, yes.
Is there another solution?
No, because between the corner of that house, you got a permit, and where your easement start, there's only two feet.
Who's fault that?
Yeah.
If you look at the survey, you'll see it.
Who's fault?
But how did that house get put where it is?
There is no fault for that.
Who, who sided the house?
The county gave the permit to that, so who's fault is it? There's no fault, we have a permit, so there, why is there?
Well, I guess it's.
Who sided the house? Yeah, who sided the house?
The fault is that FEMA brought the, the, the property, uh, finished floor elevation up two feet.
Now.
So there's where the problem started, right there, it went up two feet, finished floor elevation.
But that being the case, how did the house get put where it got put? If you know, or the builder knows, all that, how did that happen?
When you're doing a site plan, you have a two dimensional survey. The surveyor and the architect plant the house, they don't know that this lot uniquely, only that lot has a five foot ditch there, because nowhere is it legal to have something that deep. You have to have a grade three feet to one, you should have a normal slope. So when that was submitted to the county and approved by the county, it's like that for the two dimensional project. When you build it, and then you see it three D, and then you start to do your final grade, then that's when the kick, the problem came out. But at that point, he had imagined, well, you should have started over, we cannot tear it all to slant. And filings or whatever else, or start something open, ever since you started over, well, you shouldn't, you should have moved it, that's what you said, move it.
I, I, what I said was, it should have been addressed at the initial site plan, and at that point, you should have said, there's a problem here.
There wasn't a problem on the site plan, it's a two dimensional site.
There's a problem when everybody in the neighborhood rode around and went, how is George going to get into the second garage? The third garage, and so the point I'm making is, it should have been, you, you should have been here nine months ago and said, we're going to have a problem when we go to final grade, because I've got to put five feet, and I'm into the swell.
My neighbor was here ten years ago, and he still has the same problem, so.
When I talk about, how do you talk about this issue?
But this is the way you react.
No, this is issue, that's all, this.
Uh, that was a whole different group of people.
It's the same exact house.
So that's fair comment.
His house is exactly in the same place as his house, it's identical, every case has the same issue. And you have that culvert on your side, on Sunset K, you have the same system that he put in his house, it's existing ever ten years, and it works. On my street, it doesn't work because we have these little four holes. If someone, when we had requested, okay, when we requested for the engineer to come, somebody had come out that meeting and said, like, they said they were going to, because Terry had requested, nobody showed up, okay? Nobody came from the engineer to see it, so nobody took any interest in it, and at this point, we're in rainy season, what do we do? If you were in his position, you would be doing the exact same thing, and he now has to take a lawyer, and now it's me as a taxpayer here, I have to defend it, the only winners here are the lawyers, because we have to defend a system that may work, and maybe a solution for everybody, instead of having all these surveys and paying engineers to do all this, why don't we see if this works? If it doesn't work, he's going to have to readdress it, he has to do something, he's got a lot of work. And he's saying that, so maybe it works, and we have a solution, and we haven't spent all this money.
I think all we're, all we're really asking is to, is to allow the thing to finish. When South Florida comes, if they have a better solution, we, we take it out. I mean, it's not.
What, what happened to South Florida doesn't have a better solution, but tells you to take it out. Because, well, then you still have a problem, because you no longer had the five foot grade that you have to have. That's the point I made, I made this whole.
But I think they would have to come up with a better solution, I, I.
No, because they didn't, not, this is beautiful, this really is beautiful, and I love this, and you're right, but you know what it comes down to? The house never should have been put where it was put.
Yeah, sure.
And that's the bottom line.
I understand.
Somebody had to know that that was wrong, I don't know who it was, I don't know anything about it, I don't even know what the house looked like. But somebody had to know that house with those parameters is in the wrong damn place, somebody did.
I understand that, but again, my.
And, and this is good.
My scope was to try to get the water out of the street.
I know, you're right.
I was trying to do, and, well, actually out of my driveway, is what I was trying to do. Um, and I just, I, I, I think everyone that's come out and looked at it, and, and it's, and evaluated it, it has never had a, no one's had a problem. But everyone.
Who is Southwest Florida has come out, and they're the people that could.
Well, if they do, they don't, they're going to have to take it out on the front of the street too, because you have the exact same system there. It is a duplicate, it's, it's twin.
No, Joe, but I think, I think we've had another discussion.
You did, you did have your engineer book, yes, in February, and you recommended against that, or that's why you tabled.
But you think about, plus we wanted it included, you know, we wanted Southwest Florida to come out and find it all, even legal.
Okay, can we table this decision until Southwest Florida looks at it?
Well, as, as long as this is on it, he can't get a C O, right?
Right.
Does this stop him from getting a C O?
I don't know.
And like.
Well, this, this is that code thing then, right?
You have to say interference with the district's greenery, the county may be, we've indicated filed to the county, that's up to the county, notify the county, we believe that. First of all, it was a spell without a permit right now. Uh, and the county probably, probably would require a permit. And so that's how the building officials might be able to say, stop this Florida, we're trying to file.
Tony, Tony Osario?
Michael Saro, he's code enforcement.
You, the guy, he's, he's down, and he said to Jonathan Walsh, wouldn't be that important to.
He's a building official.
Yeah.
Only Jonathan Walsh can make the call.
Yeah.
It's next Friday evening, next Friday.
Next.
So why don't we wait until we hear from Jonathan Walsh?
And what they told, and what they told us too, is if it does get rejected by the C I D, because you are right, you need permission from the C I D. But the fact that the C I D hasn't done anything over the years, and he, he said, well, he's entitled to protect his property. He's had calls, code enforcement, on the C I D.
Right.
They've been doing their part on their business. The C I D, according to what the engineer at the county told us, the C I D's job is to make sure that everything is maintained, and everything is done. And if it's not, and we don't have the funds, because that would always be the excuse, it is your job to raise the funds to fix each problem. So.
We're about to do that, I, I think that'd be the best solution.
But if we wait until this Jonathan Walsh, he has to get a permit, then he gets.
Yeah, here's, by the way, just for information.
You want, I don't want to keep him from getting a C O, that's, you know what I mean?
That's, that's up to the county.
He can tear it out if he has to, but.
That's up to the county, and here's the complaint status as of yesterday, as of Wednesday, per the county code enforcement website. Uh, it's prior initial inspection, three sixteen, followed three twenty-five, comments, observed construction of a drainage system and easement. Will contact the building department to see if this is connected to the contract, they connect it to the permit. So that's it, that's the status.
Yeah, that was his, that was his only objection, because he said, it looks good, I don't have an issue with it, I just didn't fill out the permit. And he said, I'm not sure, maybe it is under the construction permit, because there is, in the construction permit, there is, uh, uh, water distribution.
Oh, no, no, I, I've seen the water distribution plan, it's, it doesn't show the pipe.
But it's been approved.
And I sent it today, correct?
We've got that.
I just. It doesn't show, it doesn't show a trenching and piping in all of the countries, correct?
Correct.
On the building, on that plan.
The problem is, Mr. Mess, and I completely sympathize with you, and I haven't been over there, I haven't been over there. But from what I've seen, not what I've heard, Port of the Islands is getting real bad disease. And it's called, he said, she said, I talked to this one, this one did that eight years ago. None of that, those days are over. Previous boards were sloppy, we're doing the cleanup for it, we've already spent over fifty grand getting documentation to bring us up to twenty twenty-two. Not your fault, but we were behind the eight ball, things had been let go for a long time by previous boards, not us. And the problem is, the, the problem is, the best example I can give you are the pavers. A petty thing, do they look great? Yeah. Do I have a problem? No, I think they look better, I don't think the sidewalks are all that special. And it's people building million dollar houses, so, okay. But the problem is, there was a lot of hulping who goes there, there was a lot of, I'd rather. There was a lot of, I'd rather ask forgiveness than permission. And they did things on their own. And it can't go like that. Not you. You're a victim. But it can't go like that with anything anymore. It can't. Because then what happens is, we get spanked. Okay, the county, okay, this, county, okay, that. Now it creates another problem. We're part of the county. We're a district, one of 24 in the county. They owe us. So I hear what you're saying and we're not saying no. The, the two issues are too many people, I'm not saying you. Too many people are saying, well, my neighbors said. We don't care what your neighbors said. And I don't mean you. We don't care what anybody's neighbors said. Because we're on the hook. If there's a problem down the road, like there is now with these swales, guess who's on the hook? And we represent everybody in here. I'm going to tell you a secret. Sitting here today, we just looked at an extra million bucks that's not in the CIP report. Not budgeted for. And you know what that means, don't you? The taxes are going to go up. It can't come from anywhere else.
But don't go through respect. This is not an issue of payers. This is an issue of integrity of this house. It is dangerous.
It's an issue that house was put the wrong place.
It's, no matter what it is, it's there without permits. It's there. It wasn't put in.
All right, so the payers have nothing to do.
Right.
Discussing is the judge. Are we going to allow that? What are we going to do about it? Joe, that, that's it, Joe.
Why don't you take.
Joe, don't beat a dead horse, please.
Why don't you just go and take a look?
What would be the next thing?
Not to come off, the, the problem is, we've got to look into it, but I'm not saying you.
We've covered all the issues.
It shouldn't have, I'm, I'm not done.
Yes, well, I think we need to.
Okay, well, think again.
Sorry.
I think that.
Would you use this on?
We've got, give it to me. We've got to look at it because, I'm not saying you. People you trusted, whoever did it, can't do these things without permission. And that's the problem. And you know what I think? I think you're a victim. I do. Okay, just because they think it's a good idea, doesn't mean it is.
I say we wait until we hear from Jim Walsh.
That's fine.
If he says he just needs a permit. And then, you know, and then if Southwest Florida management comes in, he's willing to remove it if he has to. So the logical thing is to just let it roll, see where it falls. Southwest Florida management comes in here and tells us we've got to spend a million bucks, which is what I'm afraid of. Those other things.
I, I, I do directing staff to pull back on every day the letters have been sent.
Well, no, I know the letters have been sent. Well, we can't do it. Why do anything until we hear from this Jim Walsh? It, it's already in process.
I guess in my, in my humble opinion, there are two issues. One is we've notified the county we believe there's an issue. Secondly, this is contrary to our district's South Florida water management district permit. Now, I, I, I recognize the threats of us believing that South Florida is going to, it's going to sick the miles. We're not going to buy it when I can buy a week's company. I think the board recognizes that. Come back for high water for the whole system. And so I, I would not dissuade you to utilize that in your opinion is, in your decision making on this. If South Florida walks in and said, hey, we think they're wanting you to do a permit modification, next step is, who's going to pay for the permit modification?
I.
Well.
It's not.
I'm, I'm going to discuss it with the board.
You mean whether it's a current modification?
If they, if South Florida even says yes, do a permit modification, but then South Florida, they say, you may need to modify your entire permit. Not just for that structure. Okay? And so that's where I can see my experience with South Florida, David, I don't know if you disagree, would be knowing I can do this one area, you're going to do the whole system. And you need to prove to us that it's going to work for the whole system. That, you know, if they say, okay, you can modify your permit to use this as a test program. I've not really ever seen them do that, no. But that would be optimal, I guess. But again, there's a cost associated with it and a timeframe associated with it. In South Florida, we're not doing a letter modification. It'd be a permit modification and it's probably going to be a three month process. Fair enough, David. If, if not, hopefully it goes smoothly. So in my, my experience with South Florida, modify a permit, do an amendment to a permit, not just a letter modification of this nature would take three months.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible? I know we're continuing this meeting over until April 1st for the hearings, et cetera. Is it possible to continue this over? We'll have an answer from the county.
Yeah.
From the county by next week. And we continue this over?
Sure.
And if the county says that this doesn't work and if we can get out of Southwest Florida management out here to just take a look at just this one problem and say, this is not going to work, we can table it until April 1st and then discuss it at that point. If it, if it, and if it doesn't, if it does fly, then they're going to have to do something to.
Make it fly.
To make it fly.
Yeah, and, and the standpoint of the siding, I think that's critical. The board did not say site the building this way. And when the builder was going along and realized there was an issue at the time, they were setting the footers or setting the trench, whatever they were doing. And that, oh, we have this grade separation. In my humble opinion, you now say, well, we decided to go upward lateral, continue working and then come up with some other solution. That's not out of this, my humble. And that's one of those issues.
So would I make a motion to table until April 1st?
First, please.
What are, what are appropriate dates for this? Yeah, you're not kidding. It's going to be a five hour meeting.
I made a motion.
Call a favor.
And Tony, what are you doing about your letter?
It stands. Mind the notch board says to, well, it's already down. It's already, already down. We just come back.
You send me a, a follow up letter?
No.
Say, hey, it's.
Have that direct message. I, I think the letter should stand in this letter. Stand by the first.
Want to hear from the other engineer about.
Son of a wall, sure.
What's next?
The landscape lights Newport interest finding proposal. The Excel submitted a testament. 14B. We have an estimate for the lighting. And that's $1,600. And that's basically to replace and go with LED.
And those are the same, those are the ones.
Except they're LED.
Motion to accept. Yeah, I'd like this to be known that it's Newport Drive, not Newport Road. Yep. You're right. I'd make a motion that we, uh, propose build, uh, for, to update their lights, the LED for Newport Drive.
Seven.
Call a favor.
Aye.
And that takes us to the public hearings or the rules. Tony, you got any comments?
Yes, I could. Madam Chair, again, I'd just have to record your printout. It will be a nappy publication of the notice, public notice of the rulemaking and hearing with today's date on the proposed amendments to the district rules and procedures. And if I am made, if the chair, if you could open up the public hearing, by the board by motion of the public hearing.
Motion to open up the public hearing.
My second. Call a favor.
Aye. Thank you. What, and I guess the question is, are any people signed up to speak after I make the presentation? Boards inside Hollywood want to hear them. What I did, I went through, I know, you had a very good discussion at the last board meeting, some additional changes. And we appreciate your patience in reading all my various edits as we go along and the rainbow bright color coded iterations, I guess. And what I did in this iteration was take, definitely all highlighting of the various areas. And I've written a clean and redlined version. I'll go through the pages and the sections where I've had a handwritten notes and other comments or changes to make, you know, that I made between the last meeting and today. And as I mentioned, I have a draft resolution. In the draft resolution, we won't hear that today, because our request is to continue again, April 1st. We'll adopt the redline versions, as being the amended version, with the authorization to the chair, to the manager, to have a clean version in the district's record and to also make, correct any squinters errors and insert pagination. I didn't want to do the pagination until we had the final document. So we have, the initial, initial change I made was on page six of the redline version and the voting conflict of interest, struck out that 2B with regards to the process, it was a voting conflict, because that is governed by state statute. I think Mr. Kishman said that last time. And that is, so that's taken out the process for abstaining and voting conflict of interest is governed by state statute. We don't have the ability to change that. And again, since that's locked in the statute, we need to alter the statute. The next change was on the Dave Schmidt, in the definitional section, made a good suggestion. And on the redline version is.
What page is that?
Page 26 of the redline version. Dave made a good suggestion to add for other required district having legal jurisdiction. So the definition, the fire district in this state's iteration reads, means the Greater Naples Fire Rescue District or other fire districts having jurisdiction within the boundaries of the district. And that was a good suggestion. You never know what happens down the road. If there's some other entity decides to get into the fire business or the county consolidates it. You never know what can happen. The next change is, here, what's here? What are ways down? The, can we get that page? On page 35, under the section with regards to separate meters. Again, David had a good suggestion, two good suggestions. One, change the main to shell in that second full paragraph. That it's a shell, that separate meters for irrigation purposes only. And then also clarifying the owners of public pools, public swimming pools or commercial swimming pools may request separate meters for such pools. And that was again, to be consistent with the other section of the rules changes regarding separate meters for pools. So that's a change of that. On the, there's a minor graphical error. The word, and that's on page. On page 38 at the bottom, struck the word also, again, that's a minor quivers error. On more, more substantive change for regulations on page 41. This, if the improvements and extensions of water distribution, wastewater sanction systems and utility inspection fees. We inserted that, the section that if the proposed development requires upgrading or modifications to district facilities, a landowner and a developer shall be responsible for the cost of expense to upgrade or modify district facilities. Just to make that clear, that was a David's suggestion. So that's that would not be a cost to the district to refer. And the next section we get into, we get into UERC. This was some clarification that we discussed at the last board meeting. And it's at page 53 at the top. The it's on the fire page, page 52C. It reads the number of UERCs available in the district assigned to each property is established by the district. So verify that. It said that was in 52? Yeah, on the redline version. Yes. Yeah.
See.
You'll find it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then on page it's just a minor, it's actually just a minor, it's not something big matter. And that's really all changes. And that, what I will also have next meeting is to have a resolution adopting the various policies. Maybe the next meeting after that, backfill, prevention, inspection procedures, and separate resolutions for that. Yes, David, you have a comment?
Yeah, Tony, on page 49, I thought I sent this to you. In the procedure to transfer utility, utility equivalent residential connections to the district. In that paragraph, A double I, it says the identity of the record title holder to the tax parcel to which the UERCs should be transferred. Should that be actually from, since it's actually coming from a parcel to the district?
That's correct. That's a good one.
And then same thing on the number three and four?
Yep. That's what I'm sort of being drawn as opposed to two. When they're transferring utility ERCs to the district.
What a word processing thing from a previous paragraph that I copied.
Tony, I know it's minor, but back on page 38.
Oh, everything's important.
Well, the words also actually continues the list. And so I think it should stay, but am I misreading it?
Page 38?
Page 38, 4.26. The district owns, operates, maintains water treatment and distribution and distribution and wastewater collection. Also treatment and disposal system, which is third. So I think the words should stay, but maybe I'm reading.
I think David made a suggestion to take that out.
Yeah.
Wouldn't he be right? Because it, the treatment and disposal systems are sort of modifier, retire, maybe it's everything.
Yeah, what, what I suggested was district owns, operates and maintains water treatment and distribution system and wastewater collection, treatment and disposal systems, which serve residents within the district.
Okay, so we need to change and have that work system.
At the first part, so the district owns, operates, maintains water treatment, distribution system and distribution and wastewater collection, treatment and disposal system. And give her the comment. That before they all.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got, I've got a question, but it's not a specific item in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Remember when we were talking about the ERCs in the budget and everything last time? And I told you things weren't right and they showed me where the correction is, because there were corrections made to the number of ERCs that we were charging on South Hotel and Reserve and Southwest Commercial Marina, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, it was a difference of $5,800. So my question is, this was brought up about these changes. And evidently, everybody was at the meeting and everything, but nobody said anything about it. So it became fact. Why didn't we vote on that?
On the numbers?
Yeah, and approving these numbers. And same thing with this. I thought we voted on just about everything. This letter and everything was sent out without the board approval, as far as I can tell. That's why I don't know if it's in the rules about what can, what goes, what goes without a vote.
Yes, sir. If I could do one at a time.
Here's the letter.
Finish it.
Came with that.
This is all, this is your audio opinion.
No, 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 this is from Cal. This was about what was going on. But Ron Benson made, you know, a correction to the ERCs. And nobody objected to it, so it just happened.
Yeah, I think any person, the ERCs, it's usually a staff level function, administrative, like a true up.
But is it?
And I think we'll come back to the board for advising, where we've made true up this adjustment and just to inform it.
Okay, so it doesn't, so it doesn't mean we voted, that's what you're saying.
Doesn't now wash at the hearing that's voted on then? ERC change? It, it was just, it was a change, we presented it when requested. for a breakdown of the ERCs for the South Hotel. And then Ron went through them and, you know, we true up the numbers. Yeah, there was no change in usage, there was no change. It was just a, an error that either an error or the way the calculation was done wrong.
Okay, but that's my question, should it be in there? Same thing.
Should it be in here?
Should be, yeah, in the rules. Where would, where would you put something like that that we, and things we vote for and things we don't have to vote for, and it's a staff level decision?
He's saying the function itself.
No, no, I understand. And that, that, I don't think that should be in the rules, the board should have policies as to what the staff can do. And it gets, it almost becomes like the Napoleon code. They end up with a list of a thousand things we can't do and a thousand things we can do.
But this was polished.
No, this is the rules about the general administration of the, of the district. And you don't, you can't envision every possibility. The district manager is responsible for maintaining the books and records of the district, the assessment rolls, the assessment numbers and the facilities of the district. And at times, it might be indeed for him to true up the numbers. And it always needs to come back to the board, my opinion, for ratification or confirmation as to that true up or correction of the fire or squirmers error.
So that's a true thing. Yeah, you can always do that. And that's not the way it had ever been done before. But it wasn't, nothing was being changed in the calculations. It was just corrected. It was just corrected. And the board got a copy of the report and the analysis that Ron prepared.
Well, in, in this, in this, you can sort of rule, clarify, I want that brought for a vote. I mean, we could do a vote outside.
Well, no, I'm just asking. I didn't know which way it was going. I just was curious. And, and, and the same thing with this letter that went out. We vote, we, every time we go, okay, we're gonna send them a notification that if they don't remove their exotics by this time, then we're gonna notify.
Well, but we can't ask for a vote, or vote on everything that is if that, or that letter had been out because if it had never been brought to the board, then we still would have sent the letter because that's our job. There was an encroachment in the easement, in the drainage easement, and we're supposed to enforce that. That's what we did. The, this was probably more of a concern because it was brought to the board. The engineer recommended against approval in the board table. So note that there was no approval to be able to do that. I imagine what else you would want us to do, but carrying it out like we would in any other situation. I concur with Cal to the extent that might be a very surprised that the district manager, one of whose roles is to protect the assets and when there's a possible impact and has this effect on the assets of the district. He has the authority to act without the board directing him to act. Otherwise, he'd be derelict in his duties. And I, I think in this instance, David had sent the letters out and it seemed like he was being ignored. That the response, if you don't know, everything was continuing, status quo. And so we had a discussion, communications about sending a cease and desist. A little bit stronger push to say, please, take care of this. You have done this without our permission. And getting back real quickly to the utility ERC's allocation, the rule says, and this is a little part of the clarification is page fifty-two, that gets back to your point, because the number of utility ERCs available in the district assigned to each property is established by the district board. And establishes, so the board ultimately is the party that establishes the allocation of the utility ERC. And I think that in this instance, when the manager finds out, there's a little bit of a F. America errors, mother miscalculation. Corrects it, leads back to the board for confirmation. Because of that language, it goes to show. Oh, yes.
Yes, okay.
And you want to confirm.
And I confirm, all right.
Thanks for making the good progress. No, no, it's good. It's a long time. I thank you all for your comments. I think if this is our, if you're counting, I can't count the public. There is many one answer comments.
Yeah. Are there any comments on the
The rules.
And, and the rate schedule? No, just the rules?
Yes.
Just the rules or the rate schedule?
Just the rules. So can we?
That's true. They have a motion to not, mostly because we're gonna have
To continue it at April one, we, you make a motion to do that?
Yeah, Kelly, do you want to have a closing and open it up again on April first? Oh, situations fine. So continue that public hearing and amendments to the rules and procedures, David.
That's what he said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
What about resolutions? Oh, no, but twenty-two dash oh four, the rate schedule.
All right.
Well, that's, that's a good point. That is, you're, what I was trying to ask, okay, we're
Nobody did.
Nobody, I didn't hear it. Why?
Nobody said it.
I said it. Okay. Madam Chair, the question that's been raised, it was me, and I was gonna mention that at this point in time, I think it would be appropriate, we have audience comments, but I think it would be appropriate now before to take any comments, anybody that have on the proposed rate schedules A, B, C, and D.
We need other rates schedule.
That's not in your agenda book. That's the one that had to, one day short on the notice. That's on the
That's in the, yeah.
Hey, David. Take a look at Tom, we're not gonna hold a public hearing today, but because it was first notice to be today. We have an amended notice that's gonna be early April first, amended notice, the meeting of April first going out on Monday, April My recommendation is to, have any members of the public, if they wish to make any comments on the rate schedule, that, and they will reconsider at April first meeting if they're able to attend.
I guess what I'm lost on, I don't even understand the rate schedule. So we haven't discussed it. Oh, you know, all of a sudden I get this rate schedule with numbers and what are we doing? I have no idea what the purpose was.
That was sent out with the utility.
I know, and I didn't understand that either. And then when I see it on the packet, I figured if I had any questions, I'll come up.
What generally happened was it was taken out of the rules and put into a schedule.
Always easier to change when we wanna change it.
And We don't have to go through the whole.
Correct. And there was an additional schedule fee. A couple of things. There was also a meter retesting fee when we talked about that, if they had to take it out and send it off. That was put in here. And then the miscellaneous utility fees and charges are not, Jennifer's not here. I think she put, there's new ones in there also. So we can have Jennifer available, Cal, for the next hearing to explain what changes she made and added. I, all the changes came from staff. I don't think she made any changes. There she did. There she has
I guess that's part of my thing. I'm looking at something. Has this changed from the previous one? Is this the same as the previous? I don't know what I'm looking at.
Was indeed. And those were discussed at the board meeting.
Right, I remember that, yes.
Each of them, from the discussions, were put into a schedule B.
It was one small change in schedule C. Okay. We, we didn't have provision for a review fee for fire hydrants, so we put a review fee for fire hydrant.
So that's what this is representing, the changes you made. All right, I guess, totally.
Yeah, no, those are good parts, Madam Chairman. For example, schedule A. My understanding is those rates are the exact same rates as today.
Right.
And, and schedule B. Well, okay, we're waiting for the comments, may I? I'm always, I'm always standing to be correct.
Yes.
The schedule B is the new meter installation and connection, either rates are supposed to be the same. And schedule C, it's supposed to be the same with David mentioning the addition about the fire hydrant. Schedule D was some of the, some of them are meter testing and some others are new in there.
So this is just a right of our fire.
Or existing. Yeah, if you don't understand, everything came out of the
I didn't know what to compare it to.
If you look at the red line version of the
Now I remember now that you bring it up.
Yeah, I told you.
Schedule's gonna be a lot easier to work with.
I guess because it's
Through the rule because it's easier to go immediately to the schedules and find what they're supposed to be.
Yes, that was another part of it. It was a two-part. Madam Chair, and I'm sorry you're up there to any public comment. That would be a time for any public comment or questions. Any corrections? Always appreciate your questions.
Thank you, sir. If I have a floor, can I bring tell my, my, thank you, Tony. On the utility rates effective four nineteen of two thousand eighteen under wastewater, and I got this right off the C I P website. The commodity rates for the wastewater per thousand gallons at seventy-five percent of wastewater usage. The existing rate is six ninety-four. On the mailing I got in the mail, it just says under the waste, we would quantity rates for one thousand gallons, six ninety-four. That's correct. However, on the bills, we're only billed seventy-five percent of the wastewater at five twenty. And that is according to my bill, five dollars and twenty cents per thousand gallons on the wastewater. This at seventy-five percent of wastewater usage is not on the new rate. And if it's not on the new rate, then you're raising the waters for the sewer from five twenty to six ninety.
It works.
Okay.
Wasn't supposed to reflect any change. Oh, no, that's, that's a good point. Well, bear with me. I'm looking at the, thank you. I'm looking at the red line version of the rule. If you go to page sixty-nine of the red lines, and you don't have a copy, I'll leave a copy here. I have a bunch of copies. And it's, as, in that rule, that was amended at six ninety-four, it said existing in new rate. But that was from back in two thousand seventeen, where it talked about it just a two years. Cal, David, you recall that if you look under wastewater, it says quantity rates a thousand gallons, five seventy-eight existing. At that time, and it said new rate, six ninety-four.
That's what I'm seeing also, but I'm looking at the same document that you are.
Yeah, so I guess the question though is, the comment that the adjustment, seventy-five percent adjustment of water consumption. So we got water consumption and of the, if you got a thousand gallons of water you use, seven hundred and fifty of it is used at that rate for wastewater. So I guess the question becomes, do we need to add some clarification? Sure. Commodity rates per thousand gallons at seventy-five percent of water usage per hectare on schedule A. The rate is six ninety-four.
Right.
But you're based on seventy-five percent of what it actually
Then it would just get down to the five twenty.
Five, where's the number?
There it can't.
What's the number on it, Madam Chair?
What was that?
What would be the number after that?
Five twenty, five point two zero five, six ninety-five twenty, right, you're gonna have to add the seven seventy-five.
So, well, you don't want the five twenty. You count up to the seventy-five percent. It would be per, it would be per hectare. At seventy-five percent of water usage.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why it is now.
Never make it clear as what.
I understood.
No, I understand now.
We were just trying to get an extra twenty-five.
Sure, same.
With the million dollars that's come.
We're making sure to show that it's all that. Thank you for that.
Things you're saying that's used, whatever you use for orders.
Madam Chair, with those, if there are any other comments for the public, there was a discussion on the board. Again, this has been continued, this has already been continued to people for, so thank you for the comments. Yeah, we'll, we'll
I guess.
Well, that's, they, they don't, just
We use a thousand gallons here.
Yeah.
So it's basically seven twenty. Yeah, a hundred percent where it's seventy-five percent. I think that's what you're saying.
Is there a comment?
On, on the rate schedule?
No.
Okay, we're not, that's where we're at.
Not there yet.
No problem. We're all the way.
So this
I think you're at supervisor comments, Madam Chair.
Now sixteen.
Red supervisor requests some comments.
I'm ready to go on.
We are.
Do you want to vote to continue, Tony?
Do we need to
No, 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 we follow it. The rules, of course.
Do we need to
Yeah, I would say that we vote to, vote to continue the hearings.
Action.
On the rate schedules.
Till April first.
Yeah, right.
So
So we'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Russ is here.
That would be tough in the minutes, but
Russ has.
Russ has. Terry wants.
Is that your comment or?
All right, any supervisor requests?
I have a question. And I'm just curious, I want, you know, we're all friends, we all joke with each other, but I don't understand why, and we already did it, it's over, but I don't understand why some of you didn't wanna ask more money for the land. I just don't understand it. You can always go down. There was such quick response. He was reluctant to give me the listing price because he had these guys in his back pocket, okay? I really believe we could have got a lot more money. And it doesn't hurt to try. There, for over a year now, we, some of us have been rushing to get this done. And we've blown a lot of time in the process. We, some of us said, all we're gonna get is what the appraiser gave us. If we'd gone with that, we would have left a million, two on the table or more. That was dead wrong. Some of us talks about ERCs and talking to developers, and they'll never buy this land. But we've got J.C. Sanchez that bought half of a parcel, hasn't mentioned the ERCs. We've got a Vietnamese guy that bought the hotel we never thought would sell for four million bucks. And he has not mentioned ERCs. And we've got a guy from Colorado who wants to reserve a hundred and fifty ERCs, doesn't care, and thinks it's a cheap date. So my point is, why didn't we wanna ask more? And what's the hurry?
What's the hurry? When did we get this land? That's my
What difference does it make?
You wanted to, I'll, I'll tell you where I'm coming from. It's been years that we haven't received anything because of this land. And first it was to get it, you know, appraised and sell it. Then it was get a commercial appraisal. Then it was the unhappiness about RV park. And now we're to this point now, and there's such a thing, I, I've worked with real estate, there's such a thing as too late. You know, you keep going up and up and up, and it's too late, the market won't bear it. So how much more time are we gonna waste meanwhile? Like you heard the capital improvements, the small ones we spoke about, meanwhile, time's going on and we're out of time.
We're not out of time.
Yes, we are.
No, we're not.
Financially, yes. We gotta stop just tripping over ourselves here and start on a capital improvement plan and move forward with it instead of knowing it's there and doing nothing about it.
The first time ever that that land had been listed commercially was eighteen days ago. And we had three players.
All right, that's commercially, but it wasn't
Commercial is what it is.
In, in the past, we had buyers.
In the past was a great
What came up there was RV. And what I felt today, we had two offers. One, I feel the community wouldn't want. We can go further with it, yes. But do I wanna lose what I feel the community might want? Because it's not enough money?
How are we gonna lose it? And today, how are you gonna lose it if you're in control of it?
You don't know how long that buyer wants to hold on, how valuable it is to him.
But the thing is, you don't ask, you don't get. We haven't even marketed it.
For the first
Thirty days.
That's what I got.
We haven't even marketed it for thirty days. And we get two out of state buyers. And we could have paid with a million dollars we got back with today.
I make a comment. I just walked in here. So I moved down in January. And when I bought, I had to put in a little higher than I thought I would sell.
Right.
Why didn't you even discussing this point, taking a fast talk?
What happened years ago? Real estate was sky high and then it plummeted. That can happen again.
It surely could.
You have to keep that
If I could make my property, put it back on the market, and but I had to pay over and above what it was marketed for. What I'm saying is take What I'm saying is take what the market offers you, and that's what he's saying.
You don't ask, you don't get.
And you get four.
It's easy. And if it's something that's lower, think about it.
Here's the other thing.
You're getting an offer right now, he's saying three million dollars or plus.
They're jumping on it because they know that they can get it at a cheaper price.
Okay, but if you have enough, if you give it a little bit of time, not a lot.
Sixty days.
Wait until you get all the offers competing, just to get public. Eighteen days. What's the rush? You've been waiting this long.
I, I don't think we're in a rush. We're not rushing because in the meantime, we authorized them to talk. But the property's still, the property's still on the market, so.
You may get better.
That's right. It may be another month, the six.
Like you said, you had an offer.
What I'm saying is don't even lock into them.
We're, we're not.
We're not.
We have.
Okay.
We listed it at three million. Listed at eight million.
Could've, would've, should've, we did.
No, we can change it.
It happened, we got an offer.
Okay, that's how it works.
It's, it's, yeah.
Raise it for a month.
Look, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Yeah.
I spent some time with Case. They're real, they're huge, they're real, they don't care about recessions, they have super deep pockets, and he really does want to do the right thing. I'll tell you none of this. He told me he wants to live here. Because I really doubted, we're the only project they've got outside of Colorado, the only one. And I didn't trust him. And I said, how come? Well, he says, you wanna know why? I wanna live here. I said, you're gonna live here? He goes, absolutely. And I said, and, and he told me he would give green space, open space.
Do you want to sell the property or not?
No, I don't want to. That's a stupid question.
No, it's a question.
I want to sell it for all the money in the world because the board before us, the two of you were on, deferred everything for seven years. And we're upside down. And I've been saying that for over a year, okay? We're more upside down today, and it's not the capital improvement thing. There's seven million, there's another million.
We deferred it, now we're saying do it, now you're saying defer it and get more money.
No, I'm gonna say we don't have the money.
It's crazy. Well, you want to know, I gave my answer, that's all.
What does it hurt?
What does it hurt though? Five million, what does it hurt to us?
It doesn't hurt, but you make it sound like we're gonna say no to this.
You didn't say no.
For five, it sounds like you want to say no.
No.
We're gonna keep it on the table. Yes, we did it five million.
So the gamble is not, you're at the table.
I'm interested to find out.
Well, he's at the table at first.
Right.
So.
Let's see if he stays.
And we got in discussion with him at three. If you go ahead and up it to five and say, while we're discussing, we're not locked into anybody at all. We can let them up at the five, see what happens while we're doing all this. He's still in at three unless he decides to come up. So I don't have a problem.
We can always back down.
Or does he disintegrate? Why would he disintegrate?
What's your, what's your top line, Ray? What number?
I don't have a top line. I would have put it at eight and let it land where it landed. I think we sold it too cheap. And I think, and I think sticking, I, I think sticking to what the appraiser said was a huge mistake. I think not.
The board wanted that appraisal, so.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean it was the bottom line.
It's what the board asked.
How long ago was that appraisal done?
Right.
It must have been a year.
Six, six months?
Well, what difference does it make? It's one man's opinion.
The market has changed. Catherine, what do you want?
My idea is, is, Ray's right. My mother taught me, all they can do is say no. You listed for five. We've got two bids for three. You say you want a home, you hit the middle, four million.
You put it on bootnet at the higher price, and you might get some different people.
I mean, that's what you do with your houses. If I'm wanting, I want a hundred and seventy million, I'm a hundred and seventy thousand, excuse me.
But the type of million.
Seventy thousand for my housing. You want me to list it for two million? I'm gonna get the one seventy, or I'm gonna ask two thirty.
But don't you work with your realtor? I mean, do we put any weight on what our realtor, our commercial realtor, as suggested?
We put a little.
Yeah.
But obviously, listen, what do I think? I would go with Case. I'm telling you right now, I go with them. I just think that for no good reason, we left a lot of money on the table.
Well, my other problem is the zoning back there. And the problem is RV Park.
No, it's not your problem. He's not worried about, that's the thing.
The other one is RV Park.
But listen.
Even though it's nine million, am I gonna say yes to that, knowing the neighbors?
But listen, it's the thing that's making me crazy. We came up with every reason on earth, like, nobody's gonna buy that land. We put it on the market for eighteen days, Jesus, here they come. And we've got three guys that came in and bought. And you want to know what? You want to know the funny thing about this? He's the guy that started it. He bought a hunk of land that nobody thought would sell. Nobody thought it was gonna go anywhere. He bought it, and in six months, look how good he did with it. And that's fantastic. That's what got it going right there.
The other thing is Case already owns part of some property back there.
Right.
And what you think about the enterprise, right?
Right.
It's also, it's a commission.
And that's the thing, listen, I'm just saying, these guys aren't stupid. And Tavi or whatever his name is, is one of the owners of that parcel. He was buried in that thing, stuck. And for two and a half acres, he gets five hundred grand laying on the table, and, and he's gonna tear down the bunker, be silent. He gets five hundred grand. Right across the street, there's forty-nine acres better land. Who wouldn't buy it?
Did you say anything about the ERCs for the sixty-nine person OT hotel he wants?
He has some, we don't know how many he needs, but he has some.
I just saw a few allocated to the dormitory, but.
Right.
Not enough.
Yeah, he said.
But he owns them.
You should know that, how much does land cost for a pad for a hire license? He even said it himself. There is no, he can get a hire license for vertical. What is the cost of a pad? Three million is a gift.
You know what he's doing? If you really think about it, he, I looked at him, I said, FEMA, you know better than anybody, FEMA, if somebody wants to put houses in, they gotta elevate, every one of them, bring the fill in. He can put a smaller pad in, go up, and he doesn't do that.
Yeah.
It just makes, it makes perfect sense.
All right, Ray, we need to get back to supervisors first.
Okay.
That's what you had?
Yeah.
All right, so that, that closes supervisor's questions.
No, wait, 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 wait. I, I, I want to raise it to five million. Do you want to raise it to five million?
I don't have a problem. I'll do it.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Sure.
No, this is just supervisor comments.
Do you say five million? Also, when you're talking to.
No, one minute, one minute, we're gonna have audience comments in a minute.
No, she just asked you a question.
Before you do the vote, you also said.
We're not voting.
So when you find someone that does five million, are you gonna come back and say no? We gotta vote.
No, the eight million is being facetious. If you want to know what I would really, really do, we were talking. There's a land for sale, fifty-two acres, almost identical, a big rectangle, not better land, loaded with trees. It would cost a fortune to defoliate it before you start anything. No paved roads going in, and some frontage on forty-one, which is not a plus.
No water.
It, then, no water, no plumbing, no nothing. It's on the market for seven point two. Is it gonna sell for that? Who knows? It's been on the market thirty days. But let's say it sells for six. Let's say it sells for five. It's two million more than what we've got. That's where I'm at.
You should go for eight.
Okay, all right, okay, all right.
All right, so the meeting isn't over, we can make a motion.
Sure.
I make a motion that we raise the price of the property, and I'm open to whatever number you guys are looking for.
That should be a motion.
Okay.
I think we should change it to, if that's seven, we don't know, I think we should change it to five. I'm gonna just put it to you like this. At what he paid.
No, just a motion, Ray, so that's your motion.
Hold on.
No.
If what he paid for acre, for the dormitory land, which is the parity, what do you pay for that? This should have been nine and a half million.
Raise that your motion?
Raise the, raise the ask to five million.
Yeah. I make a motion to raise the ask to five million. You've got a motion on the floor already. Give me a second.
All in favor? All right, now, audience comments?
We'll still have any supervisor comments.
Yeah, that was supervisor, now we're on.
Never asked.
Oh, yeah, boy, you're good at supervisors. Only thing I wanted to say, I know we're not gonna do anything about it, but we bent this around about a million-dollar neighborhood. I understand all that. We are gonna have a problem in the million-dollar neighborhood. Some of these people come in here and they see the number of boat trailers we got sitting in everybody's yard in the sanctuary. There's a dozen of them, they sit there all, all season long, they'll sit there all summer long. And if you've got a million-dollar home, the last thing you want is a boat trailer, which is against the law. You're allowed three days, three, forty-eight hours every seven days, and that has to be out of here. We're not gonna do anything about it because we don't have the, we don't have any jurisdiction over that. But, but they're gonna be calling county about it. First, they're gonna come here and complain. And then they're gonna will say, not our responsibilities, you know.
And you could call the county, but you have to leave your name, and that's not a way to be a good neighbor.
That's correct. But it's for the million-dollar neighborhood.
You send letters, you send letters on swales, you send letters on paper, because that's not.
But that's, this is the county that's coming, it's not ours.
It's not our family, but.
The whales are our responsibility, but the yarers, no.
No, it's the county, that's all county. Perfect. Code enforcement, judge force.
Yeah, I ought to do it now.
You do?
Yeah, I ought to make a code compliance.
I get your name, I call up, I give your name, and they go off.
It's this.
It's simple.
Yeah, you know, staff could do that if you put a delegate in staff. It's just, you know, we're gonna have to take time and time's money for me.
Sure, you know, anybody in the neighborhood could do it.
Well, see, I'm on that point, what about putting storage back in that personal thirteen so we can clean up our driveways?
That's, we have all those recommendations from the meeting we had the other night, and that's what they were. It was a town hall where we all absorbed what everybody felt, but we're not taking votes or finalizing anything yet.
Maybe, but I was there at the meeting.
Yeah, but one of the questions I said, that we have part of that land, and they said yes. So when the community has it, if we get it, then yes, we'll consider what the community wants.
It is our responsibility.
Okay, anything?
One quick question, maybe Dave can answer this. Frank had a lead, so I. He's been, you know, he's been having blowouts every year for eleven years. Last year, you know, he paid like six grand at his blowouts. The, the Eastman, the two folks have got, the riprap's in the middle of that, basically. When this water comes down and goes through his riprap and blows it out, who's responsible to pay for that fixing of that? I mean, it's in your Eastman.
I would have to look at how the dedication reads and so forth, but I, my gut feeling is it's probably some obligation for the owner to have some maintenance responsibilities of that area. Very similar to like the sidewalk in front of somebody's home, there is that maintenance responsibility for, for the owner to keep it in good order. But how does that tie into the fact then that the swales haven't been maintained the way that they're supposed to be, and that's what's causing the blowouts? I'm not sure that the swales not being maintained is the cause of the blowouts because it sounds like he seems to be more susceptible to the blowouts than anybody else. I, I just saw the construction. A lot of those firms were underlaid with, with the fabric, that riprap. Perhaps this has lost the integrity of that fabric at this point.
I think it's the sheer volume that comes down that street that I think is unusual to some of the other streets. I think that there's just a lot more water that comes down there, and it doesn't have a chance to dissipate before it goes over. But is that something that you can look into for us?
Well, the whole community has to look into it.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about, does the CID have the responsibility to maintain what's inside of their Eastman?
That's something that would need to be reviewed by myself, probably Tony, with the maintenance responsibilities are there.
Yeah, as far as.
We give you the plan information, the lot information, David.
I've got the plan, we got the copies of the plans, so we can.
We have the lot, the block number, we're.
What address is that, Steve?
One. One sixty-two or three, I can't remember, that's strange.
Right, then it's all gonna be the same.
Reason on window K, right?
Correct. It's gonna be the same for all the lots back there as far as the dedication. Now, as far as the volume of water at that particular location, it should be very similar to all the other case.
Well, and, and, and I'm not disagreeing with you, but one of the things that I can see on that, there's a lot of houses that've got a, a, a waterway that goes between the houses, and it's sloped mostly to the back.
Yes.
Well, those have not been maintained on that street at all. If all flows to the front, it doesn't flow to the back. A lot of them have, they're filled with shrubs, and they're high. So it is causing the water to get to the street, and that, you know, makes it worse.
I know, in my neighborhood, we had four vacant lots, now all of a sudden, we have homes there. So I know that water flow has changed.
Right, it's increased, where, when you got a new, when the lot fills in, it's gonna increase the volume of discharge because right now the lots sit low.
Right.
And it.
Some water is sitting out of the lot.
It's retaining.
Really, I was pointing it out to Russ the other day, and I showed him in his yard, I said, look at your yard now. This is the way it's supposed to go. See how it slopes out there? Now let's walk down to the neighbors over here. He just goes uphill. Well, so.
It's now under.
I mean, it's probably not a bigger fence with.
Yeah, the apartment was, the old swale has a new building. So I think the new, the new piece are lower.
Between every house, that's what I'm saying, between every house. Yeah. There's those, you know, if we're not responsible for that drainage.
There's a swale on, in each pole of that. Right. And then, and all the road, and then on the sides, and then you need to get the, the chains to get it from the road to the back.
Right, but what I'm saying is, each house does not have a, there's not a swale between each house that is maintaining the, the flow to the back. So if it's an Eastman in there, is there not?
No.
No, 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 that's what we're saying.
Okay. And it was, it was set up that it was, the, the bulk of the water was to flow towards the back swale. There was always some that needed to come to the front.
Correct, yeah, I agree.
The, the engineering drawing I'm looking at right now really doesn't quantify that very well.
Ryan always said that the maintenance of the swale along the waterline in the rear was the responsibility of the homeowners, but the CID should be telling them, inspecting and telling them that they can do.
Well, I remember when my swale went in twenty years ago, I asked that question. And I was told that, you know, the CID was putting the swale in, but that I was to maintain. And what they meant was if it filled in with more dirt, it became higher, and the water wouldn't flow, it was up to me to shoot it out.
But the new homes, um, the CID hasn't put those swales in, they are. But what I'm getting at, and I draw this way back when, I said, so when you guys go in and you put the new riprap in your, your yard, it's basically supposed to be at the same height from the spillway at the point all the way to that end. That height should be maintained. So that the water runs over, when it does spill over, it'll spill over the whole way. That height should be maintained so that if the water runs over, when it does spill over, it'll spill over the whole way. Right, like when I asked you, what's that height set there?
Well, I think the county has made the change, right?
Well, no, no, the county hasn't had anything to do with setting that swale.
He has not been given that particular number.
Right.
So each, each house is set in their swale or the riprap at a different height. It's no franks, it's the low one. Franks gets blown out.
Yeah, it should all be the same elevation. And it's basically, the, the drawing says 6.4 feet NGBD, which is 5.06 in the new dam. So that's what all of them should be set at.
So who's that, who's that up to?
I think when we start looking at all this.
When we started looking, when we started looking at it, getting the survey, it was all.
So it's up to the builders.
But we, we need to get it all to the five.
Yeah, at some point, yeah. It all needs to get to the same point, the same bottom swale, the same tops, top of her.
And that, and the riprap definitely, definitely has a problem. For what?
The rip, the, the.
With the hurricane.
The coral, whatever, that's definitely all dropped down.
The other thing is swales, we've been putting them at your request, four foot nine below finished floor. Finished floor of the house, and the four foot nine, it seems to be working this ice back. We don't want to build these houses with these corners out on the walls, but the houses of the older homes, they filled it up. So there's water sitting in these houses. Luckily for us, it's all sand face, and it does drain very quickly. But we're setting a fucking nine.
I don't, I don't think that people filled them in. I think they just built it naturally, you know. Some, some have filled it naturally.
The biggest problem that's dropping out is not people, is a lot of your. You're in the gulf, and you can't tell somebody if you lost easement to put a ditch four foot nine below. And some of these houses, if you look at the houses, look at the back, they're full, but their step hall is basically almost at the riprap. Why? Because the twenty foot easement, they're in water, you think twenty foot, but that's why you see some of these houses put way back. This is a big, big problem. There's, it's not an easy fix. It's a fix. We have it on Newport. I've been on Newport for twelve years. It's, it's easy. It's basically what the S did. It's a column. Get the water to the back. Let it sit in the ditches over there. Get the road, water off the road. My street, you can't even get out of there somehow. Just put a regular ring on it. I've had three blowouts. And why? Because the water just backs up. It's a funnel. The water comes like this, and it's gotta go on surface, and there's plants, and there's everything else in there. Get over that, get to the back, so it can drain. Once it gets to the back, it does drain properly because it's all sand, and it filters through. But the problem is you can't get the water to the back. Where do you have a sunset sand? It's not a problem. You have two culverts on your side. Water gets to the back, alleviates all the pressure from the front of the street, and the pressure in the back. Now with this culvert, the water gets to the back, drains properly. On my street, we don't have that. So Frank gets all the water from the entire street coming down, where it's supposed to go right and left, where you have culverts on the other streets. You have these little holes in the sidewalks that are. So the water keeps flowing down. It builds up. It's a pool. It's like this. When it gets up to a certain level, it overflows, and you get a flash flood. It rips down that street and hits the back of this, uh, this wall, just rips the hell out of it. But you go, I think he's been there, but not so much. That pool, there's a pool. Literally, you can't drive your car. I have a low car. There's no way you're gonna get through there. I gotta go back and get my SUV, get through that. In the summertime, it's a cost, it's every single day. So if someone wants to listen and people watch their investment and all this money, surveys and stuff, and maybe spend a little money, I think we can alleviate profits, profit sense. And it's, and it is on Sunset K already. It does exist. It does work. Doesn't work on Mike. We don't have it. Venus K, I'm sure. I never really went out there. But on Newport, at the old, it's all evening start. It's fine. We don't have issues. We have no issues. It's an easy fix.
I gotta tell you, you know who hit the nail on the head? This engineer guy whose name I don't remember. If you look at that thing he did, I'm not an engineer, he hit the nail on the head.
This guy is no doubt.
No. That guy's gonna figure it out.
He's gotta figure it out. That's what we went with his idea, his concept, and it works fantastically. And code enforcement said it works. Everybody that's been up here has said it works. And I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but we have to move the water from there. But we moved the water, and he's paid for it, reached it up to the other side, and everybody seems very positive. And I would ask, some of you guys want to take a look at what we did. Before we go and spend all this money, and we start calling code enforcement and string legal fees and stuff like that, give it a chance. If it doesn't work, he's willing to remove it.
I think the main issue only was permission.
The permission.
That was the only issue, but that's, I think.
Permission, but he had to do something because nobody's going with any permission. Nobody's doing nothing, but he's got rid of it. If you want to take a drive over there after this, you know, I would love to show it to you. You can see what it is.
I'm good.
I think I saw.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
I have one.
You haven't done audio.
Oh, that count they were added.
Yeah, that's. Go ahead.
Whose responsibility is it to notify Mr. Carr that the price has increased? And what is the timeline for him to advertise this parcel at the new price?
Immediately, and it's a phone call that Cal should do. I, I, I can't remember what the, I'll call him. It's gonna work if I call him? Sure, okay.
I can act now if it works and.
We also, we also need to change.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have some other changes to deliver. If you recall, the discussion was, the listing agreement doesn't have all the. End of items that the board wants.
That's what.
So my recollection was, we're gonna get back to Dave for the meeting.
Yeah.
So let's wait till the April first meeting. Now, you may want to call him and say.
He's fallen. I give me a map.
Listing price is gonna be five million, but we're gonna have the menu items also. Okay, I'll tell him.
I have a quick question. I'll keep mine under forty minutes. All I'm asking is, who, what, okay, the.
Yeah.
The parking lot across from the hotel, what is that zone?
Who owns it?
Oh, the hotel.
I'm Callahan.
You mean their hotel.
What, what is it zoned for? Is it zoned for?
You know, that's a good question.
I don't know.
I think it's zoned residential, which means.
I don't either.
It's sitting there. It needs to go, and I'd like to know who I can hold up.
Zoned. Callahan's. Oh, okay.
It's, uh.
I just have two quick things. One thing is.
Where's the hotel?
We're having a little problem with people parking.
This is this.
Michelle did save a space, but then two cars parked through the lines. Maybe I'll try to get back into there. So maybe we can sort of.
Where the, where the, usually it's.
Oh, it's on.
I will.
It's extended part of the hotel.
So I'll log into everybody's security group.
Yeah, I don't like it.
Two meetings, we didn't get our, we only called.
There were only bills anyway.
Who's?
And the other thing is, when, uh, when you're doing this meeting, if you can let me know, is you were ready to go on our calendar and see if you're able to pull it over, and I would like to help the calendar, so. There was somebody who just had sent me an email. It wasn't on calendar, so, you know, we need to know that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Very good.
Yeah, we don't care. We come first. We don't care.
Any other? Motion to adjourn?
A second act?
Oh, wait, should we continue?
Should we wait?
Motion line.
Wait, that was a quick.
Did we continue? Right, just being.
Is anybody online?
Uh, there's a lot of people online. I don't know if they have comments.
Whoops.
If the comments wrong, we are. I want this one of my.
I told you we're gonna give this motion, this motion to continue the meeting and all the public areas until April 1st, 2018. Your fifth location, and the notice will be the paper.
Monday.
When, when we, I believe we'll be due, but nine thirty or so, we'll put a 9:30 call.
Okay, good.
So we, the motion is to continue the meeting here until 9:30, April 1st.
No, I called her last night.
Second.
Hey, there was cream, there was cream in the cabbage, and I had Bailey's Irish Cream.
What happened to the?
Did we vote?
Yes. To continue the meeting.
What, was it, was the vote getting around? We need to vote.
We need to vote.
Oh, all in favor? What happened to the three minutes time limit? I started a few times, but when I tried it, they didn't go for three.